Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Taos County Board of Commissioners regular meeting for today, May 6th, 2014. For the record, I hope that clock is right. I thought I was running late. It's a little bit till nine.
Try this one.
Darn it. Okay, can't win them all. Before we move on further into our agenda, I would like to wish our county manager a very happy belated birthday. And I think the staff, Mr. Hadermeo, has prepared a little bit of a menu for the celebration of his birthday today. I'm not sure exactly when the staff wants to do it, but if you can all maybe join me in wishing our county manager a very happy birthday, belated birthday.
This is significant other that got it all together.
Oh, okay.
Took care of the punch and the cake. So we'll sing "Happy Birthday" to Steve, and then if everybody can get a piece of cake, and we'll continue with the meeting.
Let's not make this a big deal. Let's just start. I'm just getting older, that's all that says.
Happy birthday? Okay. Who wants to lead the choir?
(singing) Birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Steve. Happy birthday to you.
Thank you very much.
Hey, Madam Clerk, the roll call.
Mr. Brown.
Present.
Vice Chair Sanchez.
Present.
Chairman Ramada.
Present.
President.
President.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll move on to the Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner Blankenhorn, do you want to lead us with the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Also, before we sit, a moment of silence. Commissioner Sanchez?
Mr. Chairman Commissioners, Senator Cisneros passed away yesterday, and I'd like a moment of silence.
I'm sorry, it's his sister.
Senator Cisneros, I'm sorry.
His sister.
His sister passed on, and just out of courtesy for the senator and the family, Rose Rial from Costa, just a moment of silence.
Thank you. Commissioner Sanchez.
Sorry about that, Chairman.
You almost created a big headline there.
Yeah. Thought we'd eat.
Okay, we'll move on to the approval of the agenda. Commissioners and staff, any changes?
Mr. Chairman, under Department Matters, under 11H, I would like to add on early voting in Piñasco and in Costa. See if we can fund that.
Any other changes, Commissioners?
So move to approve as amended, Chairman.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there a second?
Second.
And Madam Clerk.
Commissioner May.
Yes.
Vice Chair Sanchez.
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay, we'll move on then to Item 5. This is Citizen Concerns, Discussion Only. Item A, this is appreciation for paving of the Caiajón Road. Ms. Lilly Vahill and Andrew Vahill, Citizens for Caiajón Road, are you present this morning? Okay, if you want to come forward, thank you very much. Conrad, Conrad, if you can lower the... Good morning, Ms. Vahill.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, Ms. Vahill.
My name is Lilly Vahill. I live in Caiajón Road. I lived... I've... We have traveled that road since I was five years old, and I'm 88 years old. So I begged every Commissioner that had... that has come into our district to pave Caiajón Road, and they would tell me that I was second in line. And for years and years, they never did it. And since Blueberry Hill is there, we have had too much traffic, and they don't slow down. They just... It's a 15-mile speed limit, and they go 30, 35, 40 miles an hour. And the morning, you cannot see our houses from the dust. In the evening, it's the same thing. And when Mr. Barone became my Commissioner, I called him my Commissioner, I told him about the road when I went to vote, and he said, "Ms. Vahill, your road is going to be paved." And all the other Commissioners that I had that I went, I would talk to them, and they never paid attention to me. They were worth shit. Excuse the word.
And the only one that would put attention to me, I would call Pablito, and he would
send the grader and grade the road for us. And I want to thank Mr. Barone.
Thank you.
I really appreciate it from the bottom of my heart. I have traveled that road for as long as I've lived there, and I go every morning. I've been going to the spa for 35 years at 4:00 in the morning, and I travel that road, and I see all these cars that... who they are, I don't know, because they'd throw the fences. They don't care. They just go, and they turn, they make the turns. All of that fence is thrown down. Nobody stops and says... And they don't have no respect, and go to the people and say, "Well, we'll fix your road, or your..." I mean, your fence, because it came down. So I am so very grateful that I'm not swallowing clouds, I mean, dust anymore, and may God bless you, and you're in my prayers, and may God give you wisdom and knowledge now that you're a mayor, and he's a man of his word. And I really want to really thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Vahill. Thank you. And if it wasn't for the rest of the Commission here putting our monies together, we wouldn't have got that road to get done. So again, thank you, Commissioners.
You're welcome. Okay, anyone else under Citizen Presentations? Thank you. If not, then we'll go ahead and move on to the next item, and this is Item 6. This is Minutes. Discussion, Consideration, Decisions Regarding the Following. We have two sets of meetings, the ones for March 18th, 2014, regular meeting. Commissioners?
Someone to approve?
I'll go ahead in second. Madam Clerk.
Vice Chair Sanchez.
Yes.
Vice Chair Sanchez.
Yes.
Vice Chair Brown.
Yes.
Chairman Ramada.
Yes. And Item B, this is the regular meeting of April 1st, 2014.
So, second.
Okay, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner May.
Yes.
Vice Chair Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Chairman Ramada.
Yes. Item 7. This is a public hearing. We'll go ahead and open the public hearing for Discussion, Consideration, Decisions Regarding the Following. Item A, Ordinance 2014-2, An Ordinance Adopting an Economic or Project Participation Agreement By and Between Taos County and Taos County Economic Development Corporation. We have Anita Padilla, Grants Administrator, and Mr. Robert Malone, County Attorney. Welcome, and also welcome to our attorney, Scott Sanger, for Taos County Economic Development Corporation, and of course Patty and Terry.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. You have before you a project participation agreement between Taos County and Taos County Economic Development Corporation. This particular participation agreement is in the amount of $100,000 that is going to be received from the State Economic Development Agency, and that will be to re-roof the main building and do some painting and other rehab inside the building.
Okay, thank you, Anita and Patty and Terry. Mr. Sanger, you want to come forward and speak on behalf of TCDC?
Thank you.
Raise your right hand. Do you swear and affirm under oath and penalty of law for perjury that the testimony you're about to give is true and factual?
I do.
Would you please state your name?
Scott Sanger.
Morning.
Good morning. This has been a new adventure for all of us through the Economic Development Administration of the State of New Mexico, and we got a tremendous amount of help from them in a very short timeframe. They were involved in working with us on the ordinance before you, 2014-02, and the participation agreement that's a part of it. The participation agreement essentially provides that TCEDC, through its efforts, through our commercial kitchen, would create job opportunities. This is not the first time TCEDC has entered into a participation agreement with the county, and each time previously, we have more than exceeded its requirements. Something new in this one is an intergovernmental agreement. This is between Taos County and the Economic Development Department of the State of New Mexico. All three of these documents before you, we worked on extensively with the help of your attorney here, Mr. Malone, and Mr. Lopez, and then also Anita, and then we just went ahead and pushed through the state agency and got their approval as well. So we're here today to say thank you. Any questions, guys?
Just... No, go ahead. Mr. Chairman, thank you. You know, I know that today is Give Grande Day, you know, and I... This is one of those organizations that if you're wanting to give a few dollars to, I would recommend it. This is an organization that are a community that continues to create jobs in our community, foster a number of entities from all the way from Costilla to the Piñasco area. It gives them an opportunity to grow their business, and I just recommend if people are wanting to give grande today, it's one of those organizations that you could give to. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Patty and Terry, you want to come forward and speak a little bit on behalf of TCDC and what you and the staff are doing?
Raise your right hand. Do you swear and affirm under oath and penalty of law for perjury that the testimony you're about to give is true and factual?
I do.
Would you please state your name for the record?
Patty Martenson. Good morning, Commissioners, County Manager, and Attorney. This is an opportunity that surprised us, and we had been feeling for a while that the food center with the kitchen and all those businesses that are in there, and now that it's farmer's market, it's really starting to take off. And because we have nine regulators, we have the most food-safe entity around, and we're really proud of that, and we're happy that we're able to work with FDA, USDA, and all those other regulators so that the food that comes out of our food center is really healthy and nutritious for our community. That, along with our Mobile Matanza Garden and Greenhouse, have been our main focus for most of the 28 years since TCEDC was begun, and this community is a place that we really love, and being able to fulfill our mission of supporting food, land, water, and the cultures of the people of northern New Mexico really has been an honor. It's been a struggle, often financially, so we were very thankful to our Senator Carlos Cisneros, who recommended to the Economic Development Department that this might be a good place to put some of that capital outlay money. Unfortunately, we had a very short amount of time, so as Scott said, we are extremely appreciative of Mr. Malone and everybody who helped us to get quickly through that system, and we hope to have a new roof and a brand-new shiny floor that FDA will continue to approve for many years to come. So again, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Terry, you want to be sworn in?
I guess I have to be sworn in.
Do you swear and affirm under oath and penalty of law for perjury that the testimony you're about to give is true and factual?
I do.
Would you please state your name for the record?
Terry Badhan. And I just want to echo what my partner Patty said. You know, we really appreciate the support of the Commission. It's been really a wonderful situation to have partnership that's really true, so we thank you, and I really want to thank also Anita Padilla, who worked really hard as well with Bob Malone and everyone trying to put this together, and we could never do this without our attorney, Scott Sanger. So we thank all of the Commissioners, and you know, we really thank the community for their support and really being behind us. So again, good morning, and thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you. Anita?
So I stand for any questions.
Okay, I believe Mr. Malone had some discussion.
Just a quick procedural point, Mr. Chairman. We have three separate documents that need to be approved for this to take place. The first is an ordinance, the second is a project participation agreement, and the third is an intergovernmental agreement between Taos County and the Economic Development Department. And so if there is a motion, I would appreciate it if all three documents would be identified.
Okay, so what we will do, Mr. Malone then, and correct me if I'm wrong, is we'll continue with the public hearing. This is a public hearing, and if there is anyone else who wishes to speak with regards to this particular item on the agenda this morning, you may do so. You may want to come forward at this time. If not, then I will go ahead and close the public hearing at this time, and I will entertain a motion from the Members of the Commission. Commissioner Barone?
So move for approval of Ordinance 2014-2, also approval of... Should we do them? I guess I'll turn to Attorney. Should... Three separate motions, or can we do it all in one?
Let's do three separate motions to make it clear.
So move for approval of Ordinance 2014-2.
Okay, I will go ahead in second. Madam Clerk.
Commissioner May.
Yes.
Vice Chair Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Chairman Ramada.
Yes, and then the next approval item is the project participation agreement between... by and between Taos County and Taos County Economic Development Corporation.
So move for approval.
I will go ahead in second. Madam Clerk.
Commissioner May.
Yes.
Vice Chair Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Chairman Ramada.
Yes, and then the final item, Mr. Malone again?
It's the intergovernmental agreement between Taos County and the Economic Development Department.
Okay.
Move to approve? Now, second.
Madam Clerk.
Commissioner May.
Yes.
Vice Chair Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Chairman Ramada.
Yes, very good. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on then to Item... Actually, I believe someone else from the audience wanted to speak under the Citizen Concerns, Stephen. So Commissioners, I would entertain a motion to amend the agenda to go back to Citizen Concerns.
So moved?
I'll go ahead in second. Madam Clerk.
Yes.
Vice Chair Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Chairman Ramada.
Yes, Stephen, if you want to come forward, thank you very much.
Goodness, yes. I wonder if somebody, either one of the Commissioners or maybe the staff, if you can't bring up the Taos County homepage, if somebody could just follow along with me, they wouldn't mind. Just go to the homepage, and we'll start there. I was looking for something yesterday afternoon, and I couldn't find it. If you go to the homepage and you click on the event calendar, it gives you the calendar, but for today's date, there's no mention of any meeting. The regular County Commission meetings are indicated on the 13th and the 27th. I mean, that's something I discovered yesterday while looking for something else, but that doesn't seem to me right. If we're going to have a... If we as a community, society, group, whatever you want to call it, feel like the computer's going to save us, and it's going to give us information to everybody at the touch of a fingertip, well, that's fine, but the information's got to be good. This is not good information. So now, what I wanted to do at this point was I wanted to go back to April to look for an agenda. You can go forward, you can jump ahead, and you can see scheduled meetings that are in the future, but if you wanted to go back from this point to check into a meeting that you had some question about, you can't do it. So from right here, looking at 6th May, 2014, you wanted to say, go back just in this 10 days, two weeks, to the 28th of April, you can't do that. So see by... If you try C by week, and what it does is it gives you from the 4th of May to the 10th of May, but it doesn't seem... There's no way you can navigate. Can I go back another week? Go back to the 28th? I can't do it from C by week, so I'll go to C by month, and what C by month is going to give you is simply May all over again. And there it is, all over again. So I'll try... And you can't navigate in there, so I'll try C by year. What I'm trying to do is to see the last month in April, so I can see the agenda for the 28th. So when you hit C by year, you get by month sort of a synopsis of the month, of the previous month. My first question is, why does this look different than the event calendar for May or any other month? Why does this change when you go back? There's something about the continuity of visual cues that we know what we're looking for. So what I was looking for was the 28th of April agenda, and I see April 2014, but its makeup, its design is different, and it doesn't seem to me it needs to be that way. Why can't it... Why, if you go back to a previous month, why can't the previous month look like the current month, so that you're just in this sort of mindset? So April 28th, there are... It says Regular County Commission Meeting, but... And it's near the top, it's the second one, so I'm assuming that would be the first meeting of the month, the regular commission meeting. I don't know that for a fact, but I went through and I looked at them, and there are three of them. There are three regular Taos County Commission meetings. If you click on the last one, thinking, well, maybe that's going to be the 28th...
Hold on a second, Steve. Mr. Archuleta, I was wondering if maybe we could get someone from our staff... Well, actually Conrad?
Actually, I'm trying to get Mr. Dave Travis down there, if Conrad can...
Okay.
Thank you.
Go ahead, you may continue, Steve.
Thank you. And clicking on the last one gives you Regular County Commission Meeting Tuesday, the 15th of April, but there's no agenda here. So I'm trying to figure out, how do I get there? And I understand that there is a... Under the Commission drop-down menu, there's a Document Center or Agendas, but if you go there, there's no agenda for the 28th of April. So I went back to the first page, back to home, and about two-thirds of the way down or so, there's a breaking news banner about the 28th. So I'm on the homepage right now, and under the map, there's a breaking latest news, Taos County Board of Commissioners Special Meeting, 28/4/14, April 28, 2014. So I thought, oh, great, I'll go there. And when you go there, you get the special meeting of Thursday, May 1st. No information is better than this information, quite honestly. This sucks. Pardon the expression. There's no excuse for it, really, as far as I'm concerned. Maybe paving roads and putting roofs on TCED centers, that's important, but if we can't find... If the community can't find the information that it needs to sort of insert itself into a conversation, what good is it? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Stephen. Anyone from staff? Travis, Mr. Travis?
Yeah, I didn't hear his comments, so I'm not sure what he was commenting about, but you know, I'm happy to address citizens' concerns. It'd be nice if they, you know, came to me first before putting them out in front of the County Commission, but so if he's willing to come talk to me, I'm willing to listen and see what we can do to...
Okay. Mr. Chairman, if I could, a little bit. First of all, I'd like, just for the listening public, to understand that Taos County is in the process of actually establishing this new website, and so, Mr. Hall, thank you very much for bringing some of these items to light to us. There is not a requirement by Taos County to actually have that historical data on the website. There's only so much data that can actually be kept on the website, and because of that, we have a record that is kept at the Clerk's office. The other thing that Taos County has done in trying to insert people's comments and make sure that the visiting public knows as much as they can is that we are now broadcasting our actual commission meetings live. You can also go to Channel 22 with U&amp;M, and you can actually view the full commission meeting. You can go to any section of the commission meeting through Channel 22. You can also go to YouTube and also get the special meetings, the commission meetings or any of those things live, as those are coming forward. We understand that there's going to be some problems. The issue is that there's also limitations as to how much data we can keep on there as far as historical data. As far as Channel 22 goes, that's unlimited, and we have that available, and anybody can view that at any time, but the official record is actually kept at the Clerk's office. If we have a request for public information, we'd be more than happy to provide that information to anybody at any time.
Thank you, Steve, for those remarks, and Stephen, you came forward. Did you want to say anything else in addition?
I understand the problems of storage, but storage is cheap. I think Conrad will tell you that, and so whatever it costs, it seems to me that you can find that little bit of money, and it really is that little bit of money. As far as the historical record, this is 10 days ago, you know, two weeks ago. This is not history, this is current events. So I don't think you... That's mixing apples and oranges to say that we can't keep everything, and if you want something, you need to go to the Clerk's office. If that's the case, then don't sit up there and tell us that I can find, I as a citizen, I as a member, that I can find what information I need 24 hours a day. This was at 6:00 last night. How can I come and ask for information at 6:00 in the evening? It doesn't work. It's not working, and it's not true just of Taos County. The same can be said of communities everywhere. Another community in this town has similar significant problems, as far as I'm concerned.
Thank you, Stephen, and I would suggest maybe that you get together with a member of our staff and have a discussion with regards to this, so that you can learn more about it.
But how can you have a breaking news banner that says April 28th, and you go to look at what the... To look at that information, and the agenda says May 1st? That's not something that I need to fix, as far as I'm concerned. Thank you.
Right, thank you. Conrad?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I actually would welcome Mr. Hall to come and talk to our staff and see if we can address those. This was actually the first that I knew of any need for additional historical information to be posted on the website, and I think it's very important, but if the public doesn't bring it to us, you know, in another manner, we can't really address it until they really let us know, and personally, I feel in a public forum like this, this isn't the right place to do that.
Okay, thank you, Conrad, and thank you all for the work you do. Okay, we'll move on then to the next item. This is Item 8. Presentations, Discussion, Consideration, Decisions Regarding the Following. Item A, this is a work study on Ancianos Transition Update by Non-Metro Area Agency on Aging in Taos County Transition Team. Mr. Archuleta?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I'll have Mr. Mike Chahill come up and introduce our guests today, and welcome them to the podium. Thank you for being here.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, audience. Today we have Mr. Tim Armour and Ms. Michelle Bustos from AAA Area Agency on Aging, and they're going to give a little history and a little background on what's going on with the Ancianos transition.
Okay, and I understand there are also some board members from Ancianos, present in Commission chambers, so welcome, Mr. Armour. Welcome, and also to the Board of Ancianos.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, and I would also like to introduce Diana Rivera, who's our manager for the Non-Metro AAA here in the Taos office, and is also former provider, so very familiar with this whole process. I'm actually second string for you today. Our Director of the Non-Metro AAA, her name is Jenny Martinez, and she had a death in the family, and unfortunately wasn't able to join us for the work study. If you would indulge me, I'd like to just provide a little bit of background about our organization and the provision of senior services really throughout New Mexico, and then go into a little bit more detail in terms of the interaction we've had with the county staff. The Older Americans Act of 1967 is where we actually get all the senior funding throughout the United States that comes to the... the United States that comes to the individual states. That passes into the Aging and Long-Term Services Department at the state of New Mexico. Under that act, they kind of created a three-legged stool. You have the state itself is one leg, you have the actual providers of services out there in the communities who are interacting directly with the seniors in the various locations. And then they created what's called the Area Agencies on Aging. And in New Mexico, there were four geographic areas established with a respective Area Agency on Aging in those geographic areas. There was a Northern Geography, which our agency covered. There was an Eastern, a Southern, and then a Metro, which is the Albuquerque area. The purpose of the Area Agencies on Aging was to do really three things. One was to be a pass-through agency. All the federal and state money that go to senior services go through the Area Agencies on Aging to the providers in the respective communities of their geographies. They were also responsible for ensuring compliance, that all the state and federal regulations are being met by the providers in accordance with the laws, et cetera. And then finally, to be an advocate, to ensure that the needs of the seniors in those communities are being addressed. So acting something as an arbitrary third party, an objective third party, to make sure that what the seniors are needing in those respective communities are actually being addressed. So that was the role of our agency. Over time, we've consolidated to go beyond the northern counties. We've consolidated with the other AAAs, so that we cover all of New Mexico with the exception of Bernaleo County. In that role as the Area Agency on Aging, we contract with providers. So throughout the state, we have 71 different providers. Predominantly, those are counties and cities in the various areas. We also have some nonprofit organizations that we contract with, and we have some for-profits, a handful, about three or so. The services that are provided, there's about 16 different services for seniors under both the state funding and the federal funding that are funded. But the primary ones are what we call congregate meals. So that's what we traditionally are familiar with, with individuals going into senior centers and having a meal. There's also the home-delivered meal. That's actually our predominant service right now in terms of both cost and units, is predominantly the home-delivered meal. So those who can't get out of their home for whatever reason, meals are delivered to them. And then also transportation services, to provide an opportunity for seniors to get to appointments, shopping, or other activities. So the services are provided in the transportation. And there's a number of other services as well, but those are the big three that are provided. And those are specifically what are provided here in Taos County. We've contracted with a nonprofit corporation for a while here in Taos County, and for a number of reasons, we are looking at an opportunity, and we've approached the county staff earlier this year to see if the county would be willing to take on the aging services for the four sites here in Taos County. So we've been engaged with staff over the past several months, the transition team, I think is how the county has described it, with Michael Trujillo heading that up. And I believe we've arrived at an agreement in terms of both the budget and the various items moving forward into the next fiscal year, with an understanding that the county would begin services July 1st. So we're willing to do that, and we've negotiated the various costs, et cetera, with the county, and provided them all the background information they needed in order to come to a legitimate number in terms of the units and the costs associated with that. And so I think we're ready to move forward. So basically, we're here today to answer any questions you might have. I believe Mr. Trujillo has some presentation to make as well. But Michelle, who is our Compliance and Financial Manager at the agency, is here to help us answer any questions, as well as Diana, who is very familiar with the various senior sites here in Taos County, as well as the history of the operations up to this point. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to either Michael or any questions you might have.
Mr. Chairman, I have some questions for you.
Yes, sir.
Who's your boss?
So our agency is a joint public agreement agency for the eight counties here in northern New Mexico. So our boss is the Board of Directors, which is comprised of members from the various counties, four members of each of the counties. Chairman Romero serves on that Board of Directors, as well as the other eight counties. The counties that we serve directly are not only Taos, but also Santa Fe, Los Alamos, Ria Reba, Colfax, Moora, and San Miguel.
Okay, my other question is, why is it that you people let this really get out of hand? Why is it that there's 46 audit findings? And why is it, on the other hand, that you never appropriated any money for the building?
Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Duran, the way the process works is that we are not have any oversight in terms of the capital items. We're strictly responsible for the funding and the compliance with the operations itself. The capital items are handled directly by the state agency, the Aging and Long-Term Services Department. We do have the opportunity with our staff and working with the various providers to be able to review capital issues and make recommendations, but ultimately, it's up to the Aging and Long-Term Services Department to address the capital issues. From the operational aspect, that's an excellent question. What we've done over the past, really going back to July of 2012, is we've provided substantial technical assistance to both staff and the Board of Directors of the current provider. We have provided additional funding based on the availability of revenue and resources to assist in addressing various issues. I think we've been, you know, very patient. We've tried to help them through the various issues. They've had a number of turnovers, not only on their Board of Directors, but also in terms of the Executive Directors at the agency. So, you know, in the past two years, I think they've had four or three different Executive Directors as well. So that's caused some transitional issues there. But we have gone through a process each year of assessing the operations. We've given them specific actions that they had to perform in order to come into compliance with the contract. And that's why we've come to this point now with regards to looking to another entity to contract with, because we don't believe we can continue forward.
And let me ask you about this audit findings. If the county does take it over, will the county take this clean, or will the audit findings come along with the county? See, because I got a little problem, though. That is, that this audit findings come along with what you guys let get out of control. The audit findings will haunt the county for five or six years, which will, we won't get no CDBG grants, no federal grant funding, you know, and that bothers me.
Yeah, that's very reasonable. And just for an issue of clarification, what is not being proposed is the county to take over Ancianos. It is a matter of contracting with our organization for the provision of senior services in the county. So it's a matter from our perspective of choosing not to contract with one organization and seeking to contract with the county for providing these services. So you are not taking on the liabilities or the issues of the corporation, Ancianos Incorporated. So addressing the audit issues specifically is that does not come over to the county, because it's a separate entity, it's a separate contract.
So can I get that in black and white from you?
Certainly.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Commissioners, also, you know, I agree with the Commissioner Duran. I think we need, there's problems out there, and if I could, I'd like to have the Board of Directors, somebody from the Board, come up and have them speak on this also. This is very important. You know, I support the Ancianos Senior Program. It's very important up in this rural area. I just don't want it to, I don't want to lose it, but at the same time, we've got problems out there. I'd like to see how we can correct, and I'd like to get the Board of Directors, Ms. Armiho, if you could come up and elaborate on that.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning, Bill.
Everyone, gentle. All I can tell you is that we have gone through several executive directors, and it's been a very trying time, because we've tried to clean up, thank you, we've tried to clean up a lot of problems that we had, and we've come a long way. However, there are some things that we're still working on, and I feel that by the time the county takes over, all of these problems will be resolved. We have a good working board, and we're working, pushing our executive director a little hard to try and get some of this stuff done, but I really think that by the time the county takes over, everything will be resolved.
Ms. Armiho, welcome. Good morning. Who is currently on the Board?
We have Lori Jaramillo, and she's here. Kelly, and I cannot pronounce her last name, I'm sorry. Creach, thank you. And we have Mr. Gonzalez, Alfonso Gonzalez. We have Abigail Adame, she's our chairperson. I'm the vice chair. And who did I leave out? Let's see, Kelly is our secretary, and that's it. We have five board members right now.
Okay.
We brought it down from 11 to nine, and then finally down to five, because we had a hard time getting a quorum together. And so we've been, we're down to five, but we're working real well.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Sanchez?
Chairman, Commissioners, I'd like to thank you, the Board of Directors, for working on issues that have been a problem, and I know you guys will take care of that. And Commissioners, before we take it over, I'd like for the Board of Directors to continue taking care of these issues that are out there. And I used to sit on the Anciano Board, and at one of the meetings, I brought up the issue that I could not be attending those meetings. So what I did, I brought it up to the chairperson and the members in attendance that day, that if they could get somebody else on board, and I suggested, I threw out a name out there, and I just threw it out there like being from my district, and they agreed on it. It wasn't my doings, I didn't vote on it. It was up to the Board to pick the certain person, which was Kaylee Creach, that was appointed by the Board. I just want to clarify that. I know there's been some issues saying that I was the one that put it on there. I was not. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Armiho, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else from Ancianos? Go ahead. And state your name for the record again. Thank you.
I am Lori Jaramillo. I represent Questa Village, and I am very upset that they mentioned that it's because of the board members that this program is going down, and I don't think so. And I would appreciate if you do take it over. Please, we need new directors, we need new programs, and we need a lot of help. And I said that in the beginning, and that's what I feel. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I believe that is the intention of the Taos County Board of Commissioners.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Chairman?
Commissioner Barone?
Mr. Armour, if you would, please, just have a couple of questions as far as, in the event Taos County does move forward in taking over the organization, would the Board that is currently serving, the Ancianos Board, I guess, would then the County Commission become that same Board? And then that Board could be then moved to an advisory board? Is that the kind of just the situation that we're looking at?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Barone. Again, the issue at stake here really isn't a function of Ancianos Incorporated itself. Whatever they choose to do moving forward, and the relationship between the county and Ancianos is really up to the county Board of Commissioners. Our contract would be with the county, and we would hold you to the compliance requirements of that. I believe, based on the history with other counties and other local public bodies that we contract with for these services, that that governing body acts as the Board of Directors in terms of the contractual requirements that we have in providing those senior services. So however you want to formulate your relationship with the Board of Directors of Ancianos, whether you want that to be your advisory, or if you yourselves want to act as the advisory body, which many other city councils and county commissions act in our contracts with them. So it's really flexible as to what you guys choose to be the best for Taos County.
And that just leads me back to the question that Commissioner Duran brought up. Because of the possible, you know, July 1st date to take over, you know, that we start with a clean slate, so that the audit findings don't follow it. Because, you know, recently, we took over another, the Housing Authority, and those audit findings followed us, puts us in a predicament, and we just want to make sure that as of July 1st, that we start with a clean slate, so that our finance takes over. And if we are the Board, that it's going to be overseeing it, that we can oversee our own financial destiny.
Precisely. So Chairman Romero and Commissioner Barone, again, from our perspective, as the funding agency and the compliance agency, as we'd be looking at the county strictly as the county, we would not be taking any consideration, nor would the Aging and Long-Term Services Department of the state of New Mexico, nor the Administration on Aging at the federal level, look to the issues with Ancianos. And another point of clarification is I understand that particular findings in the audit with Ancianos primarily deal with the volunteer programs, which is not what we're talking about for the purposes of this contract. We're talking about the provision of senior services, and we don't have any role in the volunteer programs. We don't contract for those. That's directly with the Aging and Long-Term Services Department. So we can't speak to that. So that would be separate from this contract itself. So I think on those two points, our contract would be clean from the start. As I said, we know, it would be written in contract, in black and white, that none of those issues related to Ancianos, Inc., would have any bearing whatsoever on the provision of services by Taos County. In addition, the issues that they do have to deal with regards to their audit reflect a different program and a different funding source than what we're speaking of here for these purposes.
And Bob, would we then be eligible to continue our, I guess, contract with like the foster grandparent type or grandparenting? You know, I know they make a big difference in our school system, and I believe there's a small amount of $2.65 that those grandparents get paid per hour, but that's a separate funding issue. But will we still be eligible for that?
Commissioner, that is, as you correctly point out, a completely separate program. We would have to, we, the county, and it's important to always keep that in mind. My marching orders have always been from this commission, that it has to be a clean break. And we would not be taking over the Ancianos organization. We would be stepping in as a brand-new organization, running a program, and we would contract, in the case of the programs that are being talked about today, with the state. The programs you're talking about, I think, would be a direct contract with the federal government. And Steve has some further information about that.
Well, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, we actually have a representative here from the volunteer programs, and I'd like to ask him to come up and speak to the commission Mike, listen.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, my name's Ernesto Ramos, and I am the Senior Services Bureau Chief for the Aging and Long-Term Care Department. We contract directly with Ancianos for the volunteer programs. In response to some of your questions here, this particular contract's a little more complex, because there are federal funds involved. And the Corporation for National Community Service, the federal funding agency, has to make the decision as to which way they want to go. Insofar as the state is concerned, we provide close to $120,000 for both programs. So like I said, it's a little more complex in that we have to see what the corporation will be doing. I know I have my marching orders regarding what we do and how we do it from the Cabinet Secretary, Gino Rinaldi. And so that's still, we're waiting to see what transpires, but we have, we were hoping that Ancianos would work with the corporation and meet with them, so that they could decide which way we want to go. Obviously, we provide the funding that goes through the AAA, in this case, the non-metro AAA for which Mr. Armour is talking about. We provide those funds, and they subcontract with Ancianos. Obviously, we have to look at that very closely, in that we would like to be where they are. We don't necessarily have to do that, but we obviously were leaning in that direction. And the problems that have existed here had been with the programs and the funding that the non-metro AAA funds, not with our funding. Okay? Okay? But however, there's some situations here that we have to consider very closely. And to answer your question, or somebody's question, Mr. Chairman, yes, you are eligible, you know, to administer the volunteer programs themselves. But we have to wait and see what action the corporation does have, does make rather in terms of those programs. But we most definitely support the non-metro AAA and their decisions in terms of what they need to do. They are the ones that oversee the programs, not us directly. But we're interested in the decisions that they make. We are in support. We are aware of what transpired here. And so we are in support of what they're trying to do in the best interest of the seniors of Taos County, and so are we, insofar as the volunteer programs is concerned. Because we'd like to work together with Onceanos to see a smooth transition, if in fact that happens. And of course, you know, we will, we've met with your fiscal people and discussed with them what we're ready to do. But again, it's important to point out, I've been in communications with the Corporation for National Community Service regarding what they need to do and what they want to do. So they're waiting to see what transpires here. So anyway, I'll stand to answer any questions you might have.
Commissioners?
Chairman?
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes, I'd like to direct this to Mr. Armour. Mr. Armour, are you aware of the building, as far as mold, asbestos?
Yes, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Sanchez, we are aware. In fact, our staff that we house here in office are affected by that very issue. And we've been assisting Mr. Trujillo in trying to find some emergency funding to address that issue with regards to the building, and I believe it's primarily a roof-related issue, and as well as working with the Aging and Long-Term Services Department with regards to that. So I do believe that there's potentially a solution here with regards to funding. Again, that's something that we can provide assistance to in terms of networking, but we don't have any purview over the funding for that. That's an Aging and Long-Term Services Department issue directly, because we are not allowed to oversee the capital aspects.
And Mr. Armour, also, I'm looking at this here, this capital outlay monies from legislative session, and it says Taos Philowato Senior Set Improvement. And there's monies there, Taos Philowato Center renovate, and also for the center's meals equipment, and also for vehicles. So is that, that's quite a bit of money, according to this, what I have here. I don't know if you've seen it?
I'm not intimately familiar with that. Again, we go through a process of asking our various providers, in this case, for those funds, if that was in this past legislative session, those would be funds that were requested by Onceanos. And we go through a process where we view those requests, and then we provide information to the Aging and Long-Term Services Department. Rebecca Martinez oversees that at the department. And then those items go forward into the legislative session. And those funds, if they were this past session, I don't believe they're available immediately. And the issue right now, and we've been seeking emergency funding that the Aging and Long-Term Services Department has, as well as other state agencies, to try and address the immediate problem there with the building at Onceanos.
Thank you, Mr. Armour. And I would ask Mike Trujillo and Mr. Archuleta, our county manager, to share some more light. I know it's a little complex, the relationships and the way it all is being designed, but if you can just present it a little softer and easier as to how it's all going to be in July, I would really appreciate that.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, and just to answer some of the questions Commissioner Sanchez had, that 182,500 is a general obligation bond that happened, that was approved this year and signed on March 11 by the governor.
It was requested by?
That was requested by the previous director, which was Ronnie Achenich at the time. So they requested these funds. There was 295,000 for equipment, and then there was approximately 98,300 and some for equipment, for meals, and providing types of other equipment that's needed within the building itself. But that money probably won't be available till the spring, once the bond sale and the grant agreements are drafted up. But I did speak with Rebecca Martinez yesterday, and there was a 2012 general obligation bond for the amount of $62,000 that was actually approved. And my understanding from her, and I got an email from her, which I can forward to you, but they're looking at drafting for that $62,000. They're looking at drafting the grant agreements. They're working on them as we speak. So we should get that money this year, and that should be able to address the roof problem. I know we got a quote from our construction manager, which is Mr. Richard Sanchez, and he, the quote that was given to us by him was about approximately 40,000 to repair the roof on that building. And that 62,000 should be able to cover that aspect of it, plus some other issues that we might need to address within that building itself. And then, once we get the funding for the next year, we can continue the rehabilitation of that particular building.
Commissioner Blankenhorn?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess this is a general question for staff. We are going to enter into, the Board is going to enter into a contractual relationship with AAA, and then what will, and then there's another contract that I guess is still open in terms of whether that's going to be with the Board or Onceanos. Is that correct? And then are we going to make a decision about whether we want to take that contract also, or leave it with Onceanos? And one more related question is, what will our relationship with Onceanos be in terms of the AAA contract? Do we have that plan?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Commissioner Blankenhorn, I'll take the latter of the questions first, and I'll try to get them in sequence. Our relationship with Onceanos will cease to exist, reference the Board of Directors and the actual Onceanos Incorporated. Taos County will then become the provider of the services for the senior program or senior citizens of Taos County. So there will not be a relationship unless the commission chooses to have them as an advisory board to the commission, but only in that capacity.
And that provision of services will be under the AAA contract?
That's correct.
And what about the other?
So then we have the federal contract, which is what Mr. Ramos has come to speak about. And currently, Onceanos Incorporated is actually the holder of that contract. We have asked the Board of Directors to consider basically notifying the federal government that they are not going to move forward with that contract in 2014, 2015. And then Taos County would actually apply for those funds, so those senior citizens programs would continue to happen within the volunteer programs within Taos County.
And so if the county is under contract for both, what then will be the role of the Onceanos Corporation?
Other than, as I stated earlier, as an advisory board to the commission for senior programs, that would be the only role that they would have at that point.
If we choose.
If we choose to, yes, sir.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Chairman, Commissioners, Mike, if the transition were to take place, how would the county be as far as the issues that we have, as far as mold, asbestos, the condition of the building? I know it's not owned by the county, but to improve for the seniors?
What we've been working on, and I know I've been working with Mark Flores, and we've actually requested quotes for an assessment done on that building to find out what type of mold there is in that building. And actually, Mark is waiting on quotes. Mark, you want to come up here?
Also, Mr. Trujillo, while Mr. Flores is coming forward, is that the town of Taos and the county had a joint meeting last week, and we discussed the ownership of the building. And I believe everyone is in agreement that the county will take over ownership of the building, and you will also be utilizing those funds that have been awarded from the legislature to make those improvements necessary to the building.
Yes, that was my understanding also, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. It would make sense for the county, since we were proposing to take over the program to own the building, so that we can continue to rehabilitate that building, and not just that building, but the other buildings that are within the auspices of the program. So that does make complete sense. And Mark, you want to?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Commissioner Romero, I just, I want to be very clear, though. There is the $282,000 that was given by the legislature. Those bonds have not been sold yet. So those probably will not be sold till September?
Correct.
They're supposed to be voting on the bonds, I think, in October, November.
Okay. So that money won't be available to Taos County until probably February or March of next year. So the issue that we have to deal with here today is that we actually have some roof leaks there, we have some mold there that we need to mitigate, and so that's why we've asked AAA to look at some emergency funding as a possibility in order to do that prior to us going in, or at the same time that we're going in.
Thank you, Mr. Archuleta, for shedding some light on that.
And actually, that 62,000 that they're actually working on the contract agreements now, we should be able to get that money hopefully by July to actually start working on the repairs of that particular building. So, Mark, you want to address the?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, to echo kind of what's already been said at the meeting here, there's been some roof issues for some amount of time there, and the roof's been leaking. It has little to no slope, so there's been a lot of standing water on it. The membrane on the roof is cracked, which allows water to penetrate the building, as well as the parapets. The stucco is also cracked. A lot of that's been due to neglect and a lack of maintenance. There is currently a mold issue that's very visible on the north end of the building. There's been some concern brought up by our legal team as to what other issues the building may have in regards to asbestos, hazardous materials, indoor air quality, and so forth. I did receive two quotes to mitigate the mold from two CES vendors. They're relatively close in numbers. One of the vendors will return the building to its prior condition, prior to mitigation, which I think was my recommendation to go with that contractor. We also have requested some quotes for an environmental assessment of the building. When I met with these mold contractors, there was some concern about asbestos. The building was constructed in 1987, which is relatively new. I think asbestos was banned in 1978 to be in any type of construction material, but they did have some concern about it. So in the environmental assessment, I have requested that asbestos be tested, hazardous material, indoor air quality, and mold. I'm waiting on those quotes.
But, Mr. Chairman?
Commissioners?
At whose expense?
Sir, I was just requested to get quotes right now. We don't own the building. It's still a town-owned house building. Mr. Malone has requested, you know, we need to know what the building has prior to taking it over.
Mr. Malone, go ahead.
Yeah, and I'm glad that Mr. Flores mentioned that, from the legal department's perspective, Mr. Chairman, we need to know what the environmental condition of that building is before we take it over. I mean, it would be backwards to take it over and then find out.
And in the joint meeting with the town of Taos last week, I believe it was indicated by their staff that in fact there was no asbestos in the building.
Mr. Chairman, yes, sir. I did meet with Steve Kennebeck, the facilities director for the town of Taos, this last week, and we did a walkthrough of the building. He did iterate that, that, you know, there should not be any mold in there, but I think, you know, asbestos, excuse me, thanks for the correction. But, you know, it'd be good to have that on paper. I think, you know, I wouldn't, you know, Richard Sanchez, Richard is here?
I believe it is on paper. I believe that they do have an official written report that says that.
Okay, and the reason I'm, Richard, could you come here for a second? Richard's relatively familiar with asbestos and so forth, and do you have any comments in regards to that?
Well, Commissioners, Chair, other than it's a relatively new building, until you have tested glues and some sheet goods for flooring materials, where it still did contain asbestos, as long as it's not ground up, turned into dust, it's not harmful, or the seniors not chewing on the floor. But without an actual assessment from a certified testing facility, you really can't say.
Okay. And once a certified industrial hygienist comes in to run those tests, and we get the results, we'll have an understanding of what, how to move forward within that aspect of it, so.
Mr. Chairman, I'm just following the direction given to me by upper management in regards to the environmental assessment. Once we get those numbers back, we may be able to pick that apart and go from there. But in regards to Mr. Malone and his concerns, I think it's in our best interest to do a full assessment prior to taking over the building.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, just for clarification purposes, we actually don't have that in writing. That's part of the reason we're going through the process, to just make sure that it's a safe environment for everybody.
Right. But I do know that it was indicated in last week's joint meeting that they do have all of this in writing already, so.
Mr. Chairman, if that is the case, I would recommend that the town of Taos forward that over to the county.
Yeah, if you can approach them about it as well.
Any other questions from the commission?
Commissioner Blankenhorn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The geo bond of approximately 200,000, is that what you'd said?
For the actual building repairs, 182,500, that was for this fiscal year, that was assigned this fiscal year. There's 62,000 from a 2012 general obligation bond that actually they're working on the grant agreements to provide to us so that we can work on that building. So that amount is for actual rehabilitation and renovation of that particular building. And then there's 295,000 to purchase vehicles for all the sites at Onceanos. And then there's 98,300 and some thousand dollars available for equipment for, to put in the buildings to provide, to make the food, preparation of the food, per se, so. So we do have some funding coming in, available, that won't tap the county's general fund and try to address those issues. And then we do, we did get some money from AAA as a transition part of the agreement to, if, I think when we get the quotes to get that assessment paid for, I think we might have the money available within those funds to pay for, which again, won't fall into the general fund portion of the budget.
And the 62,000 will be available this summer?
That's my understanding. I spoke with Rebecca Martinez yesterday, and she sent me an email, advised me that they were working on the contracts for those funds.
What's the plan for those funds?
To rehabilitate the roof right away, to fix that particular roof, and then whatever else, I think, our construction manager thinks needs to be done with that particular building to make sure that at least we prevent the mold from growing by preventing the leaks.
And then the 182,000 that should be available next spring, 2015, what's the plan for that money?
That's to rehabilitate the rest of the building and whatever else needs to be done. We have sidewalks, we have ADA compliance issues that need to be addressed, and some parking issues that would need to be addressed. So those are some of the funds that we can utilize to address those issues.
And we feel as though the 244,000 will be sufficient for all of those projects?
Actually, I've requested in this year's capital outlay budget, an additional 134,000 in general obligation funds to try to complete the project, you know, for this coming fiscal year. So I submitted a request for $134,000 in additional capital outlay funds for rehabilitation of that building.
So you think maybe closer to 400,000 for the?
Well, we had looked at approximately, because of the funding that come in, we had looked at about 400, 450,000 to rehabilitate that building back to code, to get it where it needs to be. So that's why, because we found out we're having these additional monies, I submitted $134,000. And matter of fact, I got to go Friday to Santa Fe to testify on behalf of the LFC for these funds.
Thank you, Mike.
Mr. Chairman, let me ask this question. Wouldn't it be cheaper to buy a metal building? You can buy a metal building 20 by 60 for about 20,000. Why spend $450,000?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Duran, to answer your question, I did a walkthrough of the building with Steve Kennebeck from the town of Taos, and you know, the building is in relatively good condition. There's a portion of the roof that has leaked, and it was unmaintained for a certain amount of time, 15, 10 years, 20 years, and that is called a mold growth. Mold only grows with moisture, and it's only on the north wall that we're seeing signs of mold. Now, we could pick the building apart and prod and poke and find anything that we may want to find in there. But in our, in our facilities inspection, it's in relatively good shape. The north wall is an area of concern. The roof is an area of concern. There's some lighting issues, interior, exterior, that can be addressed relatively inexpensively. The kitchen has some equipment that may need to be replaced. The plumbing is pretty sound. It does have an older boiler in walking. The building with Steve Kennebeck, now, I don't want to put this in stone, but we were talking about $250,000 possibly to get that building. about 250,000 possibly to get that building like new. There's some concrete issues on the exterior. There were some HVAC concerns brought forward, but it's not my building yet. I haven't done a full, thorough inspection of it. It is a townhouse building. We did a aesthetic walkthrough, took notes, but the building is in relatively good shape and I have no concern taking it over and overseeing the building.
Thank you, Mark.
So, Mr. Chairman, that was my concern. You know, 250,000, that seems like that would be sufficient to deal with the building. And so, you know, I just worry about trying to acquire additional public funds unless it's necessary, you know. And so I, that's why I had that question about getting up to 400,000.
But beyond that, the bottom line, the true bottom line is our senior citizens just wanting to make sure that they have ideal accommodations and facilities that they can go to and utilize.
And actually, that building is kind of small. The seniors are outgrowing that particular building. So some of these funds we could utilize if we have left over to add on to that particular building because they do have dance classes, they have programs that they have in there, and they really don't have the facility, the room in that facility to do what they need to do.
Wouldn't it be nice if, you know, speaking of metal buildings, if we could lift up from the ground the one up in Amalia that's sitting vacant and move it to Taos?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, I just, to answer Commissioner Blankenhorn's question also, Taos County has to go through a process of actually putting in your capital request before we actually go to the legislature. If things change and we're able to update the building and get the proper funding in there, and we don't need any additional money, then of course, we're not going to go and ask for that money. But because it's a request, we have to go in front of the LFC, we have to go to hearings and basically make our case as to why we're asking for this money come February of next year. So it's just a part of the process that we go through.
And the good thing, we can always reauthorize those, have those funds reauthorized for something else that we might need. The whole idea is not lose the money, but unfortunately, we can't, you know, we don't know the building's conditions, everything. So we had to, we're trying to get ahead of the game by requesting funds.
Thank you, Mike.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for Mr. Armour, or maybe it's for Mr. Archuleta. On vacation, annual leave, all them people accumulated over there that got out of control, who's going to pay for that?
Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Durant, that's an issue for Ancianos Incorporated. That does not come over to Taos County.
So then who's going to pick up the bill?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, in working with the Ancianos Board and looking at the number of units that have been provided this year, it seems like there's about $100,000. Might correct me if I'm wrong. That's possibly available for that. So it's looking like that will be taken care of for the employees through the Ancianos, Inc. program.
My other question is, now that these employees are going to become Taos County employees, are they matching everything that we need? We're like, what? I don't remember how many dollars.
I think that's been part of the negotiation, Commissioner Durant. As we stand of, as far as I understand it, as of today, there's about 861,303 that we would project as expenditures for next year, and that's actually what AAA has said would be our revenues for next year. So yes.
So there was an increase of 149, I have it here somewhere. 143,399 to cover the PERA, our insurance or benefits that AAA has worked with us in ensuring that when the employees do come over, we will be able to cover their needs. So...
Commissioner Sanchez?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, also another issue that I had, there was some money, I think it was like 8,000 on, I think, I believe these folks in Amalia, that they had raised some funding and they lost that. I don't know if you were aware of that, Mr. Armour?
You've got more problems.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Sanchez, I'm not aware, but if that's something, we can get that information from the county or from yourself, that'd be fine, and we'll look into that. So, I don't know. I'm sorry, I'm not prepared to address that. I'm not aware of that.
Mike, was that, I thought that was the loans that were paid back? Were those paid back?
Loans that were, that were, that were given out. And apparently, I guess until their audit comes out, and they're still working on the audit, we haven't received their final audit yet. They're working on it. So once that audit comes out, we should know exactly the amount that was actually utilized, that was taken off from their programs' funds, because it seems that they're getting reimbursed every month for their, for their services, and they have some funds in the bank. So, and they're actually taking, having employees take off leave. So the amounts, you know, projected initially aren't going to be that, the same as, as we had thought before. So they should have money to actually, when they, when they close a program down, they should have money left in their budget to cover these costs, to pay for the, you know, pay back the amounts they need to pay back to these funds. So that's what we're looking at. But until the audit is completed, we won't really know the exact numbers.
Okay. Thank you, Mike.
Let me ask that question now. When's the audit supposed to be completed?
It was supposed to be completed April 30. And Mona, do you, have you had any word from the auditor? We haven't, we haven't gone there. It was supposed to be done April 30, but we haven't received anything. And Mona hasn't either. So until she gets it, we won't get it. So.
And Chairman, and these are issues that shouldn't really even be coming to us. These are issues that should be handled within their board. That's, these are issues that should be non-issues to us because their, their board should have taken care of this. If we want to take Ancianos over, bring us a clean slate and we'll take it over. If not, we won't take it over. But these are issues that shouldn't even be brought to us. These are their issues. If they want us to take it over, we'll take it over on a clean slate. Let them clean it up and bring a clean slate to us, Commissioners, and not be dealing with us. It's not our issue.
Thank you, Commissioner Barone.
I think we've heard enough.
Ms. Admio?
Chairman, I would like for Don, our Taos site manager, to explain a little bit. She also helps with our finances. She's actually, right now, our finance person. But there's a lot of misinformation, and a lot of this misinformation has come because there is no communication between AAA and the board itself or the county commissioners. You had a meeting with the Town of Taos. We never knew about it until after it happened. And there's a lot of miscommunication. If you want this thing to be smooth, then you need to communicate with the board as well. And that goes for AAA. They need to communicate with the board because we don't hear from them. We don't even know what is going on. Meetings are being held, decisions are being made. The board is, it's easy to blame the board, but how can you blame a board if they're not aware of what's going on? And I would like for Don to explain where these fundings came from and all that.
Commissioners, these fundings are...
Don, state your name for the record. Your full name?
Don Romero, Taos site manager, kind of do a bunch of little things at Ancianos. These loans that everybody are talking about is, it was loans that the previous director, Mr. Romero, had borrowed from the sites to pay for the operations of Ancianos. From what I remember is he came to the Taos site council and asked them to borrow, I think it was like 2,500 to pay for the operations. We were not going to make payroll. We were not going to be able to pay any of our bills. He asked them to use those, and that was what was borrowed to put into the regular account to pay for these bills. From my understanding, it wasn't illegal because they're unrestricted funds that could be used for the operations of Ancianos. It's, it's, I mean, the money's gone. I don't know. I mean, they were supposed to eventually pay it back, but because we were in such a hole, they were never able to pay it back. You know, I feel, I feel bad for the site councils. I know they're having a hard time about it. Right now, there is like 7,000 in that account, and it was supposed to be done, divided in a percentage for each site, to get a percentage of that 7,000. And that was supposed to be done by the previous financial person. It was not ever done before she got, you know, terminated. I know she did come to the board at one time and told them that she figured at least Taos site council had like 3,500 of that 7,000. And, and because they were the bigger site, they had the majority of the money to begin with. So she was supposed to break that up into percentage for each site, but that never happened.
Okay, thank you. Any, anything else?
I believe that's it, other than Shona has something. Shona is also, she's with our grandparents program. Shona Modis Bond?
Hi, I'm Shona Modis Bond. Good afternoon or good morning, Commissioners, Chair. This is my first time in front of one of these. But I just have a few questions, and I'm going to go back to Mr. Archuleta or county manager. I don't know how to address you. But you just stated a minute ago that at one of your meetings, you had mentioned to the board and you notified them about the volunteer program, that you guys weren't going to be taking over that. What meeting was this?
That was never with the board. That was actually a discussion that we had with AAA and with the federal government on that. Let me, let me be real clear. Part of the problem that we have here is that Ancianos, Inc. is a separate entity. Taos County cannot be involved in questioning, running, advising, any of those things, reference the board. If we have any kind of mixture between the board and Taos County, then there can be a clean slate when it comes over to Taos County. The Commission has been very clear because of what happened with the Housing Authority, that we are not to be involved in Ancianos, Inc., only the takeover of the Ancianos program from us. So what my staff has been doing is basically working with AAA, who provides the funding, federal government who provides the funding, so that we can see what the revenues are, what the expenditures are, how we're going to run that program come July 1. Now, if we were to go in and help with audit findings, if we're to go in and help with financial management, if we're going in to help with any of those, then we basically set ourselves up for a liability also, and that's what we've been advised to stay out of. So you're right. I mean, there hasn't been communication with the board because the board doesn't respond to us and we don't respond to the board. That's a separate entity. That's a whole separate organization. So all our conversations have basically been, have been with the funding source of Ancianos. I think that it's important to also recognize is that the county commission didn't ask for this. They came to us and asked the county commission that they would like them to take this over and move forward with that. And because of that, we have some stipulations as to how we want to take it over. Again, I think what the chairman has said and the commissioners have said up here is that our most important, or I guess what we should keep in the back of our mind is that our seniors are what are important. And keeping the programming for our seniors, keeping the meals for our seniors are what important, what's important. The dissolvment or the, how the board will continue to move in the forward as far as the Ancianos board is, is an issue. But what's more of an issue is actually the seniors and making sure that the senior companion programs, the meals, a place for them to go is what really needs to happen.
And I agree. I think that's why we're all here, but I was just on that one. And let me just say one more thing. I'm the program director for the foster grandparents, the senior companion. It's myself and Anna Gurale, who is the supervisor of the volunteers. She's in the back. So we're the two that run the volunteer program with Ancianos. So back on to Malone, you also have stated that you don't know what the plans are for the county in taking over the volunteer program. Is there any way that we can meet with you and start working on it? Because as Metro has stated, they don't have any contracts with the volunteer programs. And as Ernesto had mentioned as well, and with CNCS, we're state and federal funded. So we get our own grants. There's two grants, one for foster grandparents and one for senior companion, which right now, our executive director for Ancianos just completed them and sent them in. So my thing would be is if there's anybody or anybody that we need to talk to about getting the volunteer process going.
From, I can only answer from, from a legal standpoint. And until the government agencies involved tell us that they want us to enter into a contract with them, we can't be involved. The state agencies that we've been talking about have come to us and said they want us to get involved and the non, not the volunteer programs. And as Mr. Ramos said, that is still a decision to be made. And so we can't start the road of taking over a program that the government funding source hasn't told us we're going to be taking over.
You just gave me the first step. Thank you.
Mr. Ramos also wants to talk about that just for a second. That's okay, Mr. Chairman?
With Chairman members of the Commission, just want to clarify, if I may. Evidently, this young lady is doing a fine job with the volunteer programs. I can tell you that. What I wanted to clarify or make a point of is, is the fact we're looking at the best interests of the seniors of Taos County like you are. And yes, they have submitted a proposal for continuation of funding, but that our contract is being held until the decision is made. And I, the other point that I wanted to make to you is that the corporation has no say in terms of who we contract with. That's our decision to make. Their decision to make in terms of the federal funding, our decision to make insofar as the state funding is concerned. But again, they did submit a proposal. I've held it in my office until a decision is made with you all in terms of which, what direction we're going in. But again, I can assure you that this young lady is doing a fine job of administering the program. But that point you need to keep in mind. We make the decision as to how the state funding is awarded and who is awarded to.
Thank you, Mr. Ramos.
Mr. Ramos, if I may, is there a drop dead date that we need to act on this so that we don't jeopardize the funding that we possibly could get from your organization?
You know, there are some things that need to happen immediately, other things that continue to operate. Those things, and I have, those scenarios have not been discussed with Ancianos or with the corporation. But I do have some ideas as how we can do it in a way that if, in fact, we do it and you decide to take the program or you apply for it and we grant you the funding, how it can be done so that there's no disruption in services. But all of us would have to agree on how we do it.
And then, Mr. Chairman, I would recommend or give staff direction to start working with Mr. Ramos so that this transition will be as smooth as possible for all our seniors along with the, with the grandparents program and the other programs that are associated with it.
Thank you, Commissioner Mayor. Mr. Archuleta, any other thoughts?
Unless we have other questions from the Commission, that's all the staff has.
Okay. Thank you very much, Tim and the staff from NCRTD and everyone else. There's a gentleman.
There's a gentleman up here.
Sir?
I'm Alfonso Gonzalez from Amalia. I'm a member of the board of the Ancianos Incorporated. And I just have very few statements to make. One of them is, it's easier said than done. You know how that goes. We make a lot of plans, but then when it gets down to the nitty gritty, we have difficulty making those plans work out. Since I came on board, and this was the latter part of October, the mess that we, has been revealed today and has been known for a while, was already in existence. Since then, there's been a lot of finger pointing at everybody, the board, the directors, et cetera, et cetera. And I think that I agree very strongly with what Mr. Durant said earlier, that why hadn't this mess has been caught earlier when they first started to occur? See, we didn't know about this. Had I known, I wouldn't be in this mess. I wouldn't have volunteered, or not volunteered, I was elected for the position, but I would have stayed out of it. But since I'm here, I'm a very committed person. I will do what it takes to make things right. And our objective as a board of directors is to present to you people, the Commission, which we respect very highly, is we'd like to present to you a very clean slate. But there's a problem. We need money and we don't have it. AAA, I understand, has threatened to stop funding to our source because we're not in compliance. I mean, how are you going to realize revenues to complete the project if we don't really have what it takes? There's one thing that I'm going to suggest, and that is, let's close the center down to pay up for the leave that is owed or whatever other bills might be in existence. The seniors are not going to appreciate that, and neither is the public, because they will go on an uproar. I would like to suggest to all of you that working together will be able to, to give us what we're asking for. To, we will be able to give you a clean slate as you desire and as we desire as well. We want to give you a clean slate. We want to give you a clean slate. But we need the cooperation of AAA, of all the funding sources, and everybody else working together. And I highly urge all of us to look at it from that point of view. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and we are going to move forward. And anyone else? Okay. Mr. Malone.
Mr. Chairman, I think one thing needs to be made as clear as possible, and it's what we mean when we use the term clean slate. When we say clean slate, we mean that if the county does take over these programs, the county has to start clean. It doesn't mean that all of the problems that existed for Ancianos Inc. have to be solved before we take over. It means that our contracts with the various government entities have to make clear that we are not responsible for anything that has happened in the past. And that's something that Mr. Armour has indicated we can put in the contract, and we've had that discussion before. So I just want to be clear that when we use the term clean slate, we're talking about the county starting with its own clean slate, not that every problem that's existed in the past at Ancianos Inc. has to be solved before we take over.
Thank you for summing it up like that, Mr. Malone. We'll move on to the next item, item B. Commissioner Mayor Barone, PowerPoint presentation to update the commission on what has been transpiring with the RTD and the plan for Taos County in the year 2015. We also have Mr. Anthony Mortillo, Executive Director of North Central Regional Transportation District. Welcome.
Commissioners, Mr. Archuleta, Mr. Malone, thank you, guys. Thank you for taking the opportunity for us to be here and really talk to you a little bit about what the NCRTD is all about, what's been happening in years 13, 14, and 14, what's going to be going on in 14, 15. Our mission at the NCRTD, the mission of the North Central Regional Transportation District is to provide safe, secure, and effective public transportation within North Central New Mexico in order to enhance the quality of life of our citizens by providing mobility options and to spur economic development throughout the region. And commissioners, one of the great things that, you know, we look at the NCRTD and we really see an organization that has grown. We're going on our 10th year. We've grown quite a bit. We've added additional services to our community. And as the PowerPoint gets going, we'll get to see some of the exciting, exciting opportunities that we've had. We have 13 members strong. You know, we've served about 1 million people in the, since October of 2007. We have about a $9,600,000 budget. We have about seven 12s, seven to eight 12s in reserve currently. And we have some exciting things that have happened and exciting things that are going to happen. So, you know, one of the ways that the NCRTD was created was through a GRT that was established. And, you know, this GRT will not sunset till 2023. So as, you know, as I've had the opportunity to be elected as the Chair of the NCRTD for a number of years now, and it's a great opportunity for us to take advantage and make sure that we get dollar for dollar, you know, every dollar that the community puts in, that we get a dollar in exchange for a service. So at this time, I, we do have Anthony Montalero. He's our chief, our executive director, and we also have Jim Nagel with us here today. So I'm going to turn it over to Tony and we'll kind of, there's a couple of exciting issues that I'll come back to talk to you here in a little while about.
Before we do that, Commissioner Mayor, I just want to thank you for all the work that you've done with the rural transportation district. And I just want to point out the picture on page two. You look very mayoral there.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Good morning, commissioners. Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
Good morning, and welcome.
As Commissioner Barone and Chair of the RTD indicated, we've accomplished a lot over the years that, since we've been created. Like to just bring some things, some general information to your attention. First of all, this is a map of our NCRTD service area. And as you can see there, we cover four counties, Taos County, Rio de Janeiro County, Santa Fei County, Los Alamos County. That's an area of almost 10,000 square miles that we service. And those blue lines that you see there are the 20-plus routes that we currently provide. And as you'll note, we go all the way to Edgewood, we go all the way to Chama, and we go all the way to Costilla here in Taos County. So quite a spread of service there.
Are you providing any service to the Tres Piedras area yet?
Not yet, but we'll get to that here shortly, Mr. Chairman. The communities we do serve at this point in time, there's approximately 50-plus communities. And you can see here that when you look at Taos County, there's one, two, three. About 15 communities, areas here within the county that we provide service to at this point in time. So there's not another entity like us in the state of New Mexico. And there's not another entity that we've been able to find like us in the nation, especially with the fact that we also service six peleblos within the four county area as well. Here's our ridership, and as the chairman had indicated, we have been growing. We continue to grow. And on this chart, you'll see back in, what is that, actually fiscal year 2007, when we started service, started, had about 48,000 riders. And as we ended 2013, nearly 200,000 riders. And we also provide services through regional contracts with Santa Fe Trails and Los Alamos Transit System, and that's that orange bar. And they've provided over 200 and some thousand worth of rides during that past year. Altogether, almost a half million individuals have been able to utilize the system and benefit from the regional transit tax. This shows ridership by county, and Taos County consists of about 18% of our total ridership at this point in time. And revenues, as the chair indicated, our budget's about 9.3 million. And this gives you some historical review of revenues, but the district has three revenue sources, federal funds, the regional gross receipts tax, and generous contribution from Los Alamos County. That regional gross receipts tax is about 70% of our revenue. And just like the counties where it's collected, when you have economic issues that impact your GRT collections, so do we. We feel the pain as well. We're not insulated from it either. And as you can see from this chart, our gross receipt taxes has been declining. We hope to see that here in 2015, it stabilizes and starts to improve, but also our contributions from Los Alamos County have also been declining due to their economic issues up there. But the good news is we've been able to maintain our services, adjust our services, and reallocate existing dollars to provide additional services. So, and that's the most important thing, is continuing to provide services within the four county area. Expenditures, again, have been fairly static. The one expenditure that changes or can vary quite a bit is capital, and that depends on how many vehicles we're purchasing or whether we have any capital construction that we might be undertaking during any one year. And as was alluded to, this is a three-year chart on our actual GRT expenditures and how we share those revenues back. And basically, we provide the rail runner almost $2 million a year. And that's through an agreement with the Real Metro Transit District and with Santa Fei County that we entered into when that tax was approved, where the rail runner will get 50% of the GRT generated in Santa Fe County. On the whole, it's about 28%. Los Alamos County gets 18% of the GRT for regional services that our board reviews and approves. And Santa Fe County, City of Santa Fe gets about 14% for regional services that our board approves annually. And the RTD holds the remainder of those funds for services it provides in all four counties. And I'm going to turn this back over to our chairman here to talk about what happened during 2013.
And again, commissioners, you know, some of the exciting things that happened in 2013, you know, our ridership increased 5.8% locally. Nationally, it only increased 1.1%. You know, in our current audit, we had no current audit findings for 2013. So, you know, as, you know, we just had an organization here that had quite a few, you know, we've been fairly clean. It's been nice. It's been a well-run organization. The new district headquarters that is in Espanola, the Jim West Center, you know, was completed at 8.9% below the amended budget. You know, we added a stop now that services the Sipapuski area, an added San Cristobal stop, which again, because of you guys, we were able to collaborate and get this stop placed. The cement is poured, the area is leveled. We're just waiting for an actual shelter to be placed out there. So that's something that's, you know, but there is a stop already there, and it's usable at this point till we get an actual shelter in there. We had a commenced update of the five-year service plan. We've had a number of meetings, public meetings within the respective counties and the respective members' areas. You know, one of the, as brought up by the chairman, was the stop in Tres Piedras. That's something that's been looked for in our update. There's possible savings that could be seen because of the collaboration with the Town of Taos and the Chili Line. So there's possibly some savings there that would enhance the ridership in that area or the service in that area, not necessarily the ridership, but the service. The commenced development of integrated transportation system, hardware and software, this is actually, you know, we'll be able to see real time where the bus is, where it, and you can actually get on your phone and find out how far away the bus is. And there will actually be, you can track it where the bus has been so that, you know, the bus can't get lost. It stops somewhere and, but everybody will be able to know. You can get right on, it'll be on your phone. You can actually look it up, and they can actually see where the bus is actually at. So commenced conceptual design for the maintenance facility. We're actually trying to design a maintenance facility currently at the Jim West Center. There's, we're getting a lot of feedback. We're trying to figure out how we're going to build it. There'll be wash bays, there'll be service bays, so that we actually can take care of all that type of maintenance right there at the Jim West Center. The other thing that we're looking into is alternative fuels that we're looking for. Is it best to run on diesel? Is it best to run on gas? Or can we use propane? Or can we use compressed natural gas? And so we're looking at that. I know Santa Fe, the city of Santa Fe currently runs on compressed gas and LP. They have two types of alternative fuels. We're looking to see if we can't, in the next order of buses, that we can't incorporate some of this into those, into our local buses. And the other thing that we have done currently to enhance revenues is we launched the advertisement of our buses, so you can actually pay to have the bus wrapped with your logo on it. So it's another way for us to actually have additional funding, a funding source to help promote the NCRTD. So.
Thank you, Commissioner Barone, and I really appreciate the fact that you all are looking at the service commencing sometime in the future in the Tres Piedras area. As you know, we had Mona, Michaela, and a few others, actually a large contingency from Tres Piedras and Carson in that area last year that presented a request to the county commission, hoping to get service in that area. And I certainly appreciate the fact that you are looking at that as a possible service area. Also wanted to maybe suggest with regards to advertising, you know, around the buses, possibly maybe, you know, in the area of the vehicle somewhere, some sort of a public service announcement, telling, you know, some type of anti-litter, advertising the anti-litter program of the county, you know, Taos County, you know, we have a great solid waste department. And this would, this type of advertising would really appear to me as a good way to reach a lot of people, to try to keep them from littering our public roads, our transportation areas.
Thank you, Chairman. And we'll maybe talk to Jim a little bit later about that because he's, you know, in charge of the, that particular portion of it. And, you know, some of our goals is to, you know, our greener New Mexico, you know, we talk about, you know, our, watching our, you know, carbon buildup, making sure we have fewer cars on the road. And, you know, fewer cars on the road reduce carbon in the atmosphere. More than 2,162 tons of carbon emissions were reduced through our service. And that's, you know, more than, four million, 322,000 pounds of carbon, you know, 4.35 million vehicle miles removed from our streets, so that the impact on our streets has actually been reduced too, which equates to traveling around the world at least 174 times. So, you know, we're trying to do our share, you know, in helping, you know, with the atmosphere, helping with, you know, we talk about collaboration, you know, and we talk about trying to keep our communities clean, and this is part of our share to add to what we're trying to do locally. So, again, thank you, Chairman. Turn it back over to Tony.
Before we do that, Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Commissioner Barone and Mr. Mortillo, I'd like to thank you folks for, and your staff back in Espanola. Since you guys, we've had some services in Costilla, in my district too, Cerro, Cuesta, Red River, and now San Cristobal. So I want to thank you for my constituents. They, they're very happy with that service that's provided for us. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Well, as the chair indicated, we're looking at quite a few changes in fiscal year 14 and fiscal year 15. And the ones I want to talk about here, and Chairman Barone has referred to some of these, so I won't go into much depth on them, but I'll just, again, highlight what came out of our service plan, out of the public meetings that were held up here in Taos County. And you'll now see that all of our routes will be paratransit compliant. In the past, we weren't providing paratransit service off of our routes. So as soon as we start implementing the new plan, folks that need to utilize those services because they meet the requirements, those buses will flex up to three quarters of a mile from the route for that. This isn't funded, but we're looking at this, and hopefully if we can find the resources to do it, we'll be looking at providing regional premium express services on the weekends, such as, although it's Taos Express runs now, we are having discussions with them about that. Express service to Santa Fe and Bandolero National Monument, interconnecting with Atomic City Transit. And that would be funded through fares and other partnerships, but that is something basically trying to target the tourism aspect of our economy here. The Taos-Espanola run, we're looking at modifying the start times on that route so that we can target commuters and improve our meets with the Chili Line and the Santa Fe buses. Cuesta-Costilla, we're looking at adding some peak service trips to Costilla compared to what we're doing now. Red River, frankly, because of some ridership issues there, we are looking at at reducing service hours only during the offseason. But the number of trips will be the same. So there'll be some adjustment in those routes. I know the chairman has had some conversations with the mayor of, of Red River and.
Is it because mostly everybody that comes to Red River, they're, they're a tourist and they travel?
Right.
In a vehicle already?
Exactly. And what we notice is, is during the offseason, when skiing's not occurring, that the ridership does tend to go down, what have you. Peñasco here, we're adding a stop at, at the Pico Reese Pueblo. The governor there is excited about the service that's coming their way. And we hope to get that here started in the next month. UNEM Taos, Clower Run, at this point in time, and, and the chair referred to this, where there might be some partnerships here where we can reduce costs and redirect those dollars towards different services. But we, we do have a duplication with the Chili Line on some, some routes here. And we're talking to them about taking over one of those routes. And obviously, we compensate them for that service. And then if we can't do that, we, the board will have to consider what their next steps are in relation to that. And like I said, even talking to them about the Taos Express on the weekends. And Tres Piedras, as has been mentioned a number of times, we are going to do a mid-morning and a mid-afternoon, one day a week, on a six-month trial basis there and see how that ridership goes. And when we had our meetings, they were probably one of the, the most vocal and the most well-organized group. They came in with a petition to 90 signatures. So the board was very responsive to that. And if you want to see changes that we're planning throughout the, the system, our plan is on our website and you can view those there.
Mr. Mortel, Mortel, if the ridership, if you see or see an increase in ridership from Tres Piedras, just on that one day, then hopefully you would plan to increase the service days at that?
That, that's been our practice. And outside another route where, where that's happened, that's our service to Chama. We're providing two-day-a-week service there. And because of ridership and demand, we went to three days a week. And now the board has authorized us to go to five days a week. Again, on a trial basis, to see how five days a week works. But yeah, we have a tendency to do that when, when service demand starts to pick up, is adding more service.
Okay, thank you.
And, and lastly, and this is really a, a, a big move for us and what have you, it's the ITS system. And the chairman referred to being able to pull the system up on your smartphone and you'll be able to see, this is a screenshot from ABQ Rides. Ours is the same thing. You'll be able to see where that bus is in relation to your stop. All the stops in the entire system are being geocoded. They will have a QR code on them and there'll be a route number as well. So if you don't have a, a smartphone that can take a picture of that QR code, you can then punch in that, that code number and find out as well. But you'll be able to see real time how far that bus is, is from getting to your stop and when it'll get there and what have you. And so this, this is the, the most up-to-date technology that is out there. It's costing the district over nearly a half million dollars to implement this system. But we believe it will provide information to our riders that's necessary and needed. You can go on your computer and see it live at all times as well. And you can plan notifications and you can even plan your trip. So you'll be able to go to Google Transit and you can plan your trip through our system. Santa Fe Trails is on Google Transit. Atomic City is getting on Google Transit. So pretty much you'll be able to plan your trip through, through the, the various systems that are available. And lastly, it'll tell us where our buses are right now. We really don't know. We know where they're supposed to be. And sometimes, as we found when customers call and say, hey, they didn't pick me up or what have you, they weren't where they're supposed to be. So our dispatchers will see real time where they're at, where they're on schedule and so on. Mr. Chair?
And again, we'd just like to invite everybody out. You know, it's pretty exciting. On September 16th, 2014, will be a, a decade in service. So, you know, we're really inviting everybody to, you know, attend. It's 10 years of service to, you know, constituents of their, of our, of our counties, our communities of Santa Fe, Los Alamos, Rio Riba, and Taos. So we cordially invite you guys to this. I think it's, you know, it's something that we can be proud of. It's something that we've been able to move forward with. It's, you know, we're proud that we were, be able to take the money that wasn't trusted, you know, again, through Los Alamos and through the GRT that was passed and really enhances service. I think it's, it's a, it's a opportunity within our communities that we really grew with. So I guess, again, we thank you guys. If you have any questions, we're here to answer.
It's, it's a great service, Commissioner Mayor. And sir, you know, I, I know that a lot of people personally that would take this route to attend doctor's appointments, even in Albuquerque, you know, they're able to take the train from Santa Fe to Albuquerque. So it is definitely one of those very positive things that have improved our, our communities up here in northern New Mexico. And, and thank you very much for the dedication you've lent to it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your support and, and for the support of your staff here. When, when we've called and, and asked for assistance, they've been more than willing to help us. And like to thank you and like to thank County Manager Archuleta as well for helping us out.
Thank you, Anthony. And how do you pronounce your last name?
Mortelaro.
Okay, very good. Commissioner Sanchez?
So Commissioners, the one in San Cristobal, are they stopping there already, picking up people or?
Yep, that's the stop right there.
Uh huh.
And we are picking people up.
You are. So all we're waiting on is a shelter and then?
Well, yeah, the shelter is, is one of the next things. But we didn't, we went ahead and implemented the route and what have you because we want people to start utilizing it. And we had another picture of some folks getting on it.
Really?
Yeah, but that, that is the stop. So it's.
Well, thanks again. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And Commissioners and Mr. Archuleta and Mr. Malone, one of the things that we are currently working on is a collaborative parking area that we can park, possibly park some of the buses in the parking lot over here. There's been some talk and collaboration with Mark and, and possibly the possibility of fencing an area. And the NCRTD is willing to help win that as far as help pay for the fencing collaboratively with the county and the NCRTD together. So I think it would not only secure the NCRTD vehicles, but also secure Taos County's vehicles. So.
When would you expect that agreement to come forward?
I believe, Stephen, I think in, in our, in your, in our budget, I think there's a line item that was being budgeted. And I know the NCRTD is looking at, at getting that final figure so that we can also budget in, in the, in the budget at the NCRTD.
Mr. Archuleta?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, we're in the process of doing that. We actually have provided a space for the NCRTD currently on the back parking lot, which is a paid parking lot and also has a 24-hour security on it with our video cameras. But we are working towards actually getting a fenced area across the street where we would incorporate that also with our county vehicles.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
You.
Okay, we'll move on to item 8C, a presentation of the Taos County Treasurer. Welcome, Susan and Clara Cordova, Deputy Treasurer. This is Investment Report from the Treasurer's Investment Committee to the Board of Finance. Ms. Trujillo, welcome again.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm viewing audience. Normally, I have been presenting the third quarter, I mean, a quarterly report to the Commission. This is going to be a little different because we're coming before you as, acknowledging you as the Board of Finance. And the reason being, you received a, a letter from the Treasurer's Office. And this is, we put on the agenda, the agenda, Exhibit A, Resolution Number 2003-44, which is entitled Investment Policy of the Taos County Treasurer. And, and I gave you an opportunity to view this resolution. And you might note that this is, this is a resolution that, that was, had been adopted and, and approved on June 16th, 2003. And as one of the items that, that I have been, I have been analyzing and going through the different functions of the Treasurer's Office, I, I came across the, the resolution in light of the investments and how they pertain to the investments in Taos County. So I realized that according to the, this resolution, it needed to be, we needed to have a committee and that would prepare and present a report to the Commissioners in, in their role as the Board of Finance. So to be in compliance with this resolution. And I have, we have gone ahead and I, if you have looked at the resolution, there is in, there is a request that, that a committee be established. And so I have put together a, a committee. And the members are as, myself is Susan K. Trujillo, the County Treasurer as the chair, Clara J. Cordova, Chief Deputy Treasurer as a staff member, Paula Sandy Stavion, Senior Treasurer Accountant as a staff member, Marian Gonzalez, Treasurer Accountant as a staff member, Stephen Archuleta, County Manager as a member, Leandro Cordova, County Finance Director as a member, Rose Vargas from US Bank Taos Count, Taos Market President as a member. And I'm going to go ahead and read to you the. Excuse me, just a moment. The BOF, and that is, this resolution does not have pages, but it is in Roman numeral number seven. It talks about, and on the second paragraph, it reads as such, "The BOF shall appoint an investment committee to assist the Treasurer in assuring compliance with the investment policy, federal and state law. The investment committee shall meet as scheduled. The investment committee shall consist of the Treasurer, who will serve as the chair, the County Manager, the Finance Director, a representative of the County staff, and a representative of investment, of the investment or banking industry doing business with Taos County." So I believe that the, that the membership is in compliance with the, with the policy. And I am recommending that the, that the Board of Finance review the existing policy. And if you have any recommendations, we have gone through it. And as you see, there's some areas that have been, oh, looked at, which is probably Roman numeral number six, Investment Procedures, and that we kind of looked at. But we're, we're going to look at it in its entirety as the committee. But if the Board of Finance has any recommendations, please do not hesitate to let us know. And I wanted to ask also, because one of the, one of the Board of Finance can become a member of the committee also. They're not a voting member, but we want to welcome any one of the, of the Commissioners that would want to participate.
Susan, in your, in your, sorry, Chairman, in your, in Investment Procedures, is, does it spell out long and short-term investment? You know, the reason I bring this up is in the event the county becomes deficient in their budget and they need to access this, that they are not prohibited because we have it in a long-term investment that we can't access it and that we don't, and then, and then is there, I want to say, is there procedures in place that, I know there was another community recently, because of their investment, they got in some kind of trouble because they couldn't access the funding that, that was available to them?
Chair, Commissioner Barone, in looking at the investment policy, there are, there are, they make allowances for both the short and the long term. But what I have seen is the investments that have made, been made for the Taos County funds have all been short-term. So there is the liquidity. In fact, it is in Roman numeral number four, Investment Philosophy. And, and on that next page, it, it does address, well, actually, let me go ahead and, and read that. Investment Philosophy. Recognizing the importance of producing revenue through investments, the goal of protecting public funds, and the fiduciary responsibility of the County Treasurer and the Board of County Commissioners, acting as the Board of Finance, the public fund shall be invested to provide significant real returns adjusted for acceptable risk and validity. In protecting public funds, the Board of Finance provides for adequate liquidity, and that maximizes investment income. The primary strategy shall be to build a high-quality portfolio, the duration of which will be lengthened or shortened based on the growth of the fund. The liquidity and changes and validity of vegetarian and economic cycles. So therefore, these will be, these will be considered. And, and actually, in, let me, there is another area where it talks about the.
I'm okay with that, Susan.
Okay.
The other thing I, and then we're, and the investment will be up to the banks, can't remember, $250,000 that is allowed by the, can we?
FDIC?
FDIC.
Yes. That was a huge consideration. When we, when we looked, we looked at the policy and then we looked at exactly, we have our, our money in the three local banks, at Peoples, Sentinel, and, and US Bank. And we had to make some adjustments and move money because of that issue of the, the threshold, the $250,000 threshold. And a little later, I will give you a report on the investments. And you will see, and there's an indication of what the threshold is and how much money is in the bank. And that covers not just the investments, but the cash that is held in the general fund.
Mr. Trujillo, thank you very much. And I, I know that we have some individuals from the banking industry. We welcome them. I know Mr. Garcia and Ms. Vargas. I, I don't know the other gentleman. If you would like to introduce them and, as well?
Okay. If, if they will stand, actually, they have a presentation for us.
Okay, very good.
And that will be very educational.
Okay.
For, for Taos County. And would you like to introduce your guests, Rose?
And again, I introduced Rose Vargas as one of the members of our committee.
Welcome, Ms. Vargas.
Good morning to all of the Commissioners. We really do welcome the opportunity to talk about US Bank and our partnership over many years. I began my banking career with First State Bank and will complete 40 years in banking this month. So while the name of our bank has changed, familiar faces, actually, between the three of us, there's probably a combined total of about, close, close to 90 years of banking experience, just with the three of us right here at this moment. And so one of the, the message, you know, that I've been hearing through. And so one of the message, you know, that I've been hearing throughout the discussions is safety and soundness, and that's important to all of us, no doubt about that. So what we'd like to do is, I'm going to go ahead and first of all, introduce Dennis Garcia, Dennis E. Garcia, who works at our main office here in Taos. He's a relationship manager and is our commercial lender. And then, lucky me, Dennis L. Garcia, Treasury Management in Albuquerque. And so at this time, I'd like to go ahead and have Dennis L. Garcia from Treasury Management come in and give a brief overview of U.S. Bank and the services and products.
And before we go, Ms. Vargas and Mr. Trujillo, Treasurer Trujillo, you did indicate that there was still a position available in the committee for a representative from the Taos County Board of Commissioners itself?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioners, I would like to suggest Commissioner Blankenhorn for this position. I believe he's got a lot of knowledge and a lot of money, so. So he would be ideal for this position if he would accept, I'd like for this commission to, in the future, be able to nominate him and vote on that position for him.
Okay.
Hi, hi, again.
Okay.
Chairman Commissioners, there was a question regarding the liquidity of the money at the bank. If you look at section number five in Investment of Justice, there is a section there with liquidity, and that basically states it assures that the funds are there available for immediate availability. That is part of the investment policy already in place that's available. That was one of your questions.
Yeah, thank you.
At this time, can, are there, then we accept if it's okay with the rest of the board, I don't know if you have to vote on that as a board, as the Board of Finance, but we would welcome.
Mr. Malone. Any thoughts, Mr. Malone?
I don't know what this document says about a vote, but generally speaking, if you're going to appoint a member to serve on another committee, you should vote on that rather than...
I'll vote to appoint Commissioner Blankenhorn.
With discussion, Mr. Chairman, or Commissioners, I'm sorry, Mr. Malone, then would you probably suggest that we wait until a further commission meeting to make that decision, Mr. Malone?
That would be my suggestion.
Okay.
I'll rescind my motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Doudan. Commissioner Sanchez likewise. Okay, thank you.
And I'd like to ask if there are any other questions or concerns, because we are going to be reviewing with a committee and then it will be presented to you for adoption. And in the very last page of this policy, it, one of the, which is 11, Investment Policy Review, it says this investment policy supersedes any and all previously adopted investment policies. All provisions of this policy shall be reviewed in an annual basis. So we want it to become current and so that we're operating on a current investment policy.
Okay.
I'm going to go ahead and allow the U.S. Bank to present. I had them a little later, but I'm going to go, and that way you will, when I bring my report before you, you will understand the dynamics of the presentation.
Okay. Welcome, Mr. Garcia.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Mr. Archuleta, Mr. Malone. I apologize, technical difficulties, we had a presentation, but I've got handouts.
I'll pass those up for you if you may.
For a county clerk.
Should have plenty of extras.
Thank you.
It'll be fine. It'll be fine. Thank you. Let me first introduce myself. Again, I'm Dennis L. Garcia. We kept it simple, keep the Garcias up north. And actually, I am originally from Santa Fe, so it's a pleasure to be here and it's really an honor to be at... So slow me down when you need to. But what I want to do today is give you a brief overview of U.S. Bank and the U.S. Bank local relationship with Taos County. So as we look at the presentation, and I'm not going to go through this entire presentation, gentlemen, I'm going to highlight a few of the pages. I'll leave you the presentations. If there are any questions, please get back to Rose and we can talk in more detail. But if you look at page two of the presentation, it really looks to what is U.S. Bank? It talks about our size, it talks about the loans and asset size of the organization, where we fit within the nation as an institution. And what I can tell you is U.S. Bank is the fifth-largest institution in the country. However, we're about 300 and call it $350 billion in assets. The next number four position is Wells Fargo at 1.2 or 1.3 trillion dollars. So there's a huge gap between four and five. We are commonly asked the question, can you be acquired? Can you become someone else? It's unlikely that Wells would want to purchase U.S. Bank for a variety of reasons. One, there's a lot of duplicity of deposits and the regulators would not like that. Secondly, we would be very expensive for Wells to purchase, actually for most institutions to purchase. And you'll see that as I go through the presentation, the U.S. Bank has performed very, very well during a very down cycle. So if we move to page three, we'll talk about current earnings. And this is reflective of first-quarter earnings in 2014. I'm not going to go through all the numbers, but suffice it to say that loan growth was up, our equity continued to grow, earnings continued to grow, albeit more sluggishly than in the previous quarters and in fact, in the previous couple of years. But the most important element is 67% of the bank's earnings were returned to shareholders. That's in the form of stock dividends and a purchase buyback of stock, which increases the price of the stock to the shareholder. So this is an organization that, yes, is attuned with keeping funding available to fund projects and to stay current of current technology, but also very, very aware that the benefit is to our shareholders. And the shareholders are comprised of many individuals in this community, as well as around the state and around the country. So those earnings continue to flow back to those individuals. Looking at page four, I'd like to talk a little bit about the mix of our assets and what we do as a bank. And our chairman, Richard Davis, says it, I think, the best, be consistent and predictable. And that in many cases makes us rather boring. Because we do traditional banking. We make loans, we take in deposits, we administer trust accounts, as well as we have our own merchant processing organization that basically processes credit cards for merchants around the world. Those are, and there's also a retail mix there. So there's basically five, pardon me, four basic earnings lines for U.S. Bank. We don't have any proprietary trading. We're not really big internationally. We have some connections internationally, but that's not our focus. It is a domestic-based organization. So again, I wanted to point that out because many, many individuals are confused by what U.S. Bank is really involved in, and it's a very plain vanilla business. The final slide that I'll stop with today is to talk about total assets relative to market value. And this is where I noted, pardon me, earlier, that U.S. Bank is the fifth-largest institution in the country, both by asset size and market value. So again, you can look at the competition, that's who we normally measure ourselves against. It's a very good story. And what I can tell you is I started my career in banking almost as long as Rose has been in banking. I'll be 35 years this year. I've worked for the three institutions, First National Bank in Albuquerque, four institutions, pardon me, First National Bank in Albuquerque, Bank of New York, actually, I started with Irving Trust, we were acquired by Bank of New York, First National Bank in Santa Fe, First Community, and ultimately, U.S. Bank. So I've been at four institutions. I've never had to go through many of the mergers and acquisitions that my peers have gone through. I did go through it with U.S. Bank and First Community, and this was a very good fit for both the community, for U.S. Bank, and for New Mexico. They think a lot about how communities work, they've got a community focus, and it's truly a privilege to be working for this organization. With that, we bring the safety and soundness of a very large institution to the local communities. And that really is critical. As we move forward in discussing the relationship between U.S. Bank and Taos County, we need to look a little bit about how do we do business together? And I'll try to keep these particular comments short, but I do want to touch on a couple of issues. One is collateralization of deposits. All public funds are eligible for collateralization of their public deposits, those deposits that exceed the FDIC limit in any financial institution. Now, according to state statute, in New Mexico, a Class A institution, as designated by the state treasurer, need only put up 50% of the deposit as collateral. So as an example, if you had a million dollars with us and were designated a Class A bank, according to the state treasurer, I only need to collateralize half a million of that in excess of the FDIC protection. In our case, we don't do that with the county. We collateralize 100% of your deposits. Okay? And that's to, I believe, Commissioner, you mentioned safety and soundness earlier, and it's really to that issue. Would we prefer to be at 50%? Without question. But we recognize the safety and soundness is a major composition here and it's a major concern here. So we continue to abide by those directions from the investment committee and your treasurer. Let's also talk about the type of collateral. Historically, banks have used treasuries or agencies as a collateral option. And while that is a valuable option, it inherently creates some operational difficulties. So as an example, if the market value of those securities moves, let's say we have a two-year treasury pledge to you and the value drops, well now, because of our agreement, I need to get you more collateral. That means physically getting something to you to designate that change in collateral position or change in market position. Well, market's changing all the time. And so it makes that process very, very cumbersome. Conversely, if the market goes up and you need to release something to us, I need to get your release, we got to process that, there's a process that goes through, makes that process very, very cumbersome. And according to state statute, we can use what's called a letter of credit issued by one of the major agencies in the country, usually done by the Federal Home Loan Bank. So U.S. Bank has taken that position. First Community used to offer this as an investment, as a collateral option. Essentially, the letter of credit states you are a holder of X number, whatever that collateral value is. It's available to you to draw under that letter of credit should an event occur, in the case of closure of U.S. Bank. You would simply execute the documents we've presented to you, fax them to the Federal Home Loan Bank, and your monies would be returned to you. So it simplifies the entire process. As well as if we change the values in your pool of funds, we just adjust the amount of the LC that's pledged to you. So it's a much cleaner way of doing things, it's much more efficient, and it gives you much more immediate access to your funds. If I can talk a little bit about how you pay for services, and municipalities around the country do this in one of two ways. Some will budget for that expense as a line item and simply pay us in cash. Most, however, prefer to pay in compensating balances. So you leave deposits on deposit with us in the form of either demand accounts or money or interest earning accounts. We will then pay you an earnings credit rate. It's not actual interest, but I equate it to foreign exchange. It converts balances to dollars. We use those dollars to offset your fees. And that is how the vast majority of communities around the country pay for services, especially when short-term rates have dropped as low as they have and you really can't earn anything of substantial quantity on those excess balances. Our earnings credit rate, historically, New Mexico, we maintain that relatively high. The current rate is 50 basis points. If we were to equate that to an overnight deposit, which is probably the most clear-cut example, current overnight deposits are in the five-basis-point range or less. So it has been beneficial to the county to pay us in that fashion. Now, we don't want to say, yeah, everything's fine, you know, trust us. We give you a report card every month. It's called an analysis report. Your staff receives that and they're free to share that with you. So it will detail out all the services that we're providing for you, the cost of those services, the amount of earnings credit, those balances that you maintained with us created, and how we offset that against fees. So that's our monthly report card. We visit with your staff regularly about how we're doing, and that serves as the measurement tool for that particular conversation. Relative to services, what we provide for Taos County is a fairly large basket. If we look at depository accounts, you have many depository accounts with us reflecting various activity that you have with us. Secondly, you issue a number of checks, obviously, to pay for services. We provide what's called positive pay on those transactions. So that is a fraud prevention tool. What you've done is issue to us a list of the outstanding checks. We load that into our systems, and if a check now appears that's not on that list, we reject it for payment. Now, your staff can come back and say, yes, that was a legitimate item, and can instruct us to pay it. Or they can say, no, that's not a legitimate item, return it. So it doesn't impact the cash balances of the county. So we're catching those in a forward-looking fashion. And in fact, our systems are being upgraded to take the payee name off those items. So to the extent your system can give us that information, we can match both the payee name, the dollar amount, and the serial number to add additional protection. With regard to efficiencies, two major efforts have been undertaken by your staff to increase efficiencies and increase the cash flow to the county. One is what we call remote capture, and our specific product is called Deposit Express. I think we're all familiar with that. Many of our institutions now let you take a picture of your own check on your cellphone and send it off to them. We've done that in a rather large situation here. There's an actual reader. The staff runs all the checks through that reader at the end of their day. By the way, that day can be as late as eight o'clock in the evenings if they need it to be. They send us that file of checks. It updates as if they walked into the branch to make that deposit, and we then process those images on behalf of the county. Very, very efficient methodology, cuts down on folks having to run, obviously, to the bank, courier costs, all of those expenses, and the potential liability that the county may incur if one of your employees is injured in processing or getting to the financial institution. And I have way too many anecdotal messages, pardon me, about that particular effort. Finally, lockbox. With regard to your county tax payments, and most counties have moved to lockbox processing. It is the most efficient way to do that form of collection. Now, recognize, you have two major collection periods per year, one in the late fall, one in the early part of the year. It is very difficult to staff yourselves to handle that process internally. Because the cash flows and the flow of work is really twice a year for very short periods of time, having a full-time person on staff to do that is very, very expensive and very difficult. So most public entities have moved to a lockbox. We provide that for the county. In our situation, the lockbox does have a Denver P.O. box, and I recognize at times that creates issues. But let me give you the results of that. This last year, which was our second or third year in this process of using the Denver P.O. box, we were able to expedite the cash flow to your municipalities that you support by one full week compared to the previous time when the lockbox was local. So what that means is a local community received their funding one full week earlier than they had gotten in previous years. And in fact, the state treasurer, or the county treasurer, gave us a little incident that occurred. She actually got a call from one of her constituents saying, I got your check, it's a week early, can I cash it? And she said, oh, of course, yeah, we've already collected all the funds. They were surprised they got it and were able to then expedite what they need to do with things. So lockbox processing is an extremely efficient method. It does increase the cash flow and it cuts down on the processing, local processing costs for your organization. So those are my comments. I'm available, obviously, for any questions, and we visit with the staff on a regular basis. So if there's something that we can't catch today and you'd like a deeper conversation, just let me know.
Thank you.
Chairman?
Commissioner Sanchez.
Commissioners, I thank you for bringing up that, the address. I think I talked to the treasurer a while back. I had a person that thinks, well, why are we sending it to Denver? And then I got with the treasurer and she explained that to me. Thanks for touching on that.
My pleasure, Commissioner.
Any other questions, Commissioners? Commissioner Blankenhorn?
I guess just, do you have any estimate for us on a combined return on equity after fees for our current investments with U.S. Bank?
Unfortunately, I didn't bring that information, but we can get that for you.
Okay. Thank you.
My pleasure.
That's why I want him appointed. Thank you very much, Mr. Sanchez. Really appreciate your efforts. Okay, Ms. Susan?
Again, I just thought that we do our major banking now with U.S. Bank, and I thought it would, this presentation would just educate you in exactly what the functions of the bank are in... are in relationship with Taos County. And we have just entered into a new agreement with US Bank, and that will be, they will be revamping our credit card service in that currently we have just one little credit card machine. And if you want to think about how difficult it is for the staff to stand in line if you have several people at the window wanting to pay with a credit card or a call on the telephone, it has been very tedious for them and cumbersome. So we have, US Bank will be providing a service where they will install a credit card right in the, to be swiped right into the computer and on an internet access. And I'm going to have, Rose, would you like to describe that process a little bit? But the staff is very excited about that.
Yeah, so now, rather than just sharing one terminal between X amount of employees, now they're all be able to take care of the customer who is right in front of them, and you're eliminating that wait period, basically. And as a result of that, the system will automatically batch itself in the evening, and those funds are available to the county the very next business day. So here again, you are, you know, improving your cash flow as a result of this. Ultimately, also, this is all about saving you costs, and, you know, you are going to be saving considerable amount of money by us allowing us to go ahead and process your credit card transactions. So we're taking this in phases.
Yes.
You know? And we're not going to start this until after the...
15th.
Yeah, May 15th. This way, everything is as the same, you know, so that we have a really smooth transition for you. Our merchant rep is from Albuquerque, and she is actually going to be on-site to provide training to the staff as well. So I believe, you know, this is of great value also to the county to be able to do this. And again, you know, anything that you have, questions, concerns, we need to know that because we truly do want to be a partner for the county. And again, you know, we're here to answer your questions.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Vargas.
And Ms. Vargas, you know, is there a charge for the service?
Yes, there is.
And at what percentage?
I don't have, I'm sorry, I don't have that information. But before the county did decide to move, we will always do a cost analysis with whoever the current provider is. And all of those figures were provided, and there is savings there. So I'm sorry, I don't have that information, other than we are saving money for the county.
And I guess you've reviewed that, Susan?
Yes, correct.
We haven't been privileged to that, and so...
And actually, this is what we'd like to bring from the committee to you, to the Board of Finance, that you will know, and not just have an understanding, but you will know what these costs are and what they equate to in dollars and savings. So again, it is the efficiency, the effectiveness, the safety of our money, but I wanted to point something else out, too, and that is the return. Dennis spoke about the analysis that is done by US Bank, and that was all, when we went through the process, it was all explained in such a way that in a few minutes, I will, when I present the investment, a portion of this, you will understand how important it is to Taos County and what the effects are. You know, when I give you the graph and the numbers, it'll all be, it'll all come together. So I'm going to go ahead and proceed with the cash report. And in, so if you turn then to the detail of receipts for the property current tax report, okay. And I just want to report that, and this is the third quarter report, as far as the budget is concerned, year-to-date, we should be at 75%. And, excuse me, the property tax current is that we're at 71%. We're still awaiting the second half. And we're right now in the process through the 10th to receive the second half. So in the final quarter, which will be your June 30th, you will see how, whether we are going to be able to bring in what was budgeted. The approved budget was to bring in $9,293,457. We still have $2,663,649 to bring in. But if you'll see, the property tax prior year, we're at 89%. We're over what was budgeted. And in the interest and penalties, at 84%, it's over budget. The next page that you have before you is the GRTs. I have gone ahead and we've gone through this analysis before. I just want to focus on the budgeted year-to-date, is that it should be at 75%. And if you look at the percentages, they're all over 75%. So I'm sure that Finance, in preparing the budget, we've discussed what the increase would be to the budget for revenues and their GRTs in the different funds. And so I'm just going to let that be, but as we go along, if you have any questions, but our GRTs are doing better than what was budgeted. And the next page, you're going to see what I send, I usually send you, and that is a graph. And one of the things that Dennis said about the lockbox, and there was that process, how that process was initiated and what it produced, if you see in December, in December, that's where you have your peak money, but in the past few years, it has really gone up. It's taken a spike up, and it's because of the lockbox. And so that assures, can assure the Board of Finance that what was done in establishing that lockbox was very effective for Taos County. And on the second page, then, I want to look at the numbers. And I'd like to report that I usually, in March, in the general fund, we had $4,452,416. And I take the difference from last year at this time, and we're down by $502,473 in comparison to last year at this time. The reserves, we have, we are still meeting our required reserves, and we're over by 1.7 million. But then we also keep a 412s reserve, and we're still over the 412s reserve by 900,551. And any questions on that?
Commissioners?
The next page, I have prepared for you, the end of the, I call it the end-of-the-year analysis, but this is your third quarter, which would be nine months. And I, in the first column, you will see the budget, as it, the adjusted budget, I would say, because there have been adjustments to the revenues and to the expenditures and, excuse me, transfers. So I've adjusted the budget accordingly. And then you'll have your actual cash flow as of the 3/31 of 2014, and the revenues Your expenditures of $7,95,321.8. Your transfers out of the general, in and out of the general fund are, were $3,196,894.78. And so what, in actuals, you have a negative $1,998,986 as a negative. It was budgeted, the commission budgeted in a deficit, you will look at $2,285,843. We're at 1.9 currently. And nine months in the analysis that I prepared, you should have been at 1.7 million. You are negative on that deficit by $274,604. And what I have done is extended the analysis to include the cash balances of the Public Works Fund minus the reserve. And so that in, that brings cash, an additional cash of $63,253. And then the Detention Center facilities' cash balance of $15,212.88. The EMS of their cash balance was $30,141. And so that is, there's a deficit of $1,880,379. And I include these funds only because these funds are subsidized by the general fund. And any questions?
Susan, if I just back up again, I would just, had an afterthought. You know, on your credit cards, do we get a lot of credit cards that the card isn't present?
Where the card isn't present?
Yes.
That they call in a number?
Yes.
We do get some.
Because I know that the surcharge is greater on that, is there...
I'm not sure of how, we don't have anything to measure, you know, the percentage of the ones that are called in versus the ones that come in and pay at this time.
Commissioners, what we can do is with the first result of our processing, we can work with the staff to give you an analysis of what that difference is and the number of actual payments you're receiving with cards not in hand.
Okay.
To give you some additional detail. But you're absolutely right, there is a difference in fees for both of those.
And it's usually a percentage point or more?
It can be, yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you, Dennis. What I want to say about this analysis, too, is that we're awaiting our, the $2.6 million that is going to be coming in, that should be coming in from the taxes. And what was budgeted into this budget also was the PILT, the 1.4 million in PILT monies. And that, I'm hoping, is going to balance out this deficit. And so it just kind of stresses how important that 1.4 million is in the PILT money to the general fund. In the next page...
And Susan, we, sorry, Chairman.
That's okay.
We, it's been approved, we just haven't received it, is that the...
Correct. We usually don't receive the PILT until June. So that's at the very end of the fiscal year for us. The fiscal year ends on June 30th.
Okay. And in our new budget fiscal year, we will not be using PILT as a budget line item, correct?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, yes.
In the next page, this is going to be presented by Paula Sante-Staveen, the chief accountant for the Treasurer's Office, but she saved yesterday with, because her son was ill, and she got sick herself. So I'm going to go ahead and present this. And this is the investment monthly report. And we have, currently for investments, we have monies in People's Bank, and we have in monies from the general fund in a form of CDs. And you will see the two accounts that are there, and the rate at 1%. And the due date, the, and they're going to expire on 5/12/2014, and the two amounts that are there, the $58,000 and the $58,000.
And you say 1%. It's actually .01, not...
Correct. Excuse me, .01%. And I'm going to fall back on that, too, because when you think of, when you think of what Dennis said in how we're going to be using our money at US Bank to offset our costs through the analysis, it is best served by using our own money to offset the costs, then putting, and then investing the money that was transferred out of the other banks into US Bank, and to save costs in dollars for the county. And then what the monies that we have in US Bank right now in a CD is at 2%. And that will expire on 7/13/2014. And there's $2,035,605.56. And this is covered also by the FDIC, all the $58,000 and $58,000, and so is the $2 million. But on top of that, there is the letter of credit, and as indicated, provided by the Federal Home Loan Bank.
This is all collateralized, isn't it?
Correct.
Okay.
And the next page will be the cash balances at local banks. And I went ahead and included, in the past, only the investment part was reported in the reports that are issued, but I, only because the investment policy says that cash and investments, that I want you to be aware of the cash balances that are in the different banks. And People's Bank, there's one account, and for, and the amount is $87,510.57. And it's insured for $250,000 according to the FDIC, so that amount is covered. US Bank has 14 accounts. There's $14,847,565.74. There's letters of credit in the amount of $17 million. And at Sentinel Bank, we have four accounts in a total of $246,335.89. And that is under the $250,000 threshold of the FDIC. And what I'd like to say is that if we go back to the graph, I want to point out, I want to point out something that just really just caught my attention in dollars. And that is, when you see that we focus on the reserves, our reserve requirements, and that is to have cash, and whether it be in the form of liquidity or investments, but we have that cash available. But if our cash is at risk when it's deposited into our banks, that is what is considered of great risk for counties. So, like I said, in cooperation with all our banks, we have, we do business with all three of them, and they were very, they were all informed of what the requirements were because I, we visited with each one, and actually, we even visited with the State Treasurer's Office, and we looked at what they had in place. And the final result was that we were best served by US Bank and through the letters of credit. And so if you see that we can have, we can have this cash in the bank, but our focus was not only, again, liquidity, as you addressed, Commissioner Beroni, that it be available for use by Finance. And it is my privilege to say that the Finance Director and the Treasurer's, the Finance Office and the Treasurer's Office work very close together. And in regard to the flow of money, the flow of cash and expenditures, and to ensure that this money is always available to pay the expenses of the Finance Office and those that are approved for payment to our vendors.
Chairman, Susan, thank you for, you know, spreading the wealth within the local banks, and thank you for looking into these. So, thank you.
You're very welcome. Any other questions?
Thank you, Susan. Thank you.
Yeah, just, thank you, Ms. Chairman. So at what meeting will you present to this Board of Finance the breakdown of investments and the returns net of fees?
That would be in the next quarter meeting.
Okay.
And that would be the June 30th. And I'm going to have, in looking at the current investment, the policy asks for either the gain or loss in dollars, and I will be providing that for you so that we have an idea of... idea of, of what the market is doing or how our investments are doing, I should say.
Great.
Thank you very much, Susan, and thank you very much, Ms. Fargas and Mr. and Mr. Garcia.
Thank you so much. They, they have been of, um, of a lot of help and in educating us in the world of, uh, a bank, of the banking industry.
Well, we, we look forward to the, the relationship with the bank. Thank you very much. Okay, at this time, Commissioners, would you?
Make motion to break for lunch, Chairman.
Second.
Uh, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
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 Commissioner, Chairman, I was getting the eye from over there that we'd better break for lunch, you know, I, she had her smiley face on still.
Mr. Bellis.
President.
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 Yes, President. We are going to move on to Item 9, this is Contracts, Agreements, MOUs, RFPs, and Bids, Discussion, Consideration, Decisions Regarding the Following. Item A, Approval for Recommendation to Award RFP 2014-6, Mr. Richard Sanchez, Construction Administration, Conrad Cordova, M.I.S. Director, and Ms. Elsa Vahill, Purchasing Officer. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Chair, Commission. Today I'm asking for approval for recommendation to amend the award of RFP 2014-06. At the Commission meeting held on March 18th, 2014, this RFP was originally awarded to Motorola Solutions with the alternate one of the two council position, um, set up. And at the time, of course, there was, uh, no consolidation and now that there is and staff has been talking and also at the joint meeting held on, uh, April 28th, uh, we were given a direction to move forward with the three council position for the public safety for the E911 Center. So we're asking to amend the award to the three council position versus the alternate, which we had originally awarded back on, uh, March 18th.
And for the public's benefit, what is the, the price difference? How is that, is that going to work?
Conrad.
Conrad, can you focus that on our, on our?
And while you do that, I'd like to welcome our, uh, City Manager, Mr. Rick Bellis, welcome.
My understanding that Motorola Solutions came back with an amended proposal and right now for the three-position dispatch, it's looking at 820,957. And of course, um, that includes the taxes as well with the system discount.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, what you have before you on the first page is the, uh, pricing summary that you guys saw last, that the Commission saw last week at the joint meeting, which I had handed out towards the end. Again, this is exactly the same copy. What it shows here on the second page is that the cost is 100, or actually it's 820,000 to buy all of the equipment that you need with the exception of the equipment that's over at Gustav right now, and that is also included in here to move the equipment over. The other thing that is not included in here is, uh, an additional radio which would support the repeater for the town of Taos PD, and that would be an additional $10,000, which isn't factored into the budget, which would have to be, um, determine how that's going to get paid at a future time unless the Commission wants to approve that now.
And what was the, uh, other amount to Motorola in the previous, under the three or the two council?
The previous one was, um, I had to go back and look it up, it was 847,284.33.
So it's actually $27,000 more.
Yes.
And-
For the two versus the three.
But now that we've just made the decision to go in a combined effort with this, because you're able to use some of the equipment from the current center, you're able to incorporate it into this to reduce that price, is that how you came to, to this?
Yes, that's, that's exactly correct. And that was a proposal Motorola put together because we asked them to, to work up that number.
Very good, okay.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Conrad and Elsa, I guess I just want to be very clear on, the additional radio was not part of the RFP. And so one of the things, Commissioners, that we're trying to do is, in order to stay within the scope of the RFP so we don't have to RFP that out again, is that we're wanting to purchase everything that we can purchase under that RFP. The additional licensing software and possibly the additional radio would be something that we would come back to the Commission and the Council at a later time as the entity once this is, is built and, and move forward. Is that?
Actually, the additional radio was included as an alternate.
On the RFP?
It is included as an alternate.
Okay, that's right.
And it's, it's $10,200 for the additional radio which would support the town Taos PD.
That's fine.
Any thoughts, Mr. Bellis?
Oh, me too. Conrad, Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Thank you. So it was 847 and then how much was the extra console?
The, this is for a three console position.
Right.
So, uh, are you talking the fourth console?
No.
No, 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 he was saying alternate two, we had 847, but now it's at 820. So how much was the additional console with the 820?
95,000.
It was 95.
It's about 95,000 to 99, somewhere around there.
Okay, so we saved about 115 then on the equipment from the Gustav.
So, the, the original quote with the discount was... Which one was it, Richard?
The original quote for two-position was 873,489. And Ms. Elsa was able to negotiate down to 847,284 on the original RFP. And then with the relocation of the Casidian was about $200,000 savings, well, $200,000 worth of equipment that was backed out of the three console, uh, proposal and $86,000 that was put in, put back in as removal and reinstallation of the Casidian, which brought it down to 820,957 for a three-position 911 and 763,355 for a two-position.
Okay, great. So this stays within the budget that we had already approved?
Yes.
But in our discussions with the town, there had been conversations about where's the extra 95 going to come from? So now we're kind of absor, absorbing that extra 95, you know?
Actually, if I may, Commissioner Blankenhorn, is, the additional money is really directed at the CAD part, which is the next, uh, the next proposal that we're going to discuss.
And that additional money will come out of reserve or whatever we work out with the town?
Exactly.
And, and, but that's not before us today?
That, that is, that's the, that's the next item of the agenda.
No, it's not.
That's after you guys make a decision on this part and then we'll go on to the, to the other one.
Great.
Okay, thank you.
So Commissioners, um, we do need to make a decision on this.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Rochaletta, Mr. Malone.
Mr. Chairman, uh, two things, one, just for clarification, it's my understanding, and if that's incorrect, then I would have some further comment, but it's my understanding that the additional licenses under the second item, the CAD item, are not currently in front of the County Commission, because I would have difficulties with that.
That is correct.
Okay, so I thought that was misunderstood. The, um, second thing is ultimately if there's a motion, I, I want it to be clear in the minutes that this is subject to a acceptable contract being negotiated and ultimately signed. We're not approving a contract at this point.
Okay. You are just approving the RFP, correct, Mr.?
Correct.
Okay, just want to make sure.
Thank you for that clarity, Mr. Malone. Commissioners?
Move to approve.
Based on, on what, uh, has been recommended by our attorney, Mr. Malone?
Based on, uh, the pricing summary that we have before us, which is basically an amendment to the approval of a prior RFP. Or correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Malone. That's correct, but if you could include in your, in your motion that it is subject to the negotiation of an acceptable contract. Move to approve the, um, pricing summary, subject to approval of a, uh, contract.
Okay, I will go ahead and second. Madam Clerk?
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay, we'll move on then to the next, uh, Item B, correct? Approval for Recommendation to Award RFP 2014-06, Mr. Sanchez, Construction Administrator, Conrad Cordova, M.I.S. Director, and Elsa Vahill, Purchasing Agent.
We, we come here today before you for approval for recommendation for the award for the RFP 2014-6. For the portion of, um, for the hardware, software, and services for the CAD or Spillman program for the E911 Center councils, and then I'll leave all the details up to Conrad Cordova here.
So, uh, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, what you have before you on the second two pages of your handouts is the proposal from Advanced Communications for the CAD. And what we're proposing is actually the first column, which is only the, the licensing license to Taos County and not the additional agencies. To add the additional agencies is the difference between the first and the second column on the second page or the very last page of your, your handout. So the, what we're asking for is an approval of 295,218.50. Keep in mind, again, I, I will repeat, this is only licensing for Taos County and this is not licensing for, it includes also the records management system for the Sheriff's Office also, because at that time when we requested this, this was only for Taos County and not for the additional agencies. The, the column on the right is for the additional agencies to be brought in, which would be money that would have to be addressed at a later time between the two governing parties.
Commissioners, any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, so you just want approval for the 295, right?
Yes, that is correct.
So move to approve.
I'll go ahead and second. Any other questions or comments?
I do have a question.
Commissioner Blankenhorn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is, I mean, eventually we're going to need the, uh, second column, right?
Yes, we are going to need a second column if we're going to remain consolidated. Otherwise it would be, it, it just wouldn't work for all the agencies.
So how will that work? Is, is there going to be, uh, oh, the new joint powers agreement authority would then put out an RFP? Go ahead. Mr. Chairman, um, I haven't fully analyzed whether we'll even need an RFP. There's a strong likelihood that, um, sole provider would apply here since we've already purchased the Spillman, uh, system, um, but I have to research that to see if there are other providers of the Spillman system, but either an RFP or a sole provider by the JPA at a later date. And will they hold to this pricing?
They will hold to this pricing for a total of 120 days from the day that this was given to us, which was, I believe, February 28th. So we have until about the end of June to do something or act on that.
But we, we feel confident that Advanced Communications will give us, will give the, the new governing authority under the JPA the same price?
Yes, I am fairly confident that they will hold to that then. Uh, the only thing is, is the timeframe, uh, we could probably approach Advance to see if they would give us an additional time, because the timeframe is going to be very tight. Because there is an additional 30 days from the time that the contract is signed, I believe. I don't know, all of the rules that are, are governing for a sole source, but I believe there's an additional 30 days that you have to post it before you can award a sole source. That's to be posted on our webpage.
That is correct, there is an additional 30 days. Once a decision is made, you have to post on the state website and our website, or if the JPA exists, if fiscal agents, which would be our website. One other thing, Mr. Chairman, if this motion also could have the contingency for entering into an agreeable contract.
Okay. If-
I will amend my motion.
A friendly second. Any other questions or comments? If not, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
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 Yes, thank you. We'll move on to Item 10.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, Resolutions, Ordinances, Discussion, Consideration, Decisions Regarding the Following. Item A, this is reconsideration and approval of Rise Resolution 2014-13, Gina Elam, Accountant. Uh, this is Resolution to amend Section 2.1 as per the Review Committee. You don't look like Gina. Hello, Mr. Sanchez?
Chairman, Commissioners, I'm acting as Gina today's, Gina's proxy today while she works on our purchase orders for many projects. What she's asking for is reconsideration of the Resolution 2014-13 that was approved on March 18th. This resolution was, she would like to have it modified to read not to exceed amount of six appointees by the Commission. And the reason why is, um, Ms. Villalobos, at the last, at that meeting, uh, she was named an alternate and Ms. Elam would like to include her as a voting member in the Arts Committee and that way we don't ever, we're not running short of, uh, of members. And that's what she's asking for, that way she could-
I will second. Okay. Madam Clerk?
Yes.
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 Yes, we'll move on to Item B, Resolution 2014-20. Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. Authorizing and directing publication by title and general summary in accordance with Section 437-7, NMSA 1978, with proposed ordinance and meeting to discuss, consider and take action upon proposed ordinance 2014-5, an ordinance dedicating quarterly installments equal to a gross receipts tax of 1/12% for the Safety Net Care Pool Fund and payments to said fund. Mr. Lopez, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. For you is our, uh, two, uh, items. One is proposed Taos-
Did you reach the point about the calendar?
Yeah, okay. Taos County Resolution Number 2014-20, which is authorized and directs publication by title and general summary, um, of the proposed ordinance, which is attached, I think you have, all have that in front of you, which is an ordinance, um, that we have drafted in response to the requirements of Senate Public Affairs Committee substitute for Senate Bill 268 and 314 and Senate Finance Committee substitute for Senate Bill 368, which is commonly referred as, to as Senate Bill 268, which was passed this last legislative session. Uh, Section 16 of the, um, bill requires that a county shall, by ordinance to be effective July 1 of 2014, dedicate to the Sa, Safety Net Care Pool Fund, an amount equal to a gross receipts tax rate of 1/12% applied to the taxable gross receipts reported during the prior fiscal year. As I understand it, what happened was, is we had the Healthcare Provider Fund, which the Commission is familiar with, it was a three-to-one match, which was commonly known as that, where, um, uh, the state paid the hospitals for indigent, uh, care. That fund went away in 2013 and the state and the federal government negotiated a substitute for that, um, that, um, is administered through, um, Human Services Department, the state of New Mexico. As part of that, um, the legislation required that we pay to this new pool that was created by Senate Bill 268, um, the equivalent of a 12% gross receipts for the prior fiscal year and that we pass an ordinance to be effective until later than, uh, July 1, so that we could start paying, um, quarterly, beginning, um, this coming, uh, quarter of July through, uh, August, for July through September. So the resolution is requesting publication- So, the resolution is requesting publication of the ordinance, and then it also says that we will return, that the matter will be before the commission for consideration. And if you note, it says that notice is given that the commission will meet at 9:00 on June blank, 2014. Also on today's agenda, I believe, is a proposal to set that meeting date in early June, and Mr. Archuleta requested that he be allowed to address that as well.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, June 3 is actually the primary election, and I'm not sure if the commission wanted to have a meeting on the same day as the election. If they did, then we could just continue and, and put in June 3 there. The next available date is June 10, which is the following. We already have a couple of items that we're going to provide on the June 10 meeting. We could move it down to the June 10 meeting, but I needed some direction from the commission. I also wanted to alert the commission that on June 17 is also the start of the New Mexico Association of Counties meeting, the summer conference in DeBby, New Mexico. Staff will be traveling down there, as well as some of the commissioners. Obviously, we could still have the meeting that morning and then travel down that afternoon on the 17th, but it was an item that we wanted to put on for discussion with the commission. So now would be a good time if we could talk about that and then give direction to staff.
June 3 is, all right, will be?
I'm fine with it.
I'm not running.
I'm fine with it as well.
Okay. So we'll just go ahead and plan on having the, the June 3. How about the June 17 meeting? Are we still going to continue with that, or being that we're going to have one on the 10 anyway?
I will be traveling that morning.
Of the 17th?
Because I do have a board meeting that evening, I believe, with the NMAC.
So would the commission mind moving up the, Bob, what did you have on the, on June 10? I know we had something scheduled.
Come here, the multi-line, yeah.
We have placed on the agenda the publication resolution for the land use ordinance. I'm not going to ask you to pass that resolution today, but I do want to try to set aside the 10th. It's the, it, it doesn't make sense to try to put the land use ordinance on one of the regular meetings. Obviously, we wouldn't have enough time, and the 10th is the first available Tuesday in, in June, so we're, I'm not going to, I'm going to withdraw the resolution because the ordinance itself was not necessary, was not ready, but if we agree on the 10th, I have plenty of time to get the publication resolution in front of you.
What is the wishes of the commission on that particular?
So then, on June 17, do you, would you like that meeting moved to the 24th? In that way, because I know that Commissioner Sanchez will be at the multi-line meeting, you'll be at the executive meeting, Mr. Chairman, unless the other three commissioners want to just have the meeting on the, on the 17th anyway. Staff will also be traveling down to DeBby on that date to attend some of their affiliate meetings also, so if we could move it to the 24th, that would be our recommendation.
Okay. Do we need a vote on that?
Yes.
Mr. Malone? Okay, if I can hear a, a motion, then. The change has been recommended by commission and, and staff.
24th?
To the 24th from the 17th. Okay, I'll go ahead and second. Madam Clerk?
I want to make sure we check with the clerk's office, because I want to make sure that she's happy, because if she's not happy, nobody's going to be happy.
Camera on her.
Yes.
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 Yes, ma'am.
Yes. Okay. We'll move on then to, this is item C, correct?
So Floyd.
No, it's item B.
B, yeah.
And with the commission's approval, Mr. Chair, we will insert on the proposed resolution.
June 3. June 3.
Whatever the number is here. 2014-20, we'll insert in paragraph 1 that notice is given that the Taos County Commission will meet on Tuesday at 9:00 on June 3 of 2014. And I will also, you've probably already seen this, but the proposed ordinance has an emergency clause at the end of it, so that once we publish it and it's approved, then it will hopefully be ready for the July 1, 2014 directive in Senate Bill 268.
Very well, okay.
I guess we need a, a motion for approval of the resolution to direct, direct in the publication of the proposed ordinance.
Okay, Madam Clerk?
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Blankenhorn?
Yes. I didn't pull that ordinance up, but so, so is the 1/12 identified as coming out of the 2/1/8?
No, it come, it can come from anywhere, but Mr. Cordova tells me that based on Senate Bill 268, that the amount will be available from the 2/1/8 that was previously enacted for the Sole Care Provider Act.
And so that 1/8 will stay in place, the 2/1/8 will stay in place, and the 1/12 that we contribute to the Safety Net Pool will come out of that 1/8? And then, and then we'll still be able to use the remainder of that for our own indigent expenses?
That's, that's what I understand is correct.
And, and the ordinance is specific in that way? That was really my question.
No, the ordinance doesn't address that. The ordinance just says that we will pay the 1/12, the equivalent of 1/12 of gross receipts to the state quarterly, based on prior year's experience.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Blankenhorn, yes, basically, but the difference between the 1/8 and the 1/12 will fund our indigent program that's still required to do unclaimed burials, EMS claims, those kinds of things. We hope to still use that money to put back out into the community, but it, it'll be a much smaller indigent fund than in the past.
Thank you.
Also, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Blankenhorn, on the agenda is a related provision that I think is down the list here on, under discussion, which is another provision of Senate Bill 268 that talks about the possibility of additional excise and gross receipts tax that's available under the bill, that we'll address momentarily, I expect.
Okay.
Need a call for the vote, Chairman.
Madam Clerk?
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay, we'll move on to item C, Resolution 2014-21. Mr. Nathan Sanchez, chief planner, welcome.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, County Commissioners. I'm here to present Resolution 2014-12. Last month, we amended ordinance 2014-9, which was an ordinance that established the Taos County Water Advisory and Informational Committee on Impacts of Water Appropriation and Changes in Point of Diversion and Places of Use or Purposes of Use. Per that ordinance was basically to establish a five-member board. At this time, this resolution is to appoint those five members.
And if, for the record, if you can identify those five water advisory committee members being suggested?
Mr. Chairman, County Commissioners, the five members are, and these will be, the term limits coincide with the county commissioner's terms, so the first three members will be in an eight-month term. They are Bob Romano, and he'll be in dis, for District 1. Tanya Lear, he say, which will be in District 5. And Albert Michael, which will be in District 2. And the next two members will have a term limit of two years and eight months, and they are Trudy Valerio Healy and Gloria, which will be in District 3, and Gloria Dominguez Atencio, which will be in District 4.
And these folks have accepted these responsibilities for the, that amount of time, then?
Mr. Chairman, County Commissioners, yes.
Okay. Commissioner Sanchez?
Nathan, the first three for how long, did you say?
They'll be for eight months.
Eight months?
Yes.
Okay.
Till we fly the kite, there, Commissioner.
Yeah. Thank you.
So move for approval. Second. Madam Clerk?
Yes.
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 Yes, okay, next item. Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. Resolution 2014-22, Resolution directing publication of the title, general summary and time, date, and meeting place for discussion, consideration, and action upon proposed ordinance 2014-1, an ordinance adopting revised land use regs for Taos County, repealing ordinances 1997-4, 1998-6, 2005-10, 2007-4, 2013-2, and 2013-7. Mr. Malone?
Mr. Chairman, that's the item I mentioned that I was pulling at this time, and we will bring it back to you in plenty of time to get it public, publication before the meeting on the 10th.
So the vote you want today is to table, or?
We, we, we don't need a vote, Mr. Chairman.
You don't need to vote at all on it? Okay. Very good. Any questions, further questions or comments from the commission? If not, we'll move on to item E, Resolution 2014-22, Affirming the Transfer of the Taos County Housing Programs with Northern Regional Housing Authority. Mr. Leandro Cordova, welcome.
So move for approval, Chairman.
I'll go ahead and second. Any discussion?
I have one thing I want to alert the.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Malone.
Our budget matters going to go this quick?
That would be very nice.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I just wanted to explain that this was received on, this resolution in a slightly different form was received on, on Friday from the folks at MFA and HUD, and they've decided, you've already passed two previous resolutions, they decided they needed slightly different wording. They had a provision in there that I thought was too open-ended, and I asked them to clarify it, and that was, they had a provision in there that we would do whatever HUD required us to do, and that just seemed too open-ended to me, so they changed that to, we would do the items on the attached list, which is HUD's required list of items before a housing authority can be transferred or consolidated. And I just want to be sure that you are aware that this resolution has, and if you look at the second to the, I'm second to the last page, item O, the pages are not paginated, but item O says money's owed, and it says that prior to the transfer, which would be July 1, we will pay any monies owed to, to HUD. We would owe them the money anyway if we owed it, but they're setting a date. They want it done prior to them. As of this point in time, they haven't identified any monies that are owed, but there is an ongoing audit, and I'll defer to Leandro. I just want to be sure that you're aware of that, that clause.
What, what monies are owed?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Judan, that's what we don't really know at this point, hopefully nothing. However, the Smart Inc., the companies that there, that is there now doing an assessment, the sooner we give them that ability, the sooner they'll let us know. So hopefully before July 1, they will, if anything is identified, let us know so that we can appropriately get the cash or the money from HUD. HUD still owes Taos County quite a bit of money for program fees and dues that we've already done, so the hope is if anything should be identified, it's identified in time to reimburse and had it taken care of from their own funds.
Let me ask this question, Mr. Archuleta. So as of July 1, then these people will take over?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Judan, currently we're in a transition period with them. They are already here in town working, and we're in, in a state of transition at this point, but that's the hope, that if we have all the paperwork, everything in place at July 1, they will actually be the managing company for the entity.
And, and let me ask this question, Mr. Chairman. So as of right now, are there any complaints? Where do they go to? They go?
Actually, those would go to Smart Inc. We have the names of the staff that are down there that are managing that. They would, they could still come through us. We'll just defer those questions over to them at this point.
Where could those phone numbers be listed or whatever? This way I tell them, hey, you got to call this other guy.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, I can get all that information for you, emails, phone numbers for those individuals. They're housed at the housing authority currently, so they could be able to walk down the hall and go discuss it to them. The contract we have in place with Northern Regional Housing Authority states, and it makes it clear that there's still Taos County employees through June 30. However, they have to follow the executive director, which is the Smart Inc. So they're an executive director team, and that's who they're now reporting to in turn, until June 30.
And, and Mr. Archuleta, maybe you could talk a little bit about the work study that the commission had?
Sure.
With the, with the Smart Inc. last week?
Mr. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, of course, I didn't prepare a formal presentation on this. I'm going to shoot from the hip a little bit. Last week, we had a, a Smart Inc. actually come in with HUD and MFA and the Board of Directors that's going to be running the North Regional. And during that meeting, the individuals, there was three individuals that are here that were actually presented to the commission. At that meeting, what happened was that we had somewhat of a transition to where staff was being met with, the commission was being met with, and the public's being met with by Smart Inc. in order to get us moving forward in this whole transition. It's my understanding that they have different expertise across the nation of going in and taking over some of these housing authorities and bringing them up to compliance. And so what they're doing at this point is an actual assessment of the whole housing authority, what they could do differently, what they could do better, and then they will put all of that together and start institutionalizing that and make the, the staff changes that they need to do in order to get that done. We have had some preliminary meetings with them after that meeting. They are definitely finding some issues out there. They're also looking at some of the waiting lists. They're looking at relationships between staff and, and possibly homeowners or some of the people that are renting, so all of that's just being looked at at this point. There'll be a whole assessment that'll be done, and then there'll be a corrective action plan that'll be put in place. Our hope is that by July 1, all of that can take place. They're also still working very closely with our finance manager and finance staff to ensure that the proper funds are in there and all the repayments of any of those funds happen prior to us leaving the housing authority.
Thank you, Mr. Archuleta. I appreciate that report.
And Mr. Chairman, they asked if they needed to be present at this meeting today. I told them, you've only been on here for a week, but I did ask if they would prepare a presentation for our next meeting, so I did ask them to do that, come back before you and at least give you an update of what they've done so far.
Very good. It's a challenge, I'm, I'm sure.
Yes, but you know, they've really come in with a lot of diligence. They do have a lot of experience, and sometimes coming from the outside helps a lot, and they just, it, it's all business for them, and they're very much by the book, which I tend to respect, so.
Easier to clean up. Okay, we'll move on then to, actually, we do need a vote on item 10E. This is Resolution 2014-23.
There was a motion, Larry.
There was a motion.
Motion and a second, and we do, we do need a vote.
Yes.
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 Yes, thank you. We'll move on to item 11. This is Department Matters, Discussion, Consideration, Decisions Regarding the Following. Item A, Discussion of Senate Bill 268. Mr. Lopez?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, this is the other section of Senate Bill 268 that I had referred to previously, section 3E. And the, the bill is actually attached to, is a exhibit to item 10B. But section 3E of the bill says until June 30, 2017, in addition to the increments authorized pursuant to subsection A of this section, and those increments are the 1/8th, 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 and 1/16th that commission. 1/8th, and 1/16th that Commissioner Blankenhorn was discussing earlier. "In addition to those increments, the majority of the members of the governing body of the county, except a Class A county," which is Burnaleo County, because it has the hospital, as alluded to, "may enact an ordinance imposing an excise tax of 1/16th percent or 1/12th percent of the gross receipts of any person engaging in business in the county for the privilege of engaging in business in the county." So I, as part of the presentation on Senate Bill 268, we wanted to make sure that the Commission was aware that it was authorized under this bill to implement the 1/12th or 1/16th additional tax, if you're interested in doing that.
Correct. Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Any questions or comments, Commissioners? If not, we'll move on to Item B, 2014 CDBGE application with regards to Brigadero Road. Ms. Anita Padilla?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Members of the Commission. I brought with me the application that is going to be submitted, so as you can see, it's quite a large package. We have to make two copies of it, plus submit a jump drive with all the information. You have before you the Resolution 2014-19 that approves the submittal of the CDBGE application and a $50,000 cash match.
A vote to approve? I'll go ahead in second.
Second, discussion?
Commissioner Sanchez?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Anita, I know we had talked about this road. What I'd like to do, is I know I talked to Rick on it, is do the whole entire, was it 1.9 of the three inch, instead of the, instead of that chip, a double penetration.
Yes, sir. Within the application, we give them a full scope of work and a phased scope of work in case they do not have enough funding to give us the full. So we've outlined both of those phases in the application in one of these many pages that are in the binder.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Commissioners? Madam Clerk, go ahead.
Yes. 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 Yes.
Yes. Okay, we'll move on to Item 11C. This is CDBGE application, 2014, again, the Brigadero Road.
Mr. Chairman, Members of the Commission, what you have before you is a letter to DFA appointing Rick Chavez as the engineer for this project. They always like to see that we spend, we do not have to spend any money out of house, and the total funds go to the project. So that's what that letter is for.
A vote to approve?
Second.
Okay. Any questions or comments? If not, Madam Clerk?
Yes. 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 Yes.
Yes. Next item. Anita?
Is the actual application that has all of the numbers, the pertinent numbers, for the full scope of work, the phased scope of work. We did meet, we have a 53% low to moderate income, so as you can see, that road was definitely a good project. And we, I mean, we've worked really hard on the income survey. I was up there on a Sunday, had a community meeting at the community center, and Commissioner Sanchez was there, and then spent about three days after that up there, so. It was nice, though, it was nice to get out and meet the community.
Lot of people show up?
Yes, I was very surprised. Fifty people showed up on Saturday, and another 28 showed up on Sunday.
Wow, okay. So move here.
So there was a lot of, there's a lot of support for this project. And in fact, several times during the income survey, when I told them that we would have to go to defend our application, they showed interest in also being there.
Very good. Okay. Okay. Madam Clerk?
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Chairman, Commissioners, also, I'd like to thank Anita for her hard work, Rick, and also the Commission for supporting me on this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item, 11E. This is a report from EMS, Mr. Joaquin Gonzalez, EMS Director, welcome.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, Commissioners.
Public.
Come before you this afternoon to give you the, I guess you could call it the up-to-date report for this year, for 2014, for the EMS Department. First of all, I'd like to say that I want to thank my crews for the very hard work that they've been doing. We are, have been extremely busy this year. We are currently 250 calls over from last year for today, so because of that, I had to hire some more casuals, and so I have a total of 40 employees with Taos County EMS, and that's including my three business office staff, so 43 total. So basically, what I would like to say on that is that with this increased call volume, we have been seeing a lot of sick patients, and I believe this has to do with the climate change that we've been having, a lot of wind, we've been seeing a lot of respiratory cases. Also, a lot of heroin overdoses have been seen in this, in this area, so we've been dealing with a lot of that also. Something that I've been working on, and I'm sure you saw it in the newspaper a few weeks ago, was, I'm calling it the Public Access to Fibulation Program, and I recently have supplied the local law enforcement agencies with AEDs. So each law enforcement agency, Taos County Sheriff's Department, New Mexico State Police, Taos Police Department, and the Tribal Police Department have all acquired an AED in their departments, and I'll be handing those out next week. We're still trying to train each department on how to use those. The reasoning behind that is because, of course, we live in a very rural part of New Mexico, and it takes us quite a bit of time to get to where we need to go if someone has a cardiac arrest. So other communities have been trying this, and I thought it would be beneficial for us to, to put that chain of survival together here for Taos County. Several years ago, I had acquired a grant for AEDs for the fire departments, and those were passed out when I was in absence of here, and so each fire department now has AEDs as well. So my next step in that is schools, getting all AEDs in schools, and that's coming from a grant from the state, and then into the general public. And I know we're waiting for one to be placed here, that's already in stock here. I'm just waiting for the Mark and his staff to install the cabinet, so.
Okay. And Joaquin, is there going to be possible training even for staff?
Correct, yeah.
Or ourselves, so in the event, you know?
And the one that I'm going to be placing here at the County Administration Office is a very simple machine. It's the ones that are always placed in, you know, hotels or airports, anybody could use them, very simple one-button device, so. EMS Week is May 18 through the 24th. Something that we're going to be doing on that is, we're going to be having, obviously, we go to schools, meet with kids, talk to them about safety for the summertime, but something that we're going to be doing probably on Thursday is free CPR training for the public. Now we're teaching hands-only CPR, no more mouth-to-mouth, no more, you know, getting your mouth on someone else's mouth, it's just hands-on only CPR, and that saves lives, so we'll be doing that as well. And something that I've been doing since I was EMS Director with, when Julia Valerio was manager, is I've been sending a monthly report over to my boss, Steve, and so he gets these monthly reports on a monthly basis, but if you, do you guys have this in your packet? Yeah, okay. So basically, what I state here is, you know, what's been going on per the month of each month, so that way Steve knows exactly what we're doing. But if you would like to turn over to your total calls for the year so far, and that just shows you the numbers, and I know you guys like to look at numbers, but what we've been doing. And something that's very fascinating that I found out just recently when I was going over my reports, is that if you look on your, let me see here, out-of-town transfers, and that's John, I think, I don't know what page it is on your guys, but on out-of-town transfers, so far this year, we've done 84 out-of-town transfers from Holy Cross Hospital. So that's a lot of transfers, we're averaging about 21 a month, and that's either to Santa Fe, Albuquerque, or other places. So 84, something that's also fascinating that I found, that last year, Penasco, in the whole year, we ran 154 calls in Penasco. Right now, we're at 113 for the year. So that shows how busy we are in different places.
What are you doing?
So that was, that's pretty fascinating, and that just shows that, you know, we have a staff that's always available. We are a very hard-working group of individuals, and it shows that, you know, Taos is getting busier, there's a lot more people in the area, so. But unfortunate, very bad incidents have been happening lately, but my crews handle them with professionalism and integrity, so I'm very happy with that.
Mr. Gonzalez, going back to the transfers from our hospital to Albuquerque, Santa Fe, or other facilities, this is a result of our hospital not being able to handle these situations?
Most of them, yes. Most of them have to go down for specialty care, that's not available here, cardiac, neuro, stuff like that. But there are times that we're transferring just because there's no beds available here at Holy Cross, or they don't have the staffing available, so yes.
When you say no beds available, is it because they've reduced the number of beds available?
That's probably right, yes, reducing the beds, or there's no staff for those beds.
And that staff?
Seeing that, go, I'm sorry.
And that staff has been laid off, terminated?
I can't answer that question. I don't know, so.
Chairman, Joaquin?
Yes, sir.
I noticed transfers, you were talking about transfers, these are only transfers that your staff has done, not transfers that Red, I mean, either Red River or Questa has done.
Correct. Me and myself and my, well, my department and Red River have an agreement with Holy Cross Hospital, and we're the only two agencies in the county that does the transfers out of Holy Cross. So we rotate, so you're thinking another 80 transfers that they do as well, so we alternate these transfers. So that's 160 transfers in the first four months of the year.
And do you know if they've seen the numbers increase as far as transfers or even ambulance calls as well, or is it just your particular department?
I don't know, I haven't talked to Dina about that, so, yeah.
It'd be interesting to see what those.
Yeah, I know we're busy, it's just, we're very, very busy. Revenues, I have included on the last page, that way you can take a look at what we're doing on a monthly basis. Our projected revenues that we're supposed to be bringing in is $68,000 a month, we're way over that, if you can see on that graph that I've provided. April has changed to $88,587.67, so that's a lot more than what you have on your report. So we're above that projected line, we're bringing in the revenues like we're supposed to, and we don't have a problem with that.
And it's being collected?
It's being collected, and I know I was here several months ago asking for your permission to go and purchase some new billing software. The numbers show that it's working, so, okay.
And Chairman, and Joaquin, and the staff, the person that you have working on this has been fully trained on coding and all the new technology that?
Correct, and that was going to be part of my next report down here. I did send a couple of Darlene and Leanne down to training, and they're the first ambulance coders that the county has ever had, so they went down to Las Vegas a couple months ago and got their certifications on that. A lot of changes will be happening in September for the ICD-10 codes, so they'll be aware of those as well, so.
Mr. Gonzalez, and how many ambulance units do you have at this point?
Currently, I have five.
Five, and is there a need to replace or to acquire?
There's always a need to replace. I don't like to have trucks over 100,000 miles just because of the wear and tear that we go through.
Right.
But we just got a remount done, that's in service, and so most of our other trucks have over 100,000 miles on them already.
So are you looking at funding from the legislature or other sources?
Yes, and no, what I've been doing is, we're working on the budgets, obviously, for this next coming fiscal year. We'll be getting one replaced from the hospital. We get that agreement every other year, so this year, we'll get one replaced from the hospital, and then maybe doing another remount out of our budget.
Very good. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I just want to reiterate that what Mr. Gonzalez has been doing, which is very admirable, is actually, instead of replacing the whole ambulance, he's doing remounts, so he's actually just remounting the chassis because the bed of the box is still good, and they just refurbished that and then put that back on, and it actually has saved the county quite a bit of money by him doing that. And so he's been doing that progressively as we've gone forward, so I appreciate that.
Another thing that we just got awarded is, we got a grant from the State Trauma Advisory Board, and I think Steve got a copy of that as well. It's not much money, but it's a grant that was awarded by trauma doctors in the, in the state for trauma for us, Taos County EMS. So they gave us, I don't remember what the amount was, I think maybe $3,000 or $4,000 or $2,000, but it's enough money to do some more training for trauma, so we'll be doing that as well. And then the Community EMS Program. The Community EMS Program is something that I started with Holy Cross Hospital. It was a start, a very slow start, but we're getting our way up to the top, we're doing home visits now. And we're doing home visits for patients who are chronically ill, who we see that we're going on and picking up on a daily basis, weekly basis. With our home visits after discharge, we're seeing that we're not picking up these patients anymore, and they're not getting readmitted to Holy Cross. So if they get readmitted to Holy Cross within 30 days, Medicare will not pay Holy Cross for that. So we're helping Holy Cross do that by checking on these chronically ill patients on a daily basis, so that's working really well. Any questions?
Well, I certainly appreciate all the work that you and the staff and the crews out there do on a daily basis, and you're to be commanded for that.
Yeah, and my staff does a really good job. I mean, they are the ones that see the most awfullest things that people don't want to see, and they do it on a daily basis, and they, they're very good at what they do.
Yeah.
Let me ask you, now that you stated the last statement, that you go out and visit these people, how do you work that out?
So what happens is, and I just got a fax just about an hour ago, Holy Cross Hospital, when there's patients admitted to the hospital, what they do when the patient is ready to get discharged, they ask the patient some questions, they look at their history, how many times they've been admitted to the hospital, how many times they've been discharged from the hospital, and if this patient meets that criteria, what they do is they send me over a referral form. And when that referral form comes over to me, I have Diane Saad from Penasco, who's about to retire in a couple of months, she goes out and she'll do these visits for me. And so we get the referral, we'll do a complete assessment on the patient, check, make sure that their vital signs are all good, make sure that their house is safe, make sure they're not going to trip and break their hip again, make sure they have oxygen, if they're sent home with oxygen, make sure their medications are there. So there's a big checklist that we go through. So what we do is, we do that visit within 24 hours of discharge, and then another week after that, so making sure they don't get pneumonia, or they don't get blood clots, stuff like that. So then we give that report back to Holy Cross, and, you know, Dr. Haramio or Dr. Pond sees that, so that's the way it works.
Okay, and then the other question was, the change from the day it was, the ambulance was supposed to be in Penasco from what, at night? Instead, you changed it to during the day, is that because there's more call volume during the day?
Correct, Mr. Duran. What happened there was, when I was gone for the time period that I was absent from here, the previous EMS Director put shifts on from 4:00 in the afternoon to 8:00 in the morning. While they weren't responding to any calls, they were there at nighttime. Most of our calls, when I looked through numbers and looked through the data and what, you know, dispatch was giving us, most of our calls were in the daytime in Penasco. And a lot of these patients go to the clinics because they're having chest pain, or they're not feeling well, they get evaluated at the clinic, and then all of a sudden, they call us and say, hey, you know, Mr. Martinez is having a heart attack, this guy needs to go to Holy Cross immediately. So that sort of played a big role on that, to see that these patients were needing us more in the day than at nighttime. So the shifts in Penasco right now are from 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM, and then after 10:00 PM, obviously, we have first responders. I have Nicole Saad, who's an EMT intermediate, Diane Saad, who's a paramedic, who lives in Penasco. I have instructed them to, if there's a serious call in that area, to go and pick up that truck that's at the base in Penasco, and respond to the call if it's a, sounds like a real serious call where the patient needs to be transported. So there's, there's some stuff that works out there, yeah.
Okay, and now another question. When you do the scheduling in Penasco, I know you said you had to hire some more intermediates or whatever.
Yeah.
So when you do the scheduling, how do you do it? Whoever is on the schedule to be sent over there, is sent over there, or?
Yeah, what happens when I hire these new EMTs is, is I tell them during the interview that, obviously, we have two bases, one in Taos, one in Penasco. You might be sent down to Penasco or work in Taos, depending on what your availability is, and so that's the way the schedule works. the way the schedule works out. You know, some people want to work in Penasco, they want to work. And, you know, it's.
Okay. But you know why I'm asking that question? Because I know that there's a lot of calls, but when there ain't no calls, I don't know if you want to do this, but this is a suggestion. See, there's a lot of times that people that are down there don't know where they're called to, which county road or which house or whatever. And if it wasn't for the first responders, you know, they get lost. No.
Exactly.
And I don't know, I'm recommending this, that maybe while there ain't no calls, if they could ride the vicinity, you know, this way they know where Yanar Largo is at, they know where Yanar San Juan is at, up or lower, Pacheco Road, you know, and this way they would be more familiar.
I totally agree with you, Commissioner Duran. And I will make sure that they do that.
Okay.
Yes. And if it wasn't for, Mr. Beta from, from Chomisal in his little red truck, I don't think we'd find the houses. So he's a great guy. He's a great asset. And I always thank him when he's out there. But yes, I'll make sure my guys do that.
All right. Thank you.
Chairman, Commissioners, also, Joaquin, I want to thank you and your staff. Guys have done a great job. And it's good to know you guys are on, on top of things. Thank you so much.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Joaquin's been very modest in saying that his staff, and, and his staff does work hard. But I also want to commend him and his leadership that he's brought to Taos County. The EMS service within Taos County has done a total 360. It's just completely turned around. Our billing has gone, as you can see now, up to $89,000, $85,000 sometimes per month from $12,000 where, when he came in. He's done a total restructuring up there. We don't have any grievances coming out of his department where we were dealing with grievances almost on a weekly basis when I first came in with the previous EMS director. And so, Joaquin, thank you very much for the training, the, the billing, and the professionalism that you brought. And I want to share a quick story with you. I was sitting in my office the other day and the phone rang. And there was an accident down on C-110 where a car had actually been T-boned. Joaquin was actually on his way home, I believe, for the evening. He had put in already like a 14-hour shift. Law enforcement wasn't there yet. The fire department wasn't there yet. And he actually controlled the situation. He helped the people out of the vehicles that were there, did traffic safety at the same time, which was just amazing to me. And then he actually directed some of the ambulance, not the ambulance, but the fire departments while they're doing. I got six calls that afternoon from the people that were involved in the accident to some of the responders that were responding there. And they said, the way he handled the situation, the scene. And I called him and I joked with him a little bit and told him, I'm getting all these calls. What's going on? And he didn't understand what it was going about. But I just, again, want to commend him for his professionalism and his leadership that he's done at the EMS department. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I better know what I'm doing. I've been doing it for 16 years this year. So it's been a while. Thank you, guys. Appreciate you very much.
Excuse me. Joaquin, I got a quick question. First, let me echo everybody's thanks here. It's such an important department. And, and your leadership obviously has made a huge difference. My question had to do with those 24 a month transfers. How much more is that than in the past? Can you tell me approximately?
Yeah. I remember just doing maybe 10 a month, five a month. So, yeah, I mean, it's, it's just.
And, and, and that memory of five, 10 a month was during what timeframe?
I want to say maybe about a year and a half ago, a year. Yeah. I'll have to get the appropriate numbers for you, Commissioner Blackenhorn, but I don't have that on me right now.
You know, the hospital, we've gone over this at the committee, and the hospital claims that the reduction in ICU beds, which I think is what Chairman Romero was referring to, the reduction in ICU beds from five to two has only resulted in approximately one additional transfer per week. And so, anyway, it's, it's, it's good for me to have these numbers. So I can ask these questions to the hospital. Thank you.
Joaquin, I want to just echo what the commission is, is telling you. I, you know, I see you out in the field all the time. And it's great. I thank you. I thank your staff. You have a wonderful staff out there. I mean, if you guys haven't visited over there, I recommend you guys visit. It's, it's professional. And thank you.
And I think that will be on the Thursday or Friday during EMS week. I usually have a little open house, barbecue, invite the public over and meet the guys. So I'll keep you guys updated on that. I'll send an email to Steve and letting you guys know when the open house will be. And then also, we are planning throwing Diane Saad a little retirement party. She's the first paramedic EMT in Taos County history that has retired. So she'll be retiring at the end of June.
So you're going to have staff on bikes during the Mother's Day weekend?
We were not requested for that. No. We usually get requested for the other, for, you know, previous years. We never got a call this year for that. So.
Okay. You might, you might hear from me.
Yeah. So, fiestas, yeah, we always do that for the fiestas. But we didn't get requested this year for Mother's Day. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll move on to the.
Chairman, one second. Joaquin, did they keep you in the loop? And I know they were having meetings with the police and security and all that stuff. Did they not include you on that at all?
No, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll move on to request to reclassify a position, approve a new job description and pay grade. Mr. Herbert Valdez, DWI Coordinator. Mr. Jaramillo, welcome.
Thank you, Chairman, Commissioners. Mr. Valdez was ill today and he was unable to present this item. So I'm going to step in. Mike and Johnny will answer more of the technical reasons why we're making this conversion. In the budget, there's a position of DWI Court Clerk Screener. This position is currently vacant. The individual holding this position resigned and moved on to magistrate court. During the same timeframe, the state DFA was asking that there be a new accreditation auditor, compliance auditor to audit our internal files. And so we took this opportunity of coming up with a new job description that Johnny Rodello and Herbert Valdez worked on. And I'll let them speak to why DFA has asked us to do this. So the money is within the current budget for this new position because of the one being vacated. And the new grant will account for the new position as well.
Thank you, Mr. Jaramillo. Mr. Rodello, welcome.
Commission, Chair. Basically, what's happening is we're getting accredited for our program. Some of the reasons for that is we're trained better. When we go out for the grant funds per year, it's going to make it easier on our program. And the standards that we have to do, somebody has to keep track of those standards. We were using the funds that we received through the clients, probation, me and Norma, we use that money for the court clerk. But instead, we want to use this money for the accreditation person that's going to be watching over the accreditations. What they have to do is make sure the standards are up to par. You have to have training on those standards. And those standards consist of how we're trained, how we operate, how we work with the courts. And it's going to be standardized throughout the state of New Mexico. Department of Finance and New Mac came together to form this. I am part of the ad hoc board, which we've been working on for almost three years now to put this together. So it's now filtering together. The first training will be sometime in late June, early July for this person. And what we're asking is if we can, where we used to use our funds for the court clerk, if we now can use them for this accreditation person so that we don't really fall behind on accreditations. Because they do not want someone like me, who's supervisor of the office, to do it because basically they want a secondhand overseeing that. So we either have to have Norma do it, which there's no way she can do it because she's handling the caseload I'm handling, which is about 200 people each. And the AD person is a person who puts in all the information for the state of what each offender is doing. And so she's up to here with trying to get that information done. So what we're just asking is if we can just move the position from a court clerk, which we were paying for out of our office, over to this accreditation person instead.
And Chairman, and, and this is a grant-funded position, correct? So it comes out directly from that grant?
It comes out from the grant. And Mr. Valdez turned in the new grant application. So this position is accounted for in the new grant application as well.
Okay. And the person, when they're hired, they're, they're notified that if the grant goes away?
They'll go, their position will go away.
Okay.
Okay, Commissioners. What is the wish of the commission?
Senator.
Adam Clerk?
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Trump.
Yes.
Chairman.
Yes. Okay. We'll move on to item 11G. This is a report from the Taos County Fire Departments. Mr. Alan Sanchez, OEM Director, welcome.
Good afternoon, Chairman, Commissioners. This is an update report to kind of show what both, I guess, from the fire chief's side and from the OEM side, what, what's been happening as of late. A lot of the items from the fire departments, I've been working with, meeting with some of the district chiefs. They've requested some items that can be used across the county, one of which has been a hose test unit. So they could do their annual service tests on the fire hoses. That is, actually, we got the quotes in. They'll be going out for, for purchase here by the end of the week. We're looking at a, see if we can piggyback a bid. That's approximately about $6,000 for that unit that can be used by all the, the county districts. A lot of the districts have also been buying radios out of their funds. With those radios, I've had them come here before they go to the actual districts. That way they can be property tagged. I'm doing the programming on them. So we have standardized radio programming across the county. With those, we're also looking at getting a quote from a company in Espinola that does turnout cleaning and inspections. So that way I can go ahead and pass along to the districts and see if they want to go ahead and enter in a program where they can get their turnout gear cleaned and inspected. And then the big ticket item, the, kind of the wish has been, has been a pump test trailer. They got to do annual service testing on the pumps as well. The cheapest quote we've found for this has been approximately $90,000. So this is something that we'd have to look at, some kind of funding so we could acquire that.
Chairman, I have a question. On this pumping deal, they never used to do it before?
They've, they haven't done it consecutively. And when they have done it, most of the departments have taken their trucks to Red River to do it. And it's taken the time to take the trucks out of district and then also the time of Red River staff to go ahead and do the, the test. With this trailer, it's all-inclusive. We basically truck the water in the trailer to the department. And then that way the, the truck stays within district. And we can just test all those trucks at one time. It's something that a lot of the, our bordering counties have done. Colfax has one, Rio Grande County has one as well. If we don't purchase it, we, I probably could see about maybe doing an MOU and seeing what kind of cost agreement we could probably do to maybe see if either one of the other counties would be willing to come up and, and provide that service as well. On the next slide, some of the stuff we've done with Forest Service, like you've probably read in the paper, was the transfer of the equipment. We got eight skid units, pump skid units from Forest Service and a Type III engine. One of those skid units has already gone to Ojo Caliente and is in service. The Type III engine, we're waiting on getting the plates so they'd be compliant so it can go to San Cristoval. We were hoping to kind of work an agreement out with the Community College in Espinola to get those pieces of equipment repainted. But as you may have heard, they lost a lot of their funding for a lot of their programs. And the auto body program was one of them. So that kind of just disappeared on us. One of the other things that I just, in meeting with some of the district chiefs, is I heard that Sierra is also looking at replacing a brush truck. So we're going to see if they might want to take one of these skid units and then just have to purchase the truck the way Ojo Caliente did.
Mr. Sanchez, are those the ones that are at the Yanacamalo Community Center?
Yes.
They're, they're the ones that are just kind of sitting on the ground?
Yeah. We laid them on the ground. That's the way they were actually in storage. Many of those units were actually at the hotshot base. They had been there for three to four years. Just laying them on the ground doesn't do any damage. So they do need some TLC as far as when they were offloaded by Forest Service personnel. They have some dings and some dens in them and stuff. But, and I'm trying to work with the state forester because that's how the progression went. They went from US forestry to state forestry to us. So I'm trying to work with the state forester out of the Cimarron District to see if we can maybe scrap two of the units and use them for parts to make sure we have everything we need for the remainder units.
Complete.
That transfer of equipment was approximately $177,800 that we got from Forest Service.
So you don't expect them to be out on the field for very much longer?
I'm trying to get them. The plan is to, to get two of them that would be kind of like a county resource that could be used in a, in a couple of different ways. If one of the districts has to send a truck in for maintenance, they could pull that truck in as a replacement. Or through the RMP, which is the State Resource Mobilization Plan, they could actually go out with red-carded personnel, the way the Red River Fire Chasers do, except it'd be an engine resource. And then they could actually earn money. We could actually get some of the volunteers to earn a paycheck. And then we also get a payment on the vehicle that would come back to the county.
Very good.
And I think what Commissioner was trying to get to is these tanks are metal and they're sitting on the ground.
They're poly. They're plastic.
Okay. And I think he was concerned that they would be rotting. But if they're plastic, it's not a problem.
Plastic poly tanks, and they're actually on a metal deck. So when they, when we would put them on another truck, the only thing we need to get for the other truck is a flatbed. And then that metal decking gets just mounted to the flatbed.
Right. Okay. Cool.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, also just want to mention that one of the critical parts of us possibly doing this two-unit for Taos County is that those engines wouldn't have to go out of county to go assist. We could make money off them by them going out there. But it wouldn't be taking a resource out of one of our local areas. So I think that's really important. Right now, if, if they're going to do that to go fight a fire someplace else, basically that resource would be taken out of whatever area that truck comes out of.
And that's correct. Currently, we have two districts that participate in the RMP, and that is Rio Fernando and Latir. And they've both put up what we call a Type VI or a brush type vehicle, a pickup truck with one of those skid units, and then also a tender. So those would be the four units that if requested, would be allowed to, to go and support either within the state and in some cases even out of the state if, if need be.
And Mr. Sanchez, and I turn to legal, you know, if these tanks were made available on a rent option, is there a possibility to do that to the private? I know there's a lot of.
With the transfer, the way the transfers were done, we cannot do anything outside of the county.
Within the county. There's a lot of these like.
But no, what I'm saying is, we can't. It has to be.
Government?
Government only.
Okay.
So, because I even got a request to see if we could offer one up for the Coopers Toltec Railroad. And I was told no. That's, they were assigned to Taos County. They have to stay with.
Well, they're, they're out of Taos County. But I know.
I mean, just as.
Government. The reason I'm asking is because a lot of the times, even through the NFL Grant, if they put stipulations during a period of time, you have to have water on the ground to be able to fight a fire.
Yes.
And a lot of these companies are contractors are not big enough to be able to purchase that type of equipment. And if they were able to lease that type, they can continue their work even during the fire danger period. So that's, that's the reason I'm asking.
Yeah. And according to the state forester, that was not allowable. That was kind of one of the reasons. Because I actually had talked to the state forester and told him I didn't have a problem basically giving up one of those units to go to the, the railroad, knowing that, I've been told by forestry that we could get three more, probably the end of this year or sometime next year. So, I mean, if we were, knowing I was going to get three, I didn't have a problem giving one up this year currently.
And, and the thing was not to give them up, but to actually put them up for rent for a short period of time while they're working in.
Yeah.
And the fire danger is, but you answered my question, is they can't go out of the, the hands of Taos County. They can't be, they can't be distributed or leased or rented or, or.
Unfortunately, no.
Okay.
Some of the other projects that, that we've been working with Forest Service, specifically with Steve Miranda, we've been trying to develop a, a response course for the districts as far as if they did have a Forest Service aircraft go down during a wildfire incident or even in transition, how to respond, kind of what kind of information to get, get familiar with the different types of aircraft that Forest Service uses. And also, we've been trying to determine where they could set up base camps, their ICPs, which is their command posts, and giving them a list, both with the GPS coordinates for those areas they could use.
Commissioner, and I was just, you know, you talked earlier about the hose testing and, and the other gear cleaning apparatus. Have you talked to the Forest Service? Have you talked to the town of Taos so that maybe, because I mean, the hose testing, you don't do it, you do it once a year or every, I can't remember how many times a year, twice? I think it's every other year.
It's once a year.
Once a year. And I mean, once you get tested, you're done. I mean, so this is a piece of machinery that could probably be a collaborative buy that could service all the entities within our community. I mean, is it something?
It's something that we could definitely offer up to the town. I know currently, in the past couple of years, the town has actually been going out to a, a. the past couple of years, the town has actually been going out to a private vendor to come and do that testing. So, I don't know, I can offer that up to the chief of the town and see if they're willing to use this equipment. I know that that private vendor that comes in does probably like three times the amount of hoses at one time, so it's kind of, if you think, a cost versus time requirement for them. Currently, I've been out doing tours of the districts with the finance staff. We've been doing the inventory of the county equipment, making sure everything's tagged, so I've been actually going out to all of the districts, seeing the equipment that they have and kind of hearing what some of their concerns are. I'd say the bulk of the districts are looking at acquiring property for new stations or putting new stations up in the existing property. A lot of them have been outgrown. They have cracks in the walls. They're having, starting to have some heating issues, so that's been the biggest request. We have a couple of districts that are looking at getting some additional apparatus, but I think across the board, it's going to be acquiring either property to build a new station or actually just funding, because at the start of construction with a new station, that's something they'll have to talk with Richard Sanchez on, doing some evaluations and some surveying and get some of that started with a lot of these districts.
And with any of this construction and that acquirement of new equipment, is it going to lower ISO ratings?
The stations themselves probably won't go directly towards the ISO ratings, but the apparatus will. The service testing on the hoses, the service testing on the pumps will definitely benefit on the records for an ISO inspection, so will the new 911 center. The 911 center plays a percentage in what your ISO inspection is. There's one department currently in Taos County that specifically Ski Valley is going to go through an ISO inspection actually next week, and so is Eagle Nest, and then I think the next round in the region, there's two departments in Rio Reba County that are going through an ISO inspection in September, and I have been talking with the chief of Carson. He can actually do a phone inspection with ISO to go from a 10 to a 9, which would probably be an increase of about $11,000 on his state-funded budget. So, he's looking at trying to get the necessary equipment he needs to do that phone interview with ISO to bring his down.
Mr. Sanchez?
Chairman Commissioners, Mr. Sanchez, where are we on that mutual agreement with San Luis, in Amalia?
It's right now, and Mr. Malone has been working diligently with me on this. It's currently, you know, we kind of need to get some information from Costilla County as far as radio frequencies go. Everything else has already been walked through, so as soon as we get those frequencies and I can put it on the MOU that we've already drafted, I just need the numbers to enter there, and it should be in front of this commission probably the next meeting. I would assume it has to go through Legal, but that's kind of what our conversation had been about.
And also, Mr. Sanchez, I know we have brought this issue up on the building in Costilla that's been there on the ground for a long.
And that was the thing, when I talked with the chief up there, he's on the property where, I guess it'd be the property on the north side of the road, because he has the two stations right there. There's a little wedge of property that they're not sure who the owner is, but I discussed with him that if they could find out who the owner is and come to some type of agreement, maybe they could build that additional bay towards the back of that station. He said he was also going to talk with Larry Rivera from the RCCLA to see maybe if they could come up with some other kind of land agreement through the RCCLA, and that was one of the same things that even Steve Rivera was going to do for Amalia. Let's talk to the RCCLA about that.
Thank you, sir.
On the next slide, some of the other programs that are kind of happening here have been Ares, which is the, kind of a portion of the amateur radio club, and Ares is actually set up through FEMA for emergency communications. They're the ones that had gotten a lot of the grant requests of items through Alitha when she was in the position. We have installed a good portion of that equipment. They have some odds and ends. They just submitted a list to me of what we need to buy to complete. I told them that based on where we are in the fiscal year, that would probably be out of next year's money, so that room should be complete. I would assume probably by late August, early September. With some of the equipment they have in there right now, they can talk basically statewide. They can do phone patches over the radios. They can interface with a lot of the other communities here within Taos County, and they also have the ability to go international. With one of the antennas that they put up out at my facility, the very first, within minutes of them putting the antenna up, they were having a conversation with a gentleman in Italy. So, they have a really great outreach with the communication. They have a great membership. They have about 30 people that have volunteered to help out on the Ares side, and some of that would help out with the animal evacuation group. We're looking at doing a, kind of a disaster prep drill with the animal evacuation group with Penny Wardlow, and we're also looking at doing a disaster drill with the RCCLA for a dam breach exercise. And they also offer classes to anybody who might want to become a ham radio operator. They'll teach the course and give the test and do all that. So, if you know of anybody who's wanting to take that on as a hobby, please let me know, and I'll get you in contact with the people from the Taos Amateur Radio Club.
Cool.
Like I said, we have an animal evacuation group that kind of was developed last year and was kind of a FEMA requirement. They've been doing really well. They've got most of their staff classes in NIMS, both their 100 and 200 ICS, and like I said, we're working on drill with them and with the Ares to kind of get them brought up of what an actual event would be like for them and how to prepare themselves. Some of the meetings that I kind of get drug out to a lot of times, we've had meetings at my facility with the district chiefs, and I know Chairman Romero was present at that meeting. We have a monthly LIPC meeting, which brings in not only the emergency public safety responders from the county, but it also brings like the gas company in, the co-op, SMU. We've had UNM come up with their fire marshal up here to attend those meetings. We get search and rescue. We get pretty much a mix of just about anybody and everybody Red Cross that attends that meeting. We had one last week that we actually brought the communication vehicle for search and rescue and for Questa PD in to demo with the amateur radio Ares equipment. So, it was a nice kind of get-together out at my facilities on the communication side to show what each entity has. We have meetings with animal evac. Taos Search and Rescue now has asked if they could have their monthly meetings out at my facility, so the third Wednesday of every month, they're meeting out at my facility. The amateur radio club meets the second Wednesday of every month out at my facility, and they also do other stuff. So, we have Skywarn from the National Weather Services doing a class out there this evening. So, the building is getting utilized a lot more.
Good.
Quite a bit of meetings being held out there lately. And then, the Employee Appreciation Committee meeting I attend, as well as the county safety meeting. From the OEM side...
Let me, before you...
Yes, sir.
Have you gotten any grant funding, nothing like that?
We haven't done like any rent agreement, only because a lot of these provide public safety type functions, and a lot of them are volunteers. So, the benefit that we get is we get the interaction, working with these other groups that we normally hadn't had in the past. So, that's been more the reason why, to just go ahead and allow them to use the facility.
Let me ask you this question. They approached me, the first responders, the Pinyasco area, and they said that Rio Reba, it's some kind of grant funding, that when they get called out to a call, they receive $15. Do you know anything about that?
The only funding that I know you can receive, and is if you go, and it's only for wildland, if you go out to a wildland call outside of your district, and the district where the call actually takes place, if you go through the state forestry office and you file a fire report and you assign it a name, if you're out of your district, you can get paid, and that's about what the rate is if you get paid for a wildland call. Now, you can get paid within your district if it goes beyond, I believe it's six hours, or if it's another entity. So, like in the Pinyasco area, if Pico Diz had a fire and Pinyasco went to a system and Pico Diz filed for a fire report, then yeah, the Pinyasco volunteers that attended could receive payment.
No, but my question is, that this first responders, when they go out to assist the EMS?
I've never heard of that.
You have never heard of that?
And, I mean, I'll be perfectly frank with you, Commissioner Grant, I've been a volunteer in Rio Reba County for 18 years now.
And nothing like that?
And I've never received funding to go on an EMS call.
They approached me, no.
Yeah, and that's the reason why I say about, the only funding mechanism that I know is on the wildland fireside.
Okay, all right. This way I can answer their question.
If that's the case, I've been underpaid.
Thank you.
Not a problem, sir. From the OEM side, we've received a request to actually do an all-hazard mitigation grant, and we're working through FEMA currently, myself and Nathan Sanchez, on getting that all-hazard mitigation grant in place. What this grant will allow us to do is actually extend some of the mitigation processes that we've done through the NFL grants. It will also let us put into play future grant projects as far as for flooding, rock removal if we have some rock slides, those kinds of events. So, we've actually, I got an email earlier today where the lady at FEMA reviewed the grant. There's about 10 items that we kind of need to adjust. This is the prelim. This would actually get us some grant money to hire somebody to do the plan, so we can do, add some in-kind to that, but it's approximately $50,000 that we would get to do the planning phase of it, and then if we did have an event or if there was some money allocated, then we could start doing some of these programs. From the flooding side, one of the ones we were looking at is maybe getting some of the arroyos cleaned, because there's been a lot of vegetation and trash that has gone in there, and I think that would really be more of the hazard if we had a flood, is because a lot of our natural drainage systems are clogged up right now. So, that's one of the ones we're really trying to look at, and then to extend some of these fire breaks in some of these areas. We also have received a SHICGAP grant, which was for $75,000 for this year, which the bulk of that's going on the communication side to do this new radio link, point-to-point link with the new dispatch center to San Antonio Mountain, to the repeater up there, and then also to do a lot of the upgrade maintenance to the repeaters, which is approximately $30,000, and that goes to replacing the antennas, ground wiring, batteries, all those kind of little minor things. Also, I've been quite involved with Conrad and Richard on the 911 and the CAD. Did a lot of those ventures out and have been involved in a lot of those meetings on the planning and the way we would go ahead and design the system. And then, some of the outside-of-county meetings, I've attended some meetings with, for the wildland season, that were with US Forest Service in the Santa Fe office, also with, attended a weather briefing down at the Southwest Coronation Center in Albuquerque, and also attended some of the New Mexico Incident Management Team III meetings that are held through BIA and the Northern Pueblo Agencies down in Espanola. I could say that a lot of those Incident Command jobs that, for the IMT III state team, actually, for some reason, come out at Santa Fe and the Carson. This year, the Incident Commander is actually Ray Corral from Forest Service. In the past years, it's been Darrell Abita from BIA, or even Duane Archuleta from Forest Service out of the Santa Fe office. Some of the other meetings that have been held out at my office, and these are some of the ones, like I said, we've met with FEMA, we met with the RCCLA. We're going to go and do a communication test with the RCCLA before we do their disaster drill. We've already kind of diagnosed some problems as far as their reporting of the water levels at the dam, so we're trying to now even come up with some avenues, so they can get some funding to maybe alert some more residents, and I know that was also an issue that the fire chief from Amalia brought up to me as well.
Water levels, higher water levels?
Well, they have a monitoring system that will monitor the water levels, but there's only one person that gets that information currently, so, and it only goes to his computer, so if he doesn't actively go look at the computer, he doesn't know if there's been a sudden drop at the dam. He doesn't know if it's, or if there's been a sudden rise due to snow melt-off or rain. So, if they did have a breach, there's no way to learn, to alert the residents from, between the Amalia Fire Station and the dam itself, and there's probably, I believe, nine residents in that area along the canyon. So, one of the things that we did instruct them to do was to go ahead and cut some evacuation zones behind the homes up the hill. That way, if they did have a dam break and they only have minutes to get out of the home, instead of trying to drive down canyon and maybe getting caught in the water, forget the house, forget the car, just run up the hill to this predetermined area and get to safety, and then since we know where those areas are, we can go back and do an accountability of the residents. When we go up there, we've already talked about identifying some fire escape zones during the summer months, and then also looking at using the lodge up there as a shelter-in-place facility, and I've already even been told by FEMA that if that is a designated shelter-in-place area, we can actually get some federal funds for generators to go ahead, and we can wire that facility for generator power backup. And then, a couple of the other meetings that I've attended and conferences, I went to a Project 25 radio communications class in Albuquerque a couple of weeks ago, and then I also attended a, it's called the IWC, the International Wireless Communications Expo in Las Vegas, Nevada, and I took some classes there on radio allocation, frequency allocation, how to go about doing that for planned events, et cetera. So, it was real informative, and then they have an expo, a trade show portion, which was real informative as far as a lot of the new equipment that's coming out and how it can be used, and I've already talked to a couple of those vendors to talk to the RCCLA about some outdoor sirens and some lighting beacons in case they did have a breach. And then, finally, some of the MOUs that we're working on, I'm working on an MOU with Rio Reba County to use some of their repeaters, and they would also have the ability to talk on south and on north of, off of our system, and then, like Commissioner Sanchez had brought up, we're trying to finish off the MOU with Colorado, specifically with Costilla County, to provide mutual aid. Some of the stipulations that we had on that, after going through the State Fire Marshal's office, was you would only respond, half the resources and personnel, no further than 30 miles across the state line, so those were two right there. You could only allocate half of your equipment, and then the distance to respond. The third one was that if you wanted to be a member, you couldn't live in Costilla and want to be a member of Garcia, you have to be a resident of the state and then be a member of the department within that state. And then, the fourth one was having the communications plan set up, and we've drafted the MOU with the communications on our side, so we're just waiting to get the frequency list that they would allow us to use from the Colorado side. And I stand for any further questions.
The wildfire situation in the mountains, what's the status of the mountains at this point?
Right now, we're kind of developing an El Nino pattern, which for us in the summer months means we're going to continue the way we are right now, probably for another month, with having these storm systems come through every three or four days. The unfortunate thing about that is it's bringing a lot of wind and not very much moisture. With the El Nino pattern setting up, we may get an early monsoon season, so we're kind of in a good place right now, barring the wind. We have enough moisture that we haven't really had very many incidents. If the El Nino pattern sets up really good, we should have a really good snowpack, and it should help us on the drought side, but if we have a really good snowpack, we'll probably get a lot of early-season growth next season. I know we're getting a lot of grass that we haven't had in years past currently, and that's really been our concern from all, what everybody's said, is that we're not going to have any. We will have fires this year. It's not that we're not going to have any, but they don't think they're going to be as intense as they have been the last two seasons. So, we're kind of just waiting until probably end of the month, first part of June, to see if the monsoon season starts to develop. If that takes place, then we're probably looking at maybe having a little longer fall fire season, and then hopefully, we'll start getting some good moisture for the winter.
As far as what the experts are saying about the drought, what is being predicted? How many more years?
A lot of that's just going to depend on how well this El Nino pattern sets up. Kind of the past history is, we've had this El Nino pattern for two to three years, and then we've gone into the El Nino pattern, which has been the drier winters for us, and usually a little bit better monsoon season, but if we kind of get some really significant snowfalls over the next couple of winters, I would say it wouldn't take the drought away, but at least it'll probably put us at an uneven with where we have been in the past. It's going to take a lot of moisture to do that, to get us back to where we should be.
Thank you very much, Alma. Okay, we did add, when we amended the agenda, we added another item, 11H, as per the request of Commissioner Durdan.
Commissioner, I put this on the agenda, and I had talked to the clerk, see if we could get some early voting in the Questa area and Pinyasco area, and she told me she did not have a problem.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. So, I did...
Good afternoon, Commissioners. So I did speak to Commissioner Duran about having an alternate site in both Penasco and probably in Questa. We would need to do a court order, just basically amending our resolution, which is not difficult, and maybe County Attorney could help me draft that. And then the auto marks are paid for by the state, so that wouldn't cost us, the cost would just be to be able to have at least two people to sit on both of those boards, and then a location that we would be able to have for those two sites.
In Penasco, probably at the community center?
The community center. And in Questa, I'm not sure where we would be able to, a location.
Could we, I don't know if the village would be available, Brett?
So anywhere, we would actually need, if there's internet access, as long as there's some sort of internet access. And it would start on the 17th, and it would go to the 31st. And the way we have it set up at the Armory is we do Tuesday through Friday from noon to eight. That gives people to go, the ability to go after work. And then the three Saturdays, the 17th, the 24th, and the 31st, between 10 and 6, that they would be able to go to those sites.
And what cost?
So, I mean, you're looking at about, about $5,000 just to be able to pay those early workers and any other supplies that we needed to purchase.
And to have money available, I'm a Commissioner.
Commissioner Duran, do you want to write a check or cash?
Make it out to I.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I did check with Renal, and we do have a little bit of money available in the commission budget. So if that's the wish of the commission, we could move in that direction for early voting.
Commissioners, do you help me out on that one?
Mr. Chairman.
Just a quick caution, it's entirely appropriate to discuss this matter and give guidance, but we can't take a vote on this, okay?
Oh, we can't?
Cannot. It was not, can't take an action item that wasn't previously noticed, but it doesn't sound like it's necessary.
I see, I see.
Doesn't sound like it's necessary at all.
But, yeah, Mr. Chairman, but we would have to take an action on the next meeting, or?
No, as long as Steve says there's budget money, and he can make that happen, then you don't need to take action on it.
Oh, okay, okay.
So it does require a?
It will require a court order, because in October, in November, when we did our resolution, naming our polling locations, but I talked to the state, and she sent us kind of a template that we could go off of, and it's fairly easy.
And Mr. Malone will present it to the district court?
Right.
I see.
And then I can already get started on working with the vendor to be able to, and the state to be able to provide us those other two auto marks.
Okay. And I guess my question is, what was the reason for not having these sites located already?
It's never been. I know I've talked to Commissioner Duran about it before, but just money-wise, I mean, we could have budgeted in so that it's available all the time. But it just was never budgeted before.
But this request came to me two years ago. That's why it wasn't done, no? And I says, well, I'll try and find out. And a lot of people were asking, well, they should really?
It would make it convenient for everyone. And during a primary and a general, the state does pay for those auto vote systems, so, I mean, it might as well take advantage of them, so. And if we used a minimum of two people to work those sites, right now, that would be enough because it hasn't been established yet. Later on, we may have to look to get another person to be able to help with that, so.
And this would start when?
It would start on the 17th. That's when the one at the old Armory starts, on the 17th.
And that'll be, excuse me, Chairman? And it'd be the Tuesdays through Fridays, is that what?
Tuesday through Friday between noon and eight. And then Saturdays is 10 to 6.
And we'll get some flyers out there?
Oh, definitely. Yeah, I mean, we'll put it on the site and so that people are aware of it.
Thank you.
And I'll take this opportunity now to let everybody know that early voting started today. It goes up until the 31st, and it's here at the courthouse between 8 and 5, Monday through Friday, and then starts at the Armory on the 17th.
Any significant voter numbers, or?
We had maybe 10 o'clock, 14 people, so, I mean, I think it's gonna, you know, we have a lot of uncontested races, so.
Chairman Commissioners, Anna, do you know if they got the sample ballots? I know I checked this morning, they didn't have any sample.
We were making them this morning, yeah, so they're there already. Yeah.
Cool. Thank you very much.
Alrighty.
Okay, we'll move on to item 12, Budget Matters Discussion and Consideration Decisions regarding the following. How quickly can we cover all 20 items, Mr. Cordova? Mr. Haramio, I'm sorry. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'll do my best to go through them. It's that time of year where everyone's trying to move money around and make their final purchases. Finance Department's already issued a deadline for purchase orders of May 16th, and so that's why you see so many items. Regards to the money for the voting, you probably will see another budget adjustment next meeting for me to move that money around.
And Mr. Archuleta?
Yes.
Are we getting, somebody scrutinizing these movement of monies? Just because we have it in the budget doesn't mean we need to spend it. Anytime we can save money, I think we need to save money. You know, a lot of people think just because they have it in the budget, they want to spend it. And I just want to make sure somebody is scrutinizing that.
Actually, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, Commissioner Brony, the Finance Director, myself are scrutinizing. I think the Finance Director actually scrutinizes me after I scrutinize that. Part of what's going on is that we've given everybody a 1% reduction in their budgets this last year. And because of that, it's hard to anticipate some of the items that have come up throughout the year. And so we're just making those items whole as part of the normal operation of Tallas County Government. And so, yes, all of those items are scrutinized. I can tell you that in our projections that we have for next year, we're actually looking at coming in under budget from this year in some of our major programs. Again, that would be like the cash cow that we have across the street over here, the detention center. Our operating funds there, Mr. Cordova can give you the exact numbers, but we actually have gained some revenues in there. We're also working with the town on some of those revenues. And so our hope is that we're continuing to save money for the county and moving forward. We're also not filling positions, not that we've had a lot of people leaving, but we hold on to those positions as far as we can. We're also bringing them in at the lower end of the level so that they have some upward movement as time goes on. And so Leandro and Mr. Haramio and myself have actually gone through those items every time they come up for scrutiny. Next week, just for the commission's knowledge, we will be, well, actually, it's this week. It starts tomorrow. We're gonna be sitting with each department head and going over their budget projections for 2014, 2015. And again, we asked for a zero-based budgeting this year, and we've already basically told staff that that's where we're gonna be, and that's the bottom line. So they'll be coming in this week to justify, I invite the commission to sit through those meetings at any time that they'd like to do that, to look at a particular department, or just to sit in, in general, to take a look at that. And those will be starting tomorrow, I believe, at 9 o'clock in the morning.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Brony, also, we did turn away a few. I could have had 40, 50 of these things in front of you today if we wouldn't have been scrutinizing them. A lot of them are cleanup, and we're just doing things to clean up before we get it to the end of the year and before I have audit. People out here scrutinizing them too, so. We are trying to help expedite the money that needs to be spent, but at the same time, I say no a lot. I do. First resolution, DFA Resolution Number 37, is a resolution requesting a transfer temporary cash from the General Fund to a DWI Grant Fund, the 1224, in the amount of $14,375. The actual request for this cash loan was $33,000. It's one instance where I asked them to scale it back. We're only putting in what we need as we go through, and hopefully, we reimburse as we go through, so we may not need to pull any of this $14,000 by the end of the year. But we put it in place to make sure that we can spend it all if we need to, because this is one of those spend it or lose it grants. And I stand for any questions.
Do a move for approval.
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Yes. Yes.
Yes, item B.
Mr. Chairman, DFA Resolution Number 38 is basically to establish the loan fund for the solid waste loan that we, the commission approved and was funded on May 7th. The money's sitting there waiting for us to make the purchase of the roll-off trucks. And so this is just establishing the budget so that we can go ahead and use that money to purchase the trucks. And I stand for any questions.
Do a move.
I'll second. Madam Clerk?
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Item C.
Mr. Chairman, DFA Resolution Number 39 is requesting to transfer temporary cash from the General Fund to the Chalmis Al Fire Department Fund. It's a grant fund. We, it was a $50,000 grant. We just did not prepare enough cash to make, to get the cycle going. And so we're asking for an additional $9,700, only as needed. That would be the most we would need. But as soon as we are able to reimburse, we are reimbursing on these grants at this time, trying to get the money back in as quickly as possible.
Okay. Do a move. I'll second. Madam Clerk?
Yes.
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 Yes. Item D.
DFA Resolution Number 40 is a resolution requesting a transfer permanent cash. This was in regards to the educational GRT bonds that were issued last September. The treasurer actually received a small refund in the cost of issuance fees they got. And so we're taking all the small refunds from each individual fund, putting it back into the General Fund. The total amount's $486.67.
I'll second that if we can use that in District One.
Second.
Mr. Cordova, if I could scrutinize that a little now.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes, item E.
DFA Resolution Number 41 is a resolution proposing to increase revenue and expenditures for our solid waste operations. We're proposing the total amount to $21,000. First, I'll go into the expenses that are needed. Solid waste is in need of $3,500, and it's temporary position line item, and $1,000 in overtime line item to get them through the end of the fiscal year. And then they also need to increase their transportation expense. They're getting close to the end of their fuel budget, so we're increasing that by $8,000. And we're also increasing their maintenance of vehicles by $8,500. One of their vehicles ended up in the shop. The assessment was large either way. Either we put it back together at a very expensive cost, and we don't get anything fixed, or we pay to fix it, and we get it back on the road. And so we made the decision that it was better to go ahead and get that truck back on the road.
What's the repair amount?
I believe.
Why do they put it in?
I couldn't give you the details. I'm the finance guy, but I believe the total cost of repair was somewhere around $14,000. Just to, just to do the assessment and put the truck back together. If we chose not to have the repairs done, it was in the tune of $7,000. So it made sense to just go ahead and go forward with the final repair and get that truck back on the road.
An engine, around two, a cat.
18, 15,000.
I do believe that something to do with the engine, and I want to say that Mr. Martinez indicated it'll be basically a new, new engine by the time we get it back, and that that truck will have a lot, many years of service to go because of the work that's being done.
So when you get it back, mark down the mileage. It should be able to run half a million miles more.
500,000.
And where we're getting the extra revenue from this, to be able to do this adjustment, we're taking an additional $10,500 from the GRTs. We have met our GRT goal already for the year. And so we have two more months to collect in the GRT. The $10,500 is just, will be a small portion of that. We're also collecting very well on our landfill user fees, and we're basically already at our full collection per budget, so the other $10,500 will come out of that line item. Overall, we've done a good job this year of collecting. And so the solid waste department does have a little bit of extra funds here at the end of the year to be able to do these things, but we're still very tight, and with this new budget, we will be coming to you to look at options and probably to at least match the landfill fees that have increased. We may need to increase our fees just to keep up. So just that note, and I stand for any questions on the resolution.
Do a move to approve.
I'll second. Madam Clerk?
Yes.
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 Yes, item F.
Now we're into the budget adjustments. Mr. Chairman, the first budget adjustment is for the Adult Detention Center. We are proposing to adjust the feeding of prisoners line item through the end of the fiscal year. The average monthly expense in this line item is about $17,500 a month. Part of the reason we're short is that we paid a couple of last year's bills in this year's budget. So we were already behind the ball, and then the cost did go up slightly. We're taking the money from full-time positions where we were able to find some savings throughout the year. The restructuring over at the detention center has paid off. We're starting to see the, a little bit of savings in this year, and next year's budget is looking better. It's not the cash suck it once was. We're starting to really fine-tune that. So the total amount of the move is $52,500, and I stand for any questions.
We can't go back to the town and increase the?
Easy, easy.
I'll second. Madam Clerk?
Yes.
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 Yes. Item G.
Mr. Chairman, the next budget adjustment is within the clerk's recording fee. The budget adjustment is needed to allocate per diem and employee training through the end of the fiscal year. And I stand for any questions.
I have to, I have to. Can't give you a hard time?
It was gonna be a conspiracy.
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay, item H.
The next budget adjustment is for the EMS fund. It's needed to allocate additional money for utility payments in the Penasco base.
You haven't taught him to bypass the meter yet.
Second.
Yes.
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 Yes, item I.
The next budget adjustments for the Finance Department. Budget adjustments needed to allocate more money for our New Mexico Edge classes. Currently, Finance Department has two employees working towards their certified purchasing certificate, and I would like to start sending a third employee to get that certification for purchasing. We make a lot of purchases at the county, and I'd like to have more people qualified than not qualified, so.
Do a move.
I'll second.
Yes.
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 Yes, item J.
The next budget adjustment is for the Latier Fire Department. It is needed to allocate funds for communications. They'd like to purchase some radios out of their state fire protection funds.
Do a move to approve.
I'll second. Madam Clerk?
Yes.
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 Yes, item K.
Next budget adjustment is also for the Latier Fire Department, but this is out of its fire excise funds. They're proposing to allocate funds for safety equipment, uniforms, and training. And we're taking that money out of maintenance of vehicles, furniture, and equipment.
I'll second. Madam Clerk?
Yes.
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 Yes, item L.
The next budget adjustment is for the probate judge. Budget adjustment is needed to allocate funds for mileage reimbursement for the probate judge who went to a retreat in Albuquerque and needed, in the past, had never put money into this line item, so we're just moving it from per diem and putting into mileage $200.
Do a move. Second. Yes.
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 Yes, item M. Construction Department?
Construction Department. Unfortunately, oh, there it is. This budget adjustment is just to allocate a little bit of money into non-capital furniture fixture and equipment. The building, I mean, the construction manager hasn't used his budget at all, so this, he wants to make a couple purchases for equipment to help his job, and we're taking money out of all the other line items he didn't use at all. So this would probably be the first purchase for him out of this budget this year.
What are these items?
I wish he was here. I want to say he had, they're all construction items, a leveler, I want to say something to measure. I don't know exactly.
We could have him come in.
Can we move to table at this point and then?
Yes.
Commissioners, is that all right? Move to table. Move to table. I'll second.
Chairman, couldn't we get a five-minute break?
Sure. Okay, let's, let's do the move to table on the M, or should we just go ahead and do a motion for a break?
Yeah. Move the table and then...
I'll go ahead and second on the move to table. Madam Clerk, go ahead.
Commissioner Plankton.
Yes.
Commissioner Grant.
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Yes, and then, uh, break, five-minute break. Motion by Commissioner Duda. I'll second. Madam Clerk?
Yes.
You didn't see me get a little...
Yes, yes.
Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Yes.
So move to come back.
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Scramble over the lines.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, we'll continue with item M, Budget Adjustment, Construction Department.
Chairman, I'll yield to Mr. Sanchez to explain his tool.
Commission Chair, what I'm requesting is money to purchase another monitor so I can work with drawings on one monitor and text on the other. And the other item is a laser layout tool since I'm usually by myself. Makes laying out and checking walls square and plumb a lot easier and a lot quicker as we have several projects that I'll be doing a lot of the work by myself, like the Ag Center and Amalia Community Center and whatnot. It projects five laser beams in plumb square out to 100 feet, and it's plus or minus an eighth of an inch across 100 feet.
Mr. Sanchez, if you had that level, would that wall, the back wall of the, of the Ag Center be straight then?
The back wall of the Ag Center? We have talked to our concrete contractors, but it should, it would have been straight then, yes, sir.
So move.
I'll second.
Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Plankton.
Yes.
Commissioner Grant.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Item N.
Mr. Chairman, item N, Budget Adjustment for Public Works. It's, is needed to increase their utilities line item by $6,600 to get them through the end of the fiscal year. They're taking the money out of their transportation expense.
Is that because of the high cost of electricity in pinasco again?
Because I know we will have that new public works building over there.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, I think the high cost of all these utilities had something to do with gas, fuel, propane, maybe some electric, but most of it seemed to be related to gas.
So move.
Second.
Yes.
Commissioner Grant.
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Yes. Item O.
Treasurer. The next budget adjustment is for the Treasurers Department. They're proposing to purchase a few things here at the end of the year and also to be able to go down to Deming for the rest of their, their training and stuff. But I think they wanted to also try and purchase a computer or two. And I unfortunately don't have that in front of me.
So move.
Second. Discussion. Spending money or I want, I'm just buying something.
In this case, yeah, it wasn't just something. They re-prepared it a couple times. I asked them to give me more clarification. I'm sorry, I don't have it in front of me, but it was specifically for computers and training and stuff. But that budget has been spent. Just put it that way. All the way down probably to the penny.
And that's the travel budget, the travel budget?
Entire Treasurer's budget has pretty much been spent down.
How much?
Well, they had, currently what they're doing is they're adding $7,600 to non-capital furniture, fixture, and equipment. That's for the computers. Another $220 in transportation expense, that's the fuel they're gonna need to get them down to Deming. And then more employee training, $150 for employee training for the, for more classes. They did indicate that these classes would be for the staff, which, maybe Ms. Treasurer can mention this.
Okay. Was there a motion?
Yes.
And there a second? Okay.
Wonderful to be able to watch the commission meetings. As I noted in the explanation, that our temporary position, the, our temp, quit. So we had that extra money. And when did I run? And, and we decided, we, our computers have been down, one right after the other. And so with that money, we decided to buy some computers that we so desperately need. So that is why I moved money around.
Or computers.
Or computers.
That's all we need to know. Thank you.
Thank you. And, and Conrad, you're working with Conrad and his staff, of course, to, to get that?
Getting our pricing.
Okay.
And yours are dated, I guess?
Very dated, and two of them crashed right in the middle of, of our...
Rush hour.
Weeks ago of our receiving, and so we were down with two. So it makes it really hard when, when we're wanting to collect or do any work. They're just, we're just paralyzed.
Okay. Okay. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Plankton.
Yes.
Commissioner Duda.
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Yes. Item P.
The next budget adjustment is the Housing Authority, CFP, 2011 funds. This CFP capital fund, this is 2011 money that had been restricted because they hadn't put it into use. So what we're doing now is we're encumbering it for the professional service line item for the Smart Inc. that's here. So we're gonna be paying them from this line item mostly. And so we're going, this also helps us from being penalized any further because we're now encumbering the money. So we won't lose anyone.
What is the amount?
The total amount for Smart Inc., the total contract cost, I believe, was, I'm looking at Mr. Malone.
I can give you ballpark, Mr. Chairman.
We've approved it, obviously, but I...
Yeah, it was a little, it was a little over $120,000.
But it was for April 1st, so since they didn't get here till the end of April, we won't be paying the entire amount. It was prorated per month, and I want to say it was 45,000.
Forty, it was 41,000 some odd per month.
So this should cover most of it. There may be a little bit additional coming out of Section 8, but the funds are there in Section 8.
And that'll be through when? July 1st, or will they stay with us after?
It'll be through June 30. At that time, Smart Inc. will then be working, well, they actually currently are working for Northern Regional Housing Authority. But Northern Regional Housing Authority will then have the contract and be in charge of the grant funds, and we no longer will have those grant funds.
I'm sure they are earning their, their pay. Is there a motion?
So move.
I'll go ahead and second. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Plankton.
Yes.
Commissioner Grant.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Item Q.
This budget adjustment is for facilities management. They need to increase their overtime by $137, and then they're also needing to increase their supplies. And they're taking that money out of various line items like training, printing and publishing, per diem, and mileage reimbursement.
So move.
I'll second. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Plankton.
Yes.
Commissioner Grant.
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Yes. Item R.
Item R, this budget adjustment is from the commission's budget. Basically, we are trying, we're putting $11,000 into non-capital furniture, fixtures and equipment. We're taking it out of professional services, and this is money to be used to purchase the furniture for the waiting area up here, I believe.
Oh, cool. What, what type of furniture?
The furniture, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, is gonna be something that we can actually wipe down and clean, but that also goes with the motif of the entrance there. We have a lot of people that are just standing around in the lobby area and wanted to make sure we got that. But it is somewhat of a leather fabric that can actually be wiped down and sanitized.
Very good. Awesome. I'll go ahead and second. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Plankton.
Yes.
Commissioner Duda.
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Yes. Item S.
Item S is a budget adjustment for DWI Domestic Violence Fund. They're looking to add $70 to subscription and dues, and then $2,500 in non-capital for a computer. And they're taking that out of full-time positions. This is grant money, and let's use it or lose it.
So move.
Okay. Item T. I mean, I'm sorry, second. I'll second. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Plankton.
Yes.
Commissioner Duda.
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Yes. Item T.
Item T is a budget adjustment for the Human Resources Department. They would like to, I think this may be backwards. We're trying to put money into non-capital. And unfortunately, it looks like this is prepared backwards. We're trying to put 2,500 into non-capital for a computer, but it looks like we put 2,500 into per diem. It should have been backwards. We're trying to take it out of per diem and put it in for a computer. So if, maybe we can motion to approve with that adjustment if the Commissioners choose to approve.
Mr. Malone, is that all right?
Yes, it's appropriate to amend it.
Okay. Is there a motion?
So move.
Madam, is there a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Plankton.
Yes.
Commissioner Duda.
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Item 13, elected official, thank you, Mr. Cordova.
Thank you.
Any ideas to how much you, you, between you and the manager, saved us with regards to scrutinizing all of these items that could have come in?
Overall, for the year, when we get into our budget, work-study, I think you'll be surprised how much we were able to save in things like maintenance of vehicles, parts. Just as a quick example, we spent, I want to say, close to $60,000 last year in vehicle parts, and we're probably about $30,000 this year. Supplies, we budgeted, I think, I want to say $130,000 or so. We're probably only halfway there on supplies. So there's a lot of little line items where we're finding the savings. Unfortunately, it's not a lot. I mean, I wish it was six figures, but you know, it will add up to over six figures by the time we look at everything we were able to save.
Thank you very much.
And I'd like to say that the harder it is to spend, the less spending there is, the more difficult you make it on them, make them go through the process, get the quotes. Not only is it a little more of a deterrent, but they also get the best price because they've gone through the whole process, and they get used to it. After a while, it's never easy to have to go through it, and I wasn't very popular in the beginning, but at the end of the year, there's money to be saved, and I think that's what's important for the county.
Very good.
And Chairman, Mr. Cordova, is there, has, will be, we be able to see any savings this year by going paperless? That we did go paperless, or is it gonna be a thing that's gonna take a couple of years to see any?
I think we'll better be able to quantify it next year after a year of consistent data. I think we'll have a better idea of how much we actually did save. I do anticipate we'll save, and I've seen a little bit of savings, but I couldn't tell you that it's completely related to going paperless, but supplies are down in general.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I think that it's important to note that in going paperless, we're also saving on binders, we're saving on staff time. And the other thing that we've done is we've actually got some other Xerox machines, and we're actually saving on the Xerox machines because we got out of the old contracts or getting into new contracts with Caricera. And so that's also saved, but it also brings a great scanning capability for the iPads and stuff that we're trying to scan over now. So there's gonna be a significant savings. I think when we estimated this was, it was close to about $120,000 that we were spending on, on Xeroxes. That in itself would probably be cut down to about $80,000 right off the bat, which is about a $40,000 saving.
What a, what a great idea.
Actually, going forward with just Xerox, I think next year we only have $60,000 so far in the budget compared to the $80,000 we budgeted last year. We're already starting to...
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cordova. Okay, we'll move on then to elected official reports, discussion, consideration, decisions regarding the following. This is item 13A, Resolution 2014-18, Approval of the 2014-2015 Lodgers Tax Board. Ms. Valerie Montoya, Deputy County Clerk, and Ms. Anna Martinez, County Clerk.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. So there's a little bit of an amendment to the resolution that's on your agenda in your packet. In the statute, it says we have to have two, five total members, so two have to be lodging establishments, two tourism, and one member at large. And so Anna, myself, Steve, and Leandro met, and we thought it would be a good idea if we put Leandro on that board since he is on the finance and he can kind of see what the process is, and, and if anybody comes in asking on another level from the county, he can, he'll know that they already applied.
Gives them something to do.
Add more work to him. So we just needed a tourist-related person, and I spoke with Steve for one of the breaks, and he, he suggested Dennis Monzanares from the Chamber of Commerce. So if that's okay with you guys, and if I contact him and he's okay with that, we can go ahead and put him.
Okay.
So move, Mr. Chairman, Resolution approved.
Second.
Okay. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Plankton.
Yes.
Commissioner Grant.
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Item fourteen, County Managers' Report on Matters, Discussion, Consideration, Decisions Regarding the Following, Item A, Nurse Advice, New Mexico, E-911.
Mr. Chairman Commissioners, I think you saw in your packet that I had attended a meeting in Albuquerque, New Mexico, with the University of New Mexico and New Mexico Department of Health. One of the things that they're wanting to do is expand into rural communities, and this would be actually at no cost to the commission and to our 911 center. Part of what I had to present to UNM and to the New Mexico Department of Health was actually the status of our 911 center, the type of equipment we were bringing in and the state-of-the-art equipment. What they are offering to us, and if this partnership does develop, is that basically they would have the University of New Mexico do a study on what it would save the county to have a full-time nurse up at our 911. So basically, somebody calls in, their child has been poisoned. Instead of dispatching a sheriff's department officer and an ambulance out to the home or a first responder, basically, the nurse would get on the line with the individual family and try to treat the family over the phone, tell the parents what to do, step by step, and how to carry that out. If at that point, the nurse determines that what the child ingested or the child's symptoms are too severe, we'll go ahead and still dispatch the ambulance at that point. But if the nurse is able to make an appointment for them the next day with their family physician, make sure they take care of the symptoms by giving them milk or whatever the process is for that, and it saves the child going to the emergency room, they wanna do a whole study for over a year to see what that cost benefit would be to Taos County. They in turn would also be providing that service as an emergency hotline for families to call and talk to the nurse. In our discussions, we also thought that possibly when that nurse had some downtime, that that it would be a possibility for them to go down to our adult detention center, also view files, do some cleanup for Taos County, and also some checks and balances. So there's a whole packet in front of you. This is something that's being done already in Bernalio County. There's some cost savings that you can see there to Bernalio County for, one, not having to dispatch, two, for the number of calls to just, you know, parents who are really worried, or somebody who's asking, you know, an ambulance to come pick up their grandfather because he wasn't feeling good that day, that the nurse could actually help treat that individual, do an assessment over the phone, and work with that. So this is just another step in the process of trying to get that for our 911, and it's called the Nurse Advice Hotline that we would be doing in cooperation with the Department of, sorry, Department of Health and the University of New Mexico. I stand for any questions.
And are other entities doing this already? Is it something that's?
Actually, they are in the, in the metropolitan areas, but not in any rural areas. And so we were a prime candidate for that just because we're gonna set up a new E-911 system. It would also help us tie in the phone lines so that we're able to do that. This person would actually be here housed at our 911 center.
Very good. Okay, Commissioners, or the?
Just for information purposes, I just stand for any questions, see if anybody has any questions.
Is this something that would be grant funded, or something that's?
Actually, the University of New Mexico would be doing this in conjunction with the New Mexico Department of Health for this community. And what they're trying to do is actually make this a model site for other communities to eventually hire nurses within E-911 centers to try to save them money from actually dispatching ambulances and also people going to the emergency room. So it would be a cost benefit to the counties eventually, and so it'd be a process of doing it. It also would help in rural jurisdictions where, you know, they're far away from a hospital that they can't, or the clinic's closed, and they can't get to a hospital within thirty, forty minutes, they could actually start some treatment on the individual through this nurse hotline.
But this also helps in that it could save money for the person thinking that they have to call an ambulance.
Absolutely.
And in reality, they could hopefully get that help through the phone.
The ambulance, it'll call the emergency room. A lot of times, what they do too, and if you read through the literature, it basically says that they also have the partnership with all the care providers here. If you listen to what Joaquin said earlier also, part of that was part of the presentation that we gave to UNM and the Department of Health in Albuquerque that day, was that Joaquin is actually doing this care with the ambulance service individuals for wounds and those kind of things for individuals that don't show up. One of the suggestions that they also had is a partnership with Walgreens and Walmart here in Taos, so that if people aren't picking up their medication, again, these are gonna be people that are gonna show up at the emergency room with anxiety attacks or those kind of things. And if we could somehow follow, follow up with those, then it'll reduce our risk of people actually ending up in the emergency room. One of the questions that I did have, and they had a lot of literature on it, is our liability also that the county would have. Basically, because of the University of New Mexico and the Department of Health is doing this in partnership, they would actually take the liability from Taos County, and that would be because it's a certified nurse that's giving actually the, the recommendations for treatment at that time.
Thank you.
And Steve, how would this work then? You know, we talked about certifications through the jail dispatch. You know, there is, I can't remember the title of?
Medical dispatch.
Medical dispatch.
That's correct. This would go in conjunction with that. This would actually give us an opportunity to, one, push it over to a licensed nurse, but that licensed nurse could also provide training. That's all in the packet. Also would be providing training for some of our dispatch people. Of course, one nurse isn't gonna cover a twenty-four-hour shift, unfortunately. The study would actually show when that nurse should be on and when the best times for that individual to have those hours. And so they've done a lot of time studies. The interesting about the, the interesting thing about this is that they've only done it in Albuquerque and Las Cruces and some of the bigger areas and bigger communities. They've never done it in a rural jurisdiction, and so they really are looking at possibly Taos as being the model for that. So they were really excited about it.
Okay, thank you.
I believe the other item was already discussed, and that was the June third and the meetings in June, Commissioner.
Okay. Can you email us those, those calendars?
Actually, I will. I do have, because I believe it's the next item on the agenda, or down here on the agenda. There's, I have the May calendar for you. We will email those to you. I'll have Renell email those out, and then we'll also email the, the start of the June calendar.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any other questions?
Before we go on to legal matters, Steve, just, I know I've had a couple of requests for the, for the homeless shelter.
Yes.
Is there a possibility we can get that on, on the agenda, or is there an issue that maybe, you don't have to talk to me now if you don't wanna talk to me, but?
Actually, staff's already been working on that. Mr. Sanchez has been working on that. We've also called the director from the homeless shelter. He's involved with us at this point, and we're making some negotiations or looking at where would be the best place to put it, what the lines would cost, what the electricity would cost, and we can get it on the next meeting agenda as a full report to the commission. Would you be ready by? We could give you a rundown right now of what we have so far.
I'd say we can wait, and I mean, if, and I would like to see the director come in and?
Present.
You know, and make the request. You know, I did talk to, took the liberty of talking to Taos News, because that was, at one time, a possibility is right next to Taos News there.
Correct.
And if that's still a good location.
And I think that's the option that we're actually looking at is? Adjacent, yeah. Adjacent to Taos News. So we will get that, put that in the packets for next commission meeting, and we'll get a full report to the commission on that. We have some numbers already, preliminary numbers as to what that cost would be, how we could possibly help through that process.
And then I, you know, and once we get a location, then maybe it would be appropriate for them to then go to the town of Taos, asking for some in-kind services to help, maybe doing the hookup of the water and maybe hookup of the sewer.
Right.
You know, if it be appropriate, because it is a nonprofit. But again, then it has to have a location before they can do that, so.
Yes, sir.
Chairman Commissioners, I've spoken with Mr. Wood, Jay Wood. I've also spoken with French already. They would be willing to waive their hookup fees and whatnot for the sewer and the water. We still would have to get a street cut permit. Mr. Wood was speaking to, well, I can never remember his first name, but Mr. Gonzalez, who relocated the existing shelter there to get a quote for it to move over here. I've spoken to Phoenix Mechanical about working with them for the actual hookups. I've also spoken to Kit Carson, and that's one thing that I, if, a little bit of direction from you, from the commission would help. Currently, there's no electricity on all of Albright on the south side, all the way to Kit, to Taos News. Taos News receives their electricity from Gustav, and they have a transformer behind their building. So in order for us to get electricity over to the man shelter, if we were to put it on the far east side of the property, we would have to request a line extension from Kit Carson. So there would be excavation and conduit. The closest switchgear is right here on Lovato and Albright. The one thing I was gonna comment on, we don't have to put in three-phase right now, but if we're gonna dig five hundred feet to take, to put in conduit to the animal, I mean, to the animal, to the homeless shelter, I would suggest that we put in three sets of conduit right away. That way, whatever we do in the future, we have the ability already to have our three-phase power or single-phase power in place.
Okay. Mr. Chairman Commission, we'll actually put a packet together for the commission. We'll get that ready and have staff report on that to you. Like I said, these are preliminary numbers that we're looking at to see what the cost would be. And for the purpose of the rest of the commission that may not be aware, we've had a request to see if what it would cost us, one, to move the homeless shelter onto Taos County property, and how we would actually go around that. So we still have to approach legal also to make sure that that could also be legally binding in order to do that. Right now, they're paying rent, is my understanding, where they're at, so.
Also, Mr. Archuleta, maybe a report on the situation, how things are going at the hospital. Hearing a lot of conflicting reports and staff changes and other things going on. So maybe if, if we could put that on the next agenda.
Sure. Would you like Commissioner Blankenhorn and our Finance Director report on that, or do we want actually representatives from the hospital to come?
Correct, yeah.
I'll talk to the representative of the hospital, okay?
Next item, anything else, Mr. Archuleta?
No.
Thank you very much.
Any questions?
Next item, fifteen, Commission Report Matters, Commission Calendar of Events. We've covered that. Stephen? If you can come to the front.
Regarding my comments this morning, if I, I apologize if my, if my comments were, and my critiques seem brusque or harsh. It was, I couldn't find the agenda in every place that I looked, and so that's, you know, my frustration sort of reached a boiling point last night. And I certainly didn't intend to embarrass or ridicule or shame anyone or disparage anyone's efforts, not at all. That's not my intent. I'm, that's not who I am. But I won't apologize for the substance of my comments and my critique, that being that I just want good, reliable information circulating in my community, and that's it. That's all. Thank you.
You're forgiven.
Thank you.
Commissioners, also, can I just mention the fact that I attended the Association of Counties Board meeting that was actually hosted by Taos County, and it took place at the Montes Agrado on Kit Carson Road. It was hosted by Taos County, but it was paid for by the New Mexico Association of Counties. Let me just clarify that. And it went really well. And I just wanted to publicly thank the staff of Montes Agrado and the staff of the New Mexico Association of Counties and the staff of Taos County. I know that we hosted the executive board meeting here on Thursday, and the staff did their best to accommodate them for that meeting. And then, of course, just the, the community as a whole, you know, all of these directors bring their spouses or friends, and, you know, they all spend a lot of GRT, and it was just amazing to see the, the great positive reaction from all of the thirty-three board rep members that are in the New Mexico Association of Counties that represent each individual county in the state. I, of course, have been for the last couple of years, well, we had hoped that we could host in Taos County so that we could also talk about the idea of Taos County hosting the, the big annual conference that takes place every year in June. And of course, this year, it's in Deming, New Mexico. Next year, it's going to take place in Albuquerque. We're hoping that when the request for proposals comes forward, that Taos County is, is willing to host in 2016. And, you know, I lobbied a lot of the board members that were present at this meeting on Friday, and it, it looks really positive. But I just wanna alert the, the staff, our county manager, that this is something that's gonna come forward within the next few months, and I hope that we, as Taos County, can host the event. It brings in about seven hundred elected officials from throughout the state. I have been informed that we have more than a thousand rooms available to accommodate all of these individuals. And of course, we do have some fairly large, uh, meeting areas where we could, in fact, host the large assemblies, and we know, maybe we can possibly even work with the public schools so that we can accommodate a lot of the meetings that would be taking place in, between all of the affiliates that would be at the, that annual conference in June. So the bottom line with that is, the bottom line is that it does bring in a lot of gross receipts, taxes, and revenues, and, you know, we, we can all use that. And so hopefully, Mr. Archuleta and Commissioners, it is something, including the town of Taos, that we can look forward to hosting within the next couple of years.
Mr. Chairman Commissioners, actually, Ms. Spray is here, and she's wanting to spend about ten minutes with myself and the chairman, if possible, to start talking that process.
Okay.
So as soon as we're done with the executive, we can actually meet with her for about ten minutes to?
Okay.
Start that process moving.
Thank you very much. Any other comments, Commissioners? Anything else? If not, we'll move on then to item sixteen, Legal Matters, Discussion, Consideration, Decisions Regarding the Following, Item A, For Discussion of the Acquisition of Real Property in Executive Session, Possible Action in Open Meeting. This matter may be discussed in executive session under the Open Meetings Act, Exemption 1015-1 H8, which allows for discussion of the purchase, acquisition, disposal of real property, water rights by the public body. Motion to go into executive session?
So moved, Chairman.
I'll go ahead and second. Madam Clerk.
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay. Thirty minutes? Thirty minutes. A motion to come back into session?
So moved.
Here, have a.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second. Madam Clerk.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. Okay, Mr. Malone, executive session report.
The commission met in executive session to discuss the acquisition of real property pursuant to 1015-1 H8, and that was the only matter discussed. There was no action taken.
Okay.
So moved, accept attorney's report.
Second.
Okay, motion for adjournment?
We have to take a vote on that.
I'm sorry. Yeah, okay, go ahead. Yes.
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 Yes. Okay, motion for adjournment.
So moved. Second.
Madam Clerk.
Yes.
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 Yes, okay.